Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Nestled in a classic New England setting amid 200-year-old elm trees and charming colonial homes, stately sea captains' homes, and charming Cape Cod salt boxes. Shoreway Acres is a graceful blend of Cape Cod's past and present. Shoreway Acres, proud sponsor of Falmouth Community Television.
Green Harbor Waterfront Lodging is nestled in a woodland setting on a picturesque ocean inlet. Green Harbor offers a family waterfront vacation. Enjoy our private boating beach with dock, rowboats, and paddle boats, oversized heated outdoor pool, and kiddie pool. Relax in our waterfront and beachside accommodations. 548-4747, or gogreenharbor.com.
People think that a locally-owned and operated appliance store may not offer what they need. Actually, we have trained and dedicated sales associates, expert delivery and installation, professional repair service, and personal customer service. Plus, we have access to a huge local warehouse with over 6,000 models in stock. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number-one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganet.net.
The Quarter Deck Restaurant located on Main Street in the heart of Falmouth, specializing in fresh local seafood and other classic American cuisine, featuring a full bar with friendly staff. And the Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar located in North Falmouth just off Nathan Ellis Highway, featuring catering services with two full event rooms serving up classic Italian cuisine. The Quarter Deck Restaurant and Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar, we're here to serve all our friends in Falmouth.
Good evening. Welcome to the Select Board meeting for July 27, 2020. This meeting is being conducted remotely. I'm not going to go through the exhaustive list of all of the instructions. I think folks have mastered that by now, but just a brief reminder, if you wish to participate in this meeting and share a comment or a concern, you can do so in one of two ways, which is either to send us an email or correspondence in advance. And you can note in that correspondence if you'd like us to read that message and share that publicly, or if you just want to share those thoughts with us. We will certainly, we always read all of our emails. We read all of our correspondence. And the other way you can participate while this meeting is happening is by going to the Selectmen's website and you, webpage, excuse me, and you'll see instructions there for how to join this meeting. And you can participate via the chat function through Zoom where you can again, share some of your thoughts, ask questions of the participants, and and we can share those as a board and discuss them. I'm just, oh, go ahead Doug. Did you want to read that?
No, Madam Chair, just gonna, if you wouldn't mind, once again, reminding people that, because we've received more emails this past week than I think we have almost in my entire time of being on the board, that the responses to them will either come from you or from Doug Brown, that we, by policy, do not respond to emails except for the official statement by either you or Doug.
Yeah, so, thank you for that reminder Doug. Just, you know, again, you know, folks, we did, we've received a lot of correspondence. There's tons going on. Because of open meeting law, you know, we really cannot as a board, you know, each one of us respond back to an email and giving our opinion and our thoughts. That really does violate open meeting law because it's not done in a public forum for, for folks to be able to see and hear and participate in. So the policy of this board, and it's really in line with open meeting law, it's why we have this policy, is that your response, a response will either come from Doug Brown, who's Vice Chair, or from myself as Chair, unless there's something very specific. Sometimes, you know, if it's a question about a committee, the liaison to that committee might respond, but once one individual has responded, you're not going to get another, you know, set of responses from each one of the members of the board. So because you haven't heard from, you know, Nancy, myself, or Doug Jones, Doug Brown, or Sam, it doesn't mean we haven't read your email. We have all read your emails, every single one of them that come in. This board is very diligent with that, but we cannot respond to all of them. So we just want to make sure people understand. And for, in particular, the issue, an issue that's going to be up, I want to start by saying this as well because there's some confusion. The issue of the petition for, application for a liquor license for the Tea Room was going to initially, we thought, be at this meeting, but because it wasn't advertised, published appropriately in the enterprise to make that timeline that we needed, it's going to be on for August 10th. So anybody who's tuning in hoping to speak on that issue, August 10th will be the hearing date for that application. And for that particular issue, we've received quite a bit of correspondence. And again, all of that, I know we've responded to a fair amount of it, but all of that has been read. And that meeting will be on August 10th. So we already had one individual who thought it was on today who was waiting to speak. So I hate for folks to wait to address that because we won't get to it tonight. Okay, just one other reminder, if you're, if you're participating in the discussion tonight, please have your microphone off unless you're speaking so we can have a clear feed and we're not picking up background noises. Okay, thank you. So let's start with a pledge of allegiance and Doug Brown has a flag if you don't have one.
I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance. Flag of the United States of America. And to the republic.
Which is one nation under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice.
It'll really be a nice day when we're doing all of that in sync in person. It just doesn't quite have the same feel when where you have a feed like this.
Need a bouncing ball.
Yes, exactly.
The top of text.
All right, we have, anything for recognition from Mr. Brown or anyone else?
Yeah, I'd like to say, recognition for the Cape Verdean Club. They had an event on Saturday, which I was enjoying attending. There were a lot of local stories about some racial issues that, you know, personally, I wasn't aware of. It was very enlightening and there was a couple of prayers that were very thoughtful. And then we walked from the Cape Verdean Club after hearing some stories and some life, life lessons, I really think. Then we walked down and we sat at the administration building. And we took that eight minutes and 36, or whatever it is, seconds kneeling and just a moment of silence. And it was really pretty powerful to think of, you know, when you're kneeling that long, that was just such a crazy thing that happened and it's just hard to believe, but if you take that moment and really give it some thought, it's pretty, pretty moving. So that was, was interesting. Go ahead.
Thank you Doug. Sam, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to recognize No Place for Hate for the, and FCTV, for the forum that they broadcast. Megan participated in and Chief Dunn participated in, but I thought it was a really great panel with a really good balanced discussion about policing in Falmouth. And I have to say, at the end of it, I was pretty proud of our police force because I think they really have already stepped up to the whole idea of community policing and servicing the people of Falmouth. And are doing a pretty good job. And I know they took one of the early positions as supportive of our addiction problems in town and trying to see what they could do to actually constructively assist people who have gone through treatment or who have suddenly fallen into addiction. So they've really been a proactive force for the betterment of the health of citizens of Falmouth. And I thank them for that. And I thank No Place for Hate and FCTV for broadcasting that and helping us all be educated by their comments.
Right. And also Chief Dunn did attend the Cape Verdean Club on Saturday as well, as well as a representative from the school committee. And it was, it was well-attended. There was a lot of people there. And also, interesting that Cape Verdean Club is now requesting to have their sign, their name added to the sign at the end of Sandwich Road.
Yeah.
Contains that sign, but it's a funny thing that they're not on there.
Yeah, we started working on that last week and we, we went back and forth to figure out, you know, really where that sign came from. And it's not something that, we asked Frank to look into it. It's not something that was a permit that the board ever voted on. So we believe it was put up, you know, a while ago and it's, and it's been maintained. And so we will, we've spoken to, Julian was part of the discussion, Frank, Peter McConerty. I'm trying to think of who else was part of that discussion, but Rep. Viera as well. And so we do anticipate that we'll be able to add to that sign. We are just, you know, working on trying to get a sign for the Cape Verdean Club, but we don't anticipate that it's a big issue to add it to that. So it'll be something we can, yes, Julian.
Pardon me, Madam Chair. I just wanted to confirm that, as you know, the sign is privately owned, was privately erected, and it's privately maintained. So there was a perception by some that it was a public sign and just wanted to clarify that that is not the case.
So we're working with the folks involved with the sign to try and to remedy that and have the Cape Verdean Club be listed on there.
But we, it is a town, town roadway, so it's town property, right?
It is within the road right of way and was apparently erected over 20 years ago without a permit.
Okay, thank you.
So hopefully that'll be something we'll have good news on in the not-too-distant. Any announcements? Okay. Any public comment? Give folks an opportunity if they would like to go ahead and type in the chat function a public comment. And if you do so, Peter Johnson Staub will let me know if we have any. And we can again, reminder that public comment is a period of time for individuals to speak on an issue that is not on our agenda. You have two minutes, up to two minutes to make your comment. And because it's not on our agenda, we cannot as a board respond to your comment. But if anything comes up, Peter, I don't think I see anything. Go ahead Doug.
Do we need to roll call attendance just because people don't necessarily know we're here?
Sure. So I, that's, I forgot to, to ask people to know who they are. Thank you. That's what happens when you go off script. So I'll just ask each member of the board, when I say your name, to let us know you're present. And I'll do the same thing for staff that's participating. So English Braga, present. Nancy Taylor.
Present.
Hey, Doug Jones.
Jones, present.
Sam Patterson.
Present.
Okay, Doug Brown.
I'm present.
Okay, and for staff, we have with us behind the scenes Peter Johnson Staub. And thank you, Peter. And we have Julian Susso.
Present.
That you can see. And obviously, we have our IT folks, Greg Banworth and Thomas Cox, who are helping us out in our troubleshooting. Let me just take a, take a look. It doesn't look like we have any public comments present, but we will certainly take those if it takes a while for folks to type them in. Okay, moving on to summary of actions, administrative orders. Approve extension of Steamship Authority parking lot lease. Mr. Susso.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is, the board may be aware of the, that multi-year agreement with the Steamship Authority for managing overseeing the parking area in Woods Hole is due to expire at the end of this calendar year. And given the many challenges with COVID-19, we met briefly, including Selectman Doug Jones with representatives of the Steamship Authority and agreed jointly to recommend that we extend it as is, as is with no changes for one calendar year to give us the opportunity to do the fine-tuning and the discussions that may be necessary in the future.
I move Patterson.
Thank you.
Jones, second.
Okay, and if we could maintain that pattern tonight, if possible, Sam, if you could move and Doug could second, unless, otherwise.
If we could just touch on the subject of the email from Scotlandale reminding about the potholes in the, in the path of the, in the parking lot there.
This issue actually was talked, talked about during the discussion on the renewal of the lease. And it will be taken care of.
Okay, good.
Great, thank you. Okay, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor by roll call. English Braga, aye. Taylor. Oh, you're muted.
Taylor, aye.
Jones.
Jones, aye.
Patterson.
Patterson, aye.
Brown.
Brown, aye.
Great, thank you. Next, we have approved request for license to install landscape curbing within the layout of a public way at 19 Ocean Avenue. Mr. Susso.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. We received a information from Town Engineer Jim McGlaughlin and reviewed by Town Council Frank Duffy to allow for this driveway improvement that slightly encroaches on the town way and it requires a license from the Board of Selectmen to allow it to go forward, and we so recommend.
Any questions about this?
I move that we grant the license for this action.
Jones, second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none by roll call. English Braga, aye. Taylor.
Taylor, aye.
Jones.
Jones, aye.
Patterson.
Patterson, aye.
Brown.
Brown, aye.
Great, thank you. And just to, for folks to put that package together, it made it easy to, there was a lot of good information there, so it was helpful. Thank you. Next, approved letter in support of the application of 197 Palmer Avenue LLC DBA Falmouth Share Space for a grant from the Collaborative Workspace Program through the Massachusetts Development Finance Agency. Mr. Susso.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. This was received from a, really an entrepreneur in the community that wanted to create collaborative workspace in the downtown area. Had his, there are some state monies to allow that to go forward in terms of grant funds. There was a very tight timeframe unfortunately for it, and it required that action be taken and brought retroactively to this board if you so concur. And that's, you have a copy of the letter which I had transmitted as a, on the, on behalf of the board, subject to your concurrence.
Any questions about it?
Yes, I guess I do. Is, who is actually behind this Falmouth share space per se? I mean, we're sort of giving a blessing to an organization or individual that we don't know anything about.
I do not have the individual's name. They reached out to me through an email and talked about partnerships for facilitating business expansion in downtown. And it seemed like a good match. They, there is a, a copy in your board packet of their advertising piece about Falmouth Share Space, what they make available to interested parties. But I do not have a name of the sponsoring, the single sponsoring individual. I'll be happy to get that and forward it to the board if that would be your pleasure.
Is it our expectation that then Massachusetts Development Finance Agency will do the vetting?
That's my expectation as part of the grant process.
Well, I mean, I'm certainly in favor of such a venture. My natural question is, do we know anything about the people that are actually organizing and trying to make this happen?
I was just trying to look up their website while we were, while you were asking that question. But it, it just has, it's a similar, you know, piece of literature as this, this here. Again, I think, you know, we're just giving a thumbs up for them to potentially apply for the grant money and then they'll have to go through, through that process. So we, but if you can get that further information for us, Julian, so that we can have that for any future discussions that we have.
Happy to.
Thank you.
I guess for now, we'll just call it Falmouth Shared Space LLC. That's what they are.
It's a concept that's been talked about for some time, including through the Chamber of Commerce. But we'll, we'll get you those details. Happy to.
Yeah, I was hoping that it would be somebody from the Chamber and they could, you know, basically speak to us and give us that much of an endorsement.
So, so we can try and track that down. Would you like to put it over?
If there's not a deadline, I, that would be my preference.
Well, there is a, there is a deadline. It's actually come and gone for the grant application to be transmitted. So I just advise that I would transmit this and bring it to the board for your consideration of concurrence so that they could meet the deadline and try to be competitive.
So let's just, we'll bring it back to get that information.
Certainly.
Get that information so that we know, and we can perhaps invite that individual if they'd like to just let us know a little bit about. Yes, Nancy.
So is this, when I looked at this, the way I sort of interpreted it was that this is to get our approval to apply? Is that correct for the grant?
That is correct. Massa Development Finance Agency, one of their guidelines is they require the community within which the share space is located to agree that that concept is permissible within the community.
And that's really all we're agreeing to, for them to be able to apply. And then it would have to come back with a lot more details, I would assume, before it went into practice. Is that correct?
Well, they, any improvements they would make in the space would require, you know, building permit and the usual kind of zoning and regulatory review, yes.
Thank you.
And what they're saying they want to do does fit within our policies.
Yeah.
But I think it, it does meet what we're hoping to have people do.
Correct.
I think we could just say we are supportive of those ideals.
I'll second that.
Okay, great. So any further discussion? All those in favor by roll call. English Braga, aye. Taylor.
Taylor, aye.
Jones.
Jones, aye.
Patterson.
Patterson, aye.
Brown, excuse me.
Brown, aye.
Great, thank you. Next, we have approved the letter, a letter in support of grant funding application from Woods Hole Oceanographic Institution to the U.S. Commerce Department Economic Development Administration Disaster Recovery Program for pre-design work on the waterfront project. Mr. Susso, do you want to start that off? And then if we have someone who is going to, and I believe that we do have someone coming to speak to that issue, or is that later on?
We have, you have a presentation later in the evening under Business of HOE's Seawater Program. This is of course related to that. Board may recall, a couple of months ago, you gave the green light for a letter of support to the Economic Development Administration for a slightly different grant program. Unfortunately, that grant was not funded, but Rob Munir from HOE advised me that EDA suggested that we consider coming in under this apparently slightly different called the Disaster Recovery Program. And so this letter of support is in furtherance of potentially fine-tuning the earlier proposal and bringing it in under another segment of EDA grant funding if the board is, you know, so, so inclined.
Great.
I move that we send this supportive letter in support of the Woods Hole Oceanographic Institute.
Just have one, one suggestion. It seems like maybe we could use one more paragraph somewhere in this letter to highlight the economic impact that the Oceanographic Institution has on not only Falmouth, but the Cape Cod economy. Because these guys are Economic Development Administration. I mean, it's a great, that we have a great relationship with them. But it seems like the economy is also very important.
Yeah, so maybe a sentence or two, Julian, if you could add just to highlight the economic importance of HOE to our community and our region.
Certainly.
Great, thanks Doug. Great suggestion. And with that, any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote. English Braga, aye. Nancy Taylor.
Taylor, aye.
Jones.
Jones, aye.
Patterson.
Patterson, aye.
Brown.
Brown, aye.
Great, thank you. Okay, next, we have approved solar alternative on-bill credit agreement by, between the Town of Falmouth Landfill Solar to LLC and authorize a town manager to sign on behalf of the town. Mr. Susso, do you want to set the tone for this discussion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Both items, E and F, the board may recall at your regular business meeting on June 15th, the Select Board voted and directed Frank Duffy to to discuss with EDIC's outside council and work with Citizens Energy to bring these two agreements to you for adoption yet in the month of July. And I think, I believe Frank is with us and available with any questions that you may have. There may also be some representatives, one or more representatives of EDIC available. Of course, Madam Chair, as you, you and the other members of the board know, this is also listed as a potential status update later in your business agenda, depending on how you want to deal with those issues. But it involves necessary agreements to proceed timely with Citizens Energy for the second phase of the long-awaited solar project at the Town Landfill.
Great. So what I think makes the most sense is to, to talk about EF and then also discuss number eight under Business, because let's not bring people in and take them out again. Let's put everything on the table. Everything is really interconnected. So if we could promote Town Council or Assistant Town Council or both, if they're both present, and I did see Chris Simler listed, I didn't see, I only quickly took a look at the list. So anyone from EDIC that wishes to participate, I'm just taking a quick look.
Madam Chair, do you just, we do have a public hearing at 7:30. I think this issue's going to take a while. Do you want to at least let those people know that we're not going to be hearing at 7:30, or do we want to jump to that instead?
Why don't we do the public hearing? Because presumably they're, they're paying folks to be here on their behalf. EDIC may also be doing so with their own council, but it's a little bit of a different situation than private citizens doing so. So what I'll do is let's have the, we'll have the, the public hearing and then we'll return back to the issue with all the issues involving solar and EDIC. My apologies. Thank you Doug. I didn't even recognize the time. A good suggestion. Does anyone have the hearing notice right in front of them?
I do, Madam Chair. You want me to read it?
Okay, you know what? I have it. I found it. Sorry.
Oh, you go ahead.
Okay, public hearing notice. The Falmouth Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing under Section 24077 Wetland Regulations of the Zoning Bieters of the Town of Falmouth on Monday, March 9, 2020, at 7:30 PM. This was continued from that date. In the Selectmen's meeting room, Falmouth. This was continued from that date in the Selectman's Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall on the application of Nicholas J. and John S. Anthony P. Pentec- Pentecost and James N. Pentecost Trust, UDT, for permission to license, retain and maintain two existing four-by-20 floats in and over the waters of Eel Pond Canal. There is an existing waterways license for the bulkhead, number 4471, at five, I can never say this one, Knapsit Drive, East Falmouth, Mass. Area affected is Eel Pond. Interested parties may review the file on this hearing at the Selectman's Office. So this was published February 14th, February 21st. The hearing was continued from April 27th, and it was also continued on June 15th. And then hearing continued on June 27th at the request of the applicant. So we are having the hearing now, and if we can promote the participants for this hearing, I would appreciate it.
Madam Chair, this is Peter Johnson, staff. We are not seeing Matt Costa.
Okay.
We were expecting for this hearing.
Okay. Is there anyone present for this hearing? If you could enter in under chat and let us know if you are here to participate, perhaps someone standing in for, if maybe someone's standing in for Mr. Costa.
We have two attorneys that are representing the interested parties. I would assume they could present.
I'll let Peter sort that out. Okay. Okay, so Attorney Hoyt.
Attorney Wall.
Attorney Wall. Okay. I see Attorney Hoyt's name. I just don't see his, his face. Hello, welcome. Okay. Um, let me just see. Can I ask, do, do either attorneys know if Mr. Costa is going to be present to participate? Go ahead, Attorney Wall.
Um, through the chair, I represent two property owners that are interested in this. And I did receive an email from the applicant's counsel at about three o'clock this afternoon indicating that they were going to be asking for a continuance, a further continuance. But I also called the town manager's office at about four o'clock today, and nothing had been received. And I haven't received anything in writing other than what I just told you.
Okay, Mr. Suso, I didn't see anything come through. Have you heard anything late at the last, I'm sure you would have told us at the last minute, but.
Nothing came through to my knowledge, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, Attorney Glenn Wood from, is the name that we were given to be representing the applicant for this hearing, but we do not see him.
Okay. And Attorney Wall, you received, is that who you spoke with, Attorney Wood?
I received it. I, I know that he represents the applicant. I've dealt with him. We've been talking about this case. And yes, I received an email from him at three o'clock this afternoon indicating that Matt Costa, who also represents the applicant, would be asking for a continuance.
Okay. So we, we don't have that to date at this moment. So what is this board's particular pleasure? I mean, I think the, it, it sounds as if perhaps, I don't know why they were seeking it. I don't know if something's going on with Mr. Costa or, or the applicants, but it doesn't sound as if anyone is going to be here for the applicant. So perhaps we can continue it to another date. Go ahead, Doug.
We also haven't heard any requests officially from them asking for continuance. So I don't know how we can grant a continuance without their request. And we've also been going, this has been going on since January 27th. I'm inclined to, you know, maybe we grant continuance with prejudice or withdrawal with prejudice. Because at this point, in a number of times, we've put this on our agenda and they keep putting it off. Or this time, they don't even show up without putting it off. They suggest they're putting it off through the attorney without contacting the town manager or the board of selectmen troubles me.
So perhaps if we pick a final date and, and do just as they do generally in court, no further continuances, and we'll pick that date tonight.
I also feel for the attorneys and the residents who live next to it, saying that they keep getting put off. You know, the, the amount of money that the neighbors are putting into defending this is a little bit unfair that they have to keep coming back. And as you said, have a hearing and hire their attorneys to show up for this hearing. I can't, I don't think we can put the legal fees on the applicant. I'm not sure how we can do that, but it would be appropriate to do so, certainly.
Any other comments from the board? Sam, you're just, and I'll come to your attorney while. Sam, you're muted.
Is there an appeal process if we go ahead and rule on this? I mean, we've got sort of recommendations from the zoning board of appeals. I've looked through them all, and it all kind of makes sense to me.
I think the problem is, well, not the problem, but the challenge would be that, you know, in general, we would take testimony and have findings. I don't know what the, I don't know if we're just kicking the can down to create an appeal, you know, an appellate process that really just keeps this thing rolling. But Attorney Wall, you had your hand up.
So again, I want to be very candid with the board. I did receive an email from Attorney Wood indicating that there was going to be a request. I thought that it would be submitted in writing or that Mr. Costa would be present and ask the request. I don't want to be opportunistic and try to win, you know, on a, on a technicality. And I agree with what the chair just said, that it might just, there's a lot of litigation involving this matter. You know, it would probably just cause another matter. But I did want to say two things that I think are important for the board to know. One is, this involves, as you heard on the notice, an application for a special permit for floats. The floats that are in the water currently have been determined by the zoning board of appeals to be lacking permits and therefore illegal. And the zoning board issued an order requiring that Mr. Pentecost file an application with you. Otherwise, he would have to remove the floats. My client, when I informed him, or one of the clients that I represent, when I informed them about this request for continuance, he reminded me that he is unable to boat this summer because Mr. Pentecost has his floats too close to the bulkhead. And secondly, the other concern I have is about a constructive grant. I don't think we're there yet. But this has been continued a number of times. And so I think that it would be a good idea if you grant a continuance to do it without any further continuances.
Thank you. And I, and I appreciate your recognizing that, you know, it may just be creating further litigation. So that's, yeah, just good to, to note that. Attorney Hoyt, did you have anything, and then I see your hand up, Doug Jones. Did you have anything, Attorney Hoyt, that you wanted to add?
No, only, I think with respect to any concern about a constructive grant, I think the COVID-related orders and statutes that have been passed by the governor and Supreme Judicial Court take that off the table. But other than, I don't have any substantive comment, really. We, I'm just here to make a small comment on behalf of the property owner across the canal from this property, really just as it relates to the broader set of discussions that are happening regarding resolving the end of the canal there, which my client does have an interest in.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Jones, did you have your hand up?
Maybe Mr. Wall can help us with this. Certainly, the lawyers from the applicant imply that there was a chance of being some resolution or some compromise with the neighbors. Is your understanding that they were going to present something that you would have been okay with? Or was there still going to be a dispute as to what was going to happen?
I can answer that, Mr. Jones, by saying that I have had numerous conversations with Attorney Wood. They're very cordial conversations, as I did with Mr. Hoyt as well. But no, we're not, we have not reached any agreement, and I was not expecting any such agreement or any proposal tonight.
Okay. So what?
We can do this to two weeks and make that a final continuance.
Okay, can we just give the exact date for that? Is that the August 10th meeting?
That's your next meeting.
I don't know what the agenda looks like so far, so I don't know what time to give for that.
Oh, can you just remind us the date after August 10th, Julian?
Yeah, 24th, 24th of August.
I would prefer the August 10th, as Mr. Wall said, it is the summer that's wrapping up. They've already been told they should actually remove the floats so that the other neighbors could do some boating. And I think the earlier the better. And we, this started back in January 27th. So if there's time on the agenda, I would say August 10th.
We can make time, we can make time for it.
Second.
Okay, with no further continuances. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. By roll call, English Braga, aye. Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Hoyt. Appreciate your attending.
Thank you.
Okay, let us return back to our issue with the Landfill Solar Two. So if we can bring back up Town Council, Assistant Town Council, Mr. Simler. And was there anyone else for EDIC if they're council?
Madam Chair, Mike DiGiorno was going to present, I believe he's on.
Great. We can promote Mike. There he is, okay? And I'm assuming that is Attorney Idelman? Okay, we just need to see, we'll just wait till we see them. Great. Okay, so why don't we, as we're getting everybody's video on board, why don't we start? Frank, do you want to sort of walk through what you've presented, given the board to review?
Yes, I will. I think the last time that, well, let me go back to the 15th of June. That was the meeting when I presented due with three draft motions with respect to the intergovernmental agreement, the contract and sublease agreement, and the on-bill, solar on-bill credit agreement. And you passed, you accepted my draft motions and you affirmatively, affirmatively voted all three of them. Now, the, let me just digress a second and talk about the, the on-bill, the solar on-bill credit agreement. There's really no dispute about that. I have been dealing directly with Citizens Energy. I presented through Mr. Suso, a copy of that agreement. It's ready to go. You can vote it. You already did, actually. You voted to authorize the town manager to, to sign the solar on-bill credit agreement whereby 50% of the bill credits generated by the solar at the Phase Two project will be sold to the town at a 20% discount, that's for the benefit of the town. And the remaining 50% will be sold to low-income people in the town of Falmouth. And they will be selected according to a program that's set forth in the Massachusetts regulation. So that, that really is pretty much a done deal. The, the second agreement we talked about was the contract and sublease agreement. That is not ready for discussion. It comes later in the project. It's not needed tonight. But I don't think there's going to be any difficulty with it, and it will basically reflect the intergovernmental agreement, which we are going to talk about.
Should we go ahead and vote the on-bill credit agreement then?
Excuse me?
Should we go ahead and vote the on-bill credit agreement?
You may.
Because it's separate, I mean, we've already actually voted it, so let's just get that off the table.
Go ahead, Doug.
I'm suggesting that, just get the, I would move that we approve the on-bill credit agreement as proposed by the Town Council and as we previously voted on June 15th.
Patterson, second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. By roll call, English Braga, aye. Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Okay, that particular piece is done. Go ahead, Frank. Sorry.
Yeah, the third document that we talked about back on June 15th, and you did vote a motion, was the intergovernmental agreement. And that's the one we're going to be talking about tonight. I suggested that you vote to approve the intergovernmental agreement whereby the EDIC would pay market rate rent for the Phase Two area, 18 acres. The, the market rate rent would be, they have a market rate rent with the developer or Citizens Energy. The town would receive one half of that. So I had recommended that you go ahead and sign the intergovernmental agreement at market-based rent with the following provision, that the board acknowledged that the EDIC may request an adjustment of the rent to help fund the proposed EDIC recovery loan program to assist small business in Falmouth with job retention and expansion associated with the COVID-19 pandemic. At such time as the recovery loan program is authorized and has legal existence with the select board's decision to be deferred until such time as details about the recovery loan program are known and evaluated and the town's authority to contribute has been confirmed. Now, that, unfortunately, at that meeting, there was no participation by the EDIC. I think they perhaps didn't realize it was being discussed. But in any event, the matter was brought up again the following meeting, which was on the 29th of June. And at that meeting, people from the EDIC were present, and they did speak to you. And I believe it was Selectman Brown who said that the council should get together and talk and see if we could work out some kind of a compromise or arrangement or whatever. But following the June 29th meeting, we have had two conference calls. On the 15th, excuse me, on the 13th of July, we had a conference call with all councils. That's Iry Mullen and myself, and Audrey Idelman and Mark Reich for the EDIC. We talked about the intergovernmental agreement, and particularly the two issues we talked about were, one, the rent. And secondly, the special act, which I believe is necessary to approve the recovery loan program. We did not reach an agreement on that. Basically, the, the position of the parties makes it very difficult to agree on a compromise under the circumstance. We again had another meeting on a telephone conference call on the 23rd of July. The same people participated, except this time Julian Suso, on behalf of the Town of Falmouth, participated also. So today, we are back basically with the same intergovernmental agreement that I presented to you back on June 15th. And it would be my suggestion at the end of my remarks that you go ahead and approve it, as you previously voted, with the understanding that when the EDIC can get the recovery loan program approved and in existence, we can discuss the rent under proper circumstance. Now, I have, and I will summarize to you several problems with the recovery loan program as it has been presented. First and foremost, I will make the comment, and this is something that Mr. Suso emphasized when he participated on the 23rd of July. We don't know any details about this program. It is not in writing. It is, it is a concept. And you're being asked to approve it and to make contributions to it. And that's, you know, ultimately for your decision, but I just want to point that out. The second thing is that it is my belief, and I have maintained this from the very first time I heard about the recovery loan program. And I checked Chapter 121 C of the General Laws, that the recovery loan program, program does not fit within the statutory authorization of the EDIC. It, the EDIC is authorized to loan money, but it's to be secured by mortgages. And their loans are to be within specific economic development districts, which have never been approved. And that's a town meeting function, and that has never happened. So it has been my contention that the EDIC needs special legislation from the General Court to authorize the recovery loan program. And they may very well get it if they file and apply for special legislation. Now, I also reported to you previously that our town bond council and council for the Mass Department of Revenue concur in that recommendation. And I do believe now that the EDIC has agreed to apply for special legislation. The next question is whether or not the special legislation requires town meeting approval. I believe that it does. There is, and I sent out a memorandum in which I pointed out that under Massachusetts Constitution, which is a document that people don't read very often, but occasionally you have to, provides that the General Court shall have the power in relation to cities and towns with respect to special acts. And a special act is, is the law that applies only to one town, not to all of them. On petition filed or approved by the voters of a city or town, or the mayor and city council, or other legislative body, or a, the town meeting of a- or a, the town meeting of a town with respect to a law relating to that town. So, um, I know that the EDIC through their council believes that they do not need, uh, town meeting approval, they believe that because their, uh, recovery loan program will have regional impact, uh, they can go directly to the legislature. Fine, if that's what they wanna do, I don't think they can do it, but they think they can, no, I don't wanna argue that point. The next, uh, thing is that they would like the, uh, approval of the Board of Selectmen if they do file for special legislation. And my position on that is if they ask you, take a look at the proposed legislation, judge it, if you feel you would like to approve it, go ahead and approve it. We're not trying to stop this program, just trying to get it done right. That's all I can say about that. The, the next, um, point I would like to make is that, um, I, the, back in, um, nineteen, two thousand and fifteen, the town meeting approved that, that the, or authorized the Board of Selectmen to enter into an intergovernmental agreement or a lease for the cap landfill so that the EDIC could then sublease out the property and develop solar at the property. They granted the Board of Selectmen pretty good authority to execute, to enter into an intergovernmental agreement on such terms as they deemed, uh, proper. And you did execute in two thousand and sixteen on the intergovernmental agreement, which had market rate rent. Um, there was no talk of a recovery loan program at that time, or the deferral or postponement of any payments, it was market rate rent. Um, and then, now, um, I believe that when town meeting authorized the Board of Selectmen to enter into the intergovernmental agreement, um, that it, it did not necessarily authorize you to transfer rent funds to the EDIC as you're being requested to do now. You have, uh, rent due under the intergovernmental agreement for Phase One, their payment is due actually this month. Um, and starting next year, payments will be due under Phase Two. This is a substantial amount of money, which the EDIC is asking you to basically forgive and allow them to keep to fund the recovery loan program. The, under Chapter one twenty-one C of the general laws, the town may appropriate money for the benefit of the EDIC, I focus and emphasize the word appropriate. Appropriate is a town meeting function. For any money being diverted from the town for the purposes of the EDIC must be appropriated by town meeting. So that's where we are, basically. I, I believe that they need special legislation to get the recovery loan program going, and I believe they need town meeting approval to appropriate money and transfer it to them for the benefit of the recovery loan program. That has been my position pretty much all along, um, and it's not changed tonight. Um, now, I, as I have reported to you previously, the EDIC council doesn't necessarily agree with me, fine, that's happened, uh, but basically, that's my position. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks Frank. Um, so what I'll do is let me hear from, um, EDIC in whatever order, um, you guys have, you know, thought you wanna present in terms of, um, you know, just conveying your thoughts, and then if council wants to respond to some of the, um, points that Frank made. So however you wanna proceed, uh, welcome and go right ahead. Just have to unmute yourself, Michael.
Can you hear me down?
Yeah.
Uh, first of all, thank you very much. So in addition to Chris Simler, who's joined us, we also have, uh, Audrey Idelman, who is one of the EDIC councils that have been working on the IGA and, uh, both on Phase One and Phase Two with Town Council. Uh, Mark Rich from KP Law, who was the other attorney that, uh, was conferencing with Town Council, unfortunately, he had a conflict and wasn't able to be here with us tonight, so as Frank described, uh, since we, uh, after the June fifteenth vote, uh, we were able to have several discussions with him on all of the issues that, um, he raised, and, and I think there is clearly a difference of opinion on some of these things. Uh, also with us tonight, who's not on the screen, is Chris, uh, Chris, uh, Land, who's chairman of the EDIC. One of the reasons why both Chris Simler, who's vice chair, and he's also with us, and Chris Land, uh, Michael Galasso, who was the board member that was leading this effort. Unfortunately, he's, uh, had a, a health issue that, that required that, uh, he spent a night in Balmouth Hospital and, and, uh, and, and he's getting worked up for some things, uh, we've communicated a bunch of times today, and, uh, he's feeling pretty good, and I'm continuing to get emails from him on this very issue, so, uh, I have to say his condition couldn't be too grave. Uh, and, and, and actually, in keeping with that, uh, Michael asked, gave me a statement, and he asked if I could read it, so Madam Chair, I wonder if that would be okay?
Yes, that's fine, I don't know if you heard my opening comments, but, um, Mike had reached out to me as well and informed me of that, and said that he would be giving his statement to um, someone on the EDIC to read, so go right ahead, we anticipated that we'd be hearing from him through you, so go ahead.
So these are, remember, this is Michael Galasso, I'm just reading the words, so here we go.
We won't shoot the messenger, don't worry.
Well, that's, uh, okay, that's good, that's what I'm going for here.
Electrocution?
So, uh, let's first start tonight with a short history on the background of the rent structure between the town and the EDIC. It's important to remember that prior to the EDIC, uh, developing the solar projects at the landfill, it was a vacant, uh, and had a big plastic cap over it, and was costing the town a hundred thousand dollars a year in monitoring maintenance expenses. When we originally presented the IGA for Phase One to the selectmen a little over two years ago, the rent we proposed, meaning the EDIC, was a dollar a year. The reason why it was proposed to be a dollar a year was because the solar development was projected to provide the town with clean solar energy at a savings of over five hundred thousand dollars a year, save the town a hundred thousand a year in maintenance costs, and the solar project would generate real and personal property taxes, uh, to the town of approximately seventy thousand. Total, the EDIC's development of the landfill would generate close to seven hundred thousand dollars a year in benefits, savings, and the proposed dollar a year rent was more than adequate when you include all those benefits. The town hasn't really invested any money in Solar One, nor will they in Solar Two over the term of the grant lease with the EDIC, but they will be receiving over fourteen million dollars in cash and other benefits. Uh, in addition, uh, creating clean energy for over two hundred and fifty low and moderate income households in Falmouth, all at no cost to the town. When we presented the rental agreement for Solar One to your board two years ago with a rent of a dollar, some of the board members thought it was too low and wanted to increase the rent to fifty percent of what the EDIC receives from its sublease with the solar developer Citizens Energy. It was agreed at the time of the vote that if the EDIC later came forward with a proposal of required funding, that the selectmen would consider reducing the rent the EDIC was paying for Phase One. In the intergovernmental agreement, which was executed by the town and the EDIC, contains a provision that permits it to be modified. At no time, no one imagined that we would be where we are today with a pandemic ravaging our economy and threatening the livelihood of many of our citizens. Our state now has the highest unemployment rate in the country, and local small businesses are struggling to meet their obligations, and some are just giving up and going out of business. We are here before you tonight with a request that you live up to the commitment, uh, you made when we negotiated the rent structure from Phase One two years ago, and the commitment at your meeting on May fourth, that the rent the EDIC would pay for Phase Two would be nominal, so the EDIC could use more of its own revenue to fund the small business recovery loan program, and to help those struggling, and hopefully to prevent the loss of tax revenue to the town and additional unemployment. We haven't brought with us tonight some of the small business owners who previously testified before you in May, simply because they are working night and day to support their businesses and their families. But if you ask Deb McGuire, Scott and Wendy Galphy, Sean Daly and others, they would tell you that they may squeeze by this summer, but have not been able to recover their lost revenue from the three months they were closed, and the lost revenue from only being partially open, and are mostly concerned about having enough cash reserves to get them through the winter for startup costs, still in for next spring. That's their concern and many others', uh, main concern, and they are appreciative of any action that you take tonight to support the EDIC, their loan program, and the economy of our town. So, uh, as, uh, Town Council said, there have been a number of, um, legal issues which, uh, have popped up. I think we tried to address that with Town Council, we sent, uh, our, um, summary of what that discussion was, uh, to everybody on the board, and there's no question there is a difference of opinion about whether modifying the rent agreement, uh, it is really appropriating funds for the EDIC. Uh, the selectmen clearly, in our opinion, have the ability to, uh, and were given wide latitude by town meeting to make that agreement. We feel that our, our language, uh, for the rent provision in the IGA actually is a little bit cleaner way to go in the sense that it, uh, it sets the rent amount, and this was what was voted by the board on May fourth, it sets the rent amount at a nominal amount, uh, ten dollars, uh, for the year, and it gives the EDIC time to get the speculation, special legislation, come back with all of the program details with the board, um, and get the loan program up and running, and it says, quite frankly, if all those things aren't done over the next eighteen months, that we will come back, that basically, uh, that the, uh, that the loan program doesn't get off the ground, and the rent will go to the higher amount, which is the fifty percent of the rent that, uh, we receive from citizens. Why is this important to us? First of all, we think that it, uh, certainly minimizes any concern about, um, funding the EDIC, and I think that is the key issue here, because, um, we certainly, while we feel we have the ability under our statutory, uh, authority to run the loan program, Town Council has pointed out areas where he feels we should get clarification, we're willing to seek that clarification. Uh, I think the differences we have, uh, are that, uh, because of the regional nature of what we would be doing, uh, we feel that town meeting vote would not be required for that, uh, special legislation, but we would be certainly willing and would wanna seek the approval of the Board of Selectmen for that special legislation. But it takes time and resources to put together that special legislation. Uh, we've been working with partner banks on program design, really in fairness to them, and with our own, uh, staff time and, and, and resources to continue to develop those, uh, loan, uh, detail programs, get commitment letters and so on and so forth, it represents a significant amount of time. The point is that if we have to do all of that, and at the end, go to town meeting either in the fall or next spring, it would significantly delay the process, this would be for the, the vote, uh, for town, the town meeting vote, as Town Council has suggested, that would be necessary to, um, make that kind of a rent change and, and, and quote, fund the EDIC. But again, our attorneys view, uh, it's, it's not funding the EDIC, that's not an appropriation, changing the rent that we pay and the effect that has on how much of our own revenue that we get to retain, it's an independent governmental, uh, quasi-public corporate, uh, nonprofit, uh, is not a town meeting appropriation. So there is a difference of opinion. Um, I think with the motion, uh, excuse me, the, uh, the rent provision that we proposed, we think it's a lot cleaner, but the pivotal issue is if, uh, it's the town's view that even if we go with the rent provision that we've, um, outlined and what we sent, where we start out as a nominal rent, and then if we can't get the program off the ground, then, uh, the rent goes back to the fifty percent. If the town feels they still need town meeting approval to even do that, then we're probably not gonna be able to move forward with the program, because we have to devote a significant amount of resources to do all those other things, and, um, you know, again, we think a town meeting vote is, is not necessary, and is actually somewhat confusing because it, it really, uh, these are really EDIC revenues, and to be, um, basically putting a vote in front of the town on funding the EDIC, that's not really the action that's taking place.
So let me, thank you, thank you, Michael, so I saw Doug Jones, I'll come back to you, Chris, uh, Doug, you had your hand up a while ago.
Uh, I guess I have four issues I'll raise right now. One is, I think the first IGA we did for Phase One was something we agreed to, it was the fifty percent share. Uh, unfortunately, the town actually has not received the rent check that is due already for that, which does concern me. I think to change that and change the amount of money that coming, that the town gets, does need to go to town meeting. They approved it with that stipulation, and I would concur with our town council, to do anything different than that, absolutely needs to go to town meeting. Um, I'm really confused about how it's being stated this is gonna have regional benefit that the town of Falmouth is gonna pay for. And so which way are we going? Are we saying it's regional and doesn't need to have special act? Or are we saying it's a town of Falmouth thing? If it's a regional thing, then why is the town of Falmouth chipping, paying for the whole thing? If it's a town of Falmouth thing, then it absolutely needs to go to special, to a special act. I think to not go with the special legislation, um, and I guess the third point is, on Phase Two, that money isn't coming in for a while. So we actually have some time between, between Phase Two, between now and Phase Two, to go to the right thing, to get this, go to town meeting, get these things approved, get the special legislation done, and do everything out in front, transparent, that we all agree is a right, a good idea, but let's do it the right way, which is completely transparent, which is go to town meeting, go get the legislation, and get everyone on board, as opposed to fighting over the details that are seeming a little bit sketchy to me.
Okay, thank you, Doug. Um, Michael, and then Chris, um, or Chris, I think Michael wanted to respond to something specifically said by Doug. So go ahead, Michael, and then Chris, and then Sam.
Right, uh, yes, I just wanted to, uh, on a couple of points that Selectman Jones made, one, the, uh, the rent, uh, for Phase One, uh, is paid in arrears, and it's paid quarterly, so the rent, the, the, the rent started in April, so we received that check from, uh, citizens in July, and in fact, we've been in touch with, with the town about, um, uh, sending that check in, so that's, that's in process right now, so, um, just wanted to clarify that. Uh, the, uh, the second point, uh, was that, um,
The regional.
Yes, the regional, thank you, uh, Madam Chair. So I think the, the idea behind the regional is that, uh, all of these, uh, businesses, uh, that could be helped, uh, that are Falmouth businesses, employ people that aren't just residents of the town of Falmouth. And so, uh, you know, Falmouth's, uh, employment has a regional impact, and so anything that we can do to, uh, help those businesses is certainly gonna have, have regional impact. And that's where the, that's where the regional impact.
Thank you, Michael, um, go ahead, Chris, and then Sam.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, um, I just wanted to make a, a general observation, because I'm newer to the EDIC, and so is Chris Land, and I, I sometimes feel like when I hear words sketchy, and, and there's this perception that we're trying to control or do something, I gotta tell you, there's not a person on that board that just doesn't wanna do the right thing. And so it's kind of, when I step back and look at the situation we're in, it seems like a no-brainer to me what the facts are, and we just move on, but it seems like we have a divide between the EDIC and the Board of Selectmen on trust. And I really think if we came together, we could work through and probably compromise on some of these things and get it through, so I, 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 I think I hear a lot of things, and I'm saying that's just not true. Everyone, everyone has the best of intentions here, and I just wanted to bring that perspective as a newer member, that's not a, you know, legacy person in Falmouth, that that's the attitude that we bring, so I just wanted to add that, um, we wanna.
Thank you, and, and I just wanna clarify, obviously, we're trying to hash through legal concepts and some differences, but, um, you know, I think if this board had any, um, feeling that this was not something that was being entered into in good faith, it wouldn't have gone on for all these months, we wouldn't have directed Town Council, you know, to have all the meetings, so we, you know, nobody on this board uh, thinks that, that EDIC is trying to do anything untoward, we're just trying to hash through what are some difficult, um, some of them, most of them, legal questions. Um, and then obviously, the piece about town meeting, which is a legal question, but beyond that, it's just sort of a, a community trust question, and not impugning the integrative EDIC, but just our own responsibility as a board to make sure that we're being transparent, and that town meeting plays a role, um, that they take, you know, ser- very seriously to play, so I don't want anyone to get the perception that we don't appreciate the work that EDIC is doing, because we certainly do, and we know all the work that Mike Galasso, as, as well as the rest of the EDIC have put into this particular project. Um, Sam, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I would second your comments, Megan, um,
I don't think there's a distrust other than, you know, we'd like to see the language. We'd like to see that loan program spelled out. We'd like to see the role of these lending institutions. But there's an underlying problem too, and that's our authority as a governing body. And that's what is going to stop me from voting to move forward on what you're proposing to do as an EDIC. So, you know, here we have two different opinions from two different attorneys representing two different entities. Is there a higher authority that EDIC can go to right now? Well, they are concerns that, you know, we're walking into waters that we're not authorized to walk on. And we all want to help the citizens of this Falmouth and the businesses here. I really appreciate the Cape Cod Commission report that was done for the town of Falmouth and the other towns on the Cape that Michael Galasso shared with me. Because it's the first piece of data, it was a survey of businesses, so you have to take it with a grain of salt. But it certainly represented how much of a setback the COVID-19 pandemic and closure of businesses, how much it has impacted the businesses here in town. And that's what we all want to do, you know. Chris, it is a matter of distrust, except for we need to see the details, you know. And in this case, we need to make sure that we are using the correct authority to move forward. And I'm not comfortable at this point that that's the case.
Megan, you're muted.
You're muted. Sorry. Let me hear from Nancy, and then if Council for EDIC wishes to make any comments. I was just sort of letting everyone make their comments so you can respond in full. So Nancy, and then Doug, I see you as well, okay.
I just want to go off of what Sam just said, and that is really seeing all of the steps so that we can make a better decision. Because I agree, if we don't have the details hammered out, I would have a hard time moving something like this forward. That's my first comment. My second comment is, and again, I'm new to the Board. Town, maybe Town Council can answer this for me. Doesn't Town Council support all Town Bodies? So I was just kind of confused around bringing in other Council. And then my third comment was, I just wonder if people have looked at what Falmouth has received from the payroll protection program? How much money that the businesses in Falmouth have received? And because I bring that up only in the sense that I understand that there's a time limit, and we really want to help businesses, and I think they have received some help. But again, I couldn't vote for this without really seeing the details and seeing each step forward.
All right, thank you, Nancy. Let me just hear from Doug Brown in that way, if he has a question, Council can respond to it. Go ahead, Doug.
No, I just want to clarify a couple of things. I think all we're being asked tonight is to consider reducing the amount of rental income that we receive for the solar site. And the second question is, what will be the impact of us deferring and pushing them off to a Town Meeting before we make a decision? What would be the timeline? Because I'm afraid that if these guys fall off the timeline that they're on, this whole program is going to be not really useful because the businesses are going to be already gone. And the business isn't really, most businesses are not going to tell you that when they're faced with going out of business, they keep that, you know, under the cuff until the last minute because they don't want to announce it because that's the beginning of the end.
So can we just speak to Citizens Energy drop, you know, the final date that they gave us? Go ahead, Frank, can you speak to that?
Yes, it was represented to me by Citizens Energy, the people I'm dealing with there, that they need the intergovernmental agreement now because they have to present it to their financing bank to secure their financing so they can take advantage of some credit or income tax credits that are available. So they want to go forward with the construction of Phase 2. Now, the EDIC Recovery Loan Program is on a different timetable. It comes after the intergovernmental agreement is approved, and because there's going to be no recovery loan program unless you have the intergovernmental agreement behind it. And, you know, and yes, Town Meeting, my opinion is a Town Meeting vote is necessary. But, you know, you're going to put the warrant together for the November Town Meeting in about six weeks. So we're not really very far off. And we could do a lot of business in November to take care of this if everybody put their minds to it.
Citizens doesn't care which IGA we do.
As Chris Simler said, everybody here has got good intentions, but let's just get it done correctly.
But Citizens doesn't care whether we do the nominal rent or 50%.
No, they don't.
That doesn't affect the IGA at all. We can vote one or the other, and they can move forward. And then we can change the IGA, appease either the ADIC or the Town later. Citizens Energy doesn't care.
That's correct.
I have another question.
Okay, Doug.
And does the nominal rent language, how is that critical to the EDIC's mission? How will the other agreement that Town Council has made prevent you from proceeding?
So, Selectman Brown, the reason why that's critical is that will give us, you know, some confidence of the budget that we'll have to work with, our own budget that we'll have to work with when we're talking to partner banks about, you know, the size of the loan program and a variety of other features. What's difficult about it is to start off with the higher rent amount, which won't permit us to have enough money of our own funds to do the loan program. So that will in effect, you know, stop our efforts. But what we would be doing with the, with the rent provision as drafted by Town Council reflecting your June 15th vote rather than the May 4th vote that you took, to come back, we would be coming back with an unknown rent amount. So it's really hard to plan with banks in terms of how much revenue we're really going to have to be able to create this program. If we had an IGA, and just to go back to what you had said before, Selectman Brown, yes, we need to get this done, we need to figure out a rent provision tonight. And then I will also say, while the EDIC Board members are here, whatever gets voted on tonight by the Board of Selectmen, that has to come before the EDIC members in a special meeting that'll happen in the next, you know, certainly by Friday, in order to, you know, consider the provision of the rent in the IGA. Because right now, we're waiting for that to come back to us for a vote. But I think I can speak for the EDIC Board in that they will do whatever it takes to get an agreement passed by July 31st, which citizens says they need it. But, Selectman Brown, back to your question. The advantage of having the nominal rent in the IGA is it just gives us much better footing when we're talking to partner banks about setting up a program. It means that we will then know how much revenue we have to set up the loan pool. Whereas if we have an IGA that says it's a higher amount and we've got to come back for a lower amount, it just makes it a lot harder to do the planning and the work to get all the program details together that, you know, we've talked about. So we also think that, again, I've heard the different Board members about, it sounds like they're certainly in agreement with Town Council, but no matter what happens, this has to go back to Town Meeting for some kind of ratification. But it would seem that if we started out with a, so that in itself actually, you know, is problematic as well, because there's a lot of uncertainty that goes along with that. But the nominal rent would allow us to do better budgeting and planning with our partner banks in the next several weeks. We're not trying to cut ourselves loose from the Board of Selectmen with this rent provision that we put in front of you. We're welcome to come back with the details that you've all asked for, the rent provision, the, excuse me, the loan program details, the how special legislation could be created to handle the gaps that Town Council feels exist in the Enabling Authority. We're quite willing to come back with all of those details. But without some confidence in terms of how much money we're going to be able to retain of our own revenue to create this program, it's going to ultimately be up to the EDIC Board to decide, do they want to continue to spend staff time and legal time to put all of this together to create this loan program? Which, by the way, we were asked to do by Susan Moran, who was our Select Board representative on the EDIC back in March. And also Chairwoman Braga asked us to try to put something together. So we've been working at it very hard, but the decision we have to make is, if we have all of these legislative hoops to jump through, what's the likelihood of all of that happening? And, you know, should we continue to spend our resources to try to put this program together?
Thank you. And I would just say, I see you, Doug, I see you, Sam, I'll have you speak. And also for Council to be able to weigh in, she's been waiting for a long time. But, you know, I think that when it comes down to it, the issue is that, you know, we, our Town Council is talking about legislative hoops as something that are, you know, it's immovable and it's required, right? And I think that's the difference of opinion really comes down to whether or not, you know, there's an agreement about that. So if we're taking Town Council's position about, I'm going to set the special legislation aside for a moment because that's not as much of an issue as the Town Meeting vote in terms of timing. You know, if that is required, you know, it's not, there's not a workaround with that. And so I think that's ultimately where, you know, the sort of rubber meets the road. So let me hear from Council for EDIC, and then I'll hear from Doug Jones and Sam Patterson. So welcome, thanks for waiting.
I'm with BCK Law, can you hear me okay?
I can now, you are a little bit choppy, so if you just maybe are, try that again.
Oh, is that better?
Yes.
I'm counsel to the, Special Counsel to the EDIC for purposes of undertaking the solar procurement process. I assisted the EDIC back in 2015 timeframe to do Phase 1, and worked with Town Council at that time to enter into the, what everyone now calls the Phase 1 IGA. And also worked with citizens on all the documentation at that time for the initial sublease. And worked with Frank as he worked through the PPA with citizens for the net metering credits that the town is currently getting from the Phase 1 project. I am not Special Counsel to the EDIC for purposes of the analysis that was done on the special legislation, authority of the EDIC, and interpretation of whether the rent fund or Town, there's a memo provided to Town Council, that's by Attorney Mark Rich from KP Law. So unfortunately, I'm not here tonight, and I can't adopt his opinions of my own because the EDIC didn't engage me to that. But I would say that that memo is out there and provided to Town Council. What I can speak to is the IGA process. Let me see if I can put my volume up. I was also Special Counsel to the Cape and Vineyard Electric Cooperative, and we undertook 25-plus megawatts of solar development on the Cape and Vineyard using the same structure with an intergovernmental agreement with the site hosts, the various towns of the cooperative who hosted the solar projects, and entered into an intergovernmental agreement for that lease of the property to the solar development. And in each one of those cases, I was never aware that the economic provisions of the agreement required Town Meeting approval. So when I saw the Town Meeting vote in Falmouth from 2016, I believe it was, to approve this project, to me, it reads as if that vote gives the Board of Selectmen authority to set the terms and conditions for the lease of the land, which in my opinion, our governmental agreement statute would include any rent provision or any provision of the intergovernmental agreement. Because the intergovernmental agreement statute states specifically that an agreement that may be approved by the Board of Selectmen. So the language that I wrote for the EDIC and that was shared with Town Council, I believe the Selectmen frequently, is a compromise decision that might help solve some of the...
So I'm just gonna, your feed is really choppy, it's not the volume, it's actually just sort of cutting out. So it's a little bit hard for us to hear. Let me just summarize what I think you said, which is that you were surprised by the need for the Town Meeting vote based on your extensive work with other communities on similar projects. And that your interpretation of the vote was such that it gave the Board the authority to then make decisions about rent going forward.
That is, that is correct.
I wonder if there's other people using internet in your home that might be causing your feed to be weak.
It's an internet problem.
So maybe we can, yeah, take your time. If you want to go ahead and, you know, if you want to stop your video and try and figure out, maybe IT, if you could assist, maybe she can just call in. Because I think, you know, she can participate via phone line, that might be a little bit easier while we continue the discussion. Okay. Great, so I saw Doug, you had Doug Jones and Sam, I believe. You both had your hands up earlier.
Unfortunately, the first point I was going to make is exactly the one that's being discussed by the attorney right now. And I remember being fairly involved in the negotiation for this IGA. And it was a good deal of work to get it to the 50% that we finally agreed on, and I felt was a fairly extensive agreement. And I felt that our Town Meeting approved our IGA and giving the authority based on that information. And to now change it on them, I think that they, knowing our Town Meeting and the way they feel controls money, for us to change it on them, I think that they would, being that as being highly suspect, and I think they'd have a problem with it. And I think in the same token, I think they would expect we'd do the same kind of agreement in Phase 2. Having said that, I do think we could very easily convince them that we are behind this plan, that we should change the rent at Town Meeting to a nominal rent for both Phase 1 and Phase 2, that we could get behind this project, all of us together, and get the special legislation done, and make a commitment that this is what we're going to do. It does mean the EDIC has to trust that we're going to go to Town Meeting and look for Town Meeting support. If we can't get Town Meeting support for this, we shouldn't do it. If we can, let's get the town behind it and get full force, 100%, full steam ahead and go. But if we're worried the Town Meeting won't support it, we shouldn't be doing it.
Great, thank you, Doug. Sam, and then Doug Brown.
Yes, I mean...
Go ahead, Sam.
We are politicians in the sense that, you know, we're dealing with public opinion and trying to represent our constituents. And so Doug makes a really good point. I think all of us will lose trust if we don't convince Town Meeting that this is the right thing to do. So that's the reality. We represent, certainly the Select Board represents the citizens, and that is our first allegiance, right? We're trying to find our way through this. The second point I want to make, though, is, you know, you're losing trust in me as representative of the citizens when you don't come up with a business model for this loan program. And I'm not seeing any numbers, I'm not seeing any backing from particular bankers that basically say, yeah, this model, this financial model would work. And all this is just arm-waving and speculation without really a tangible, pretty specific proposal on how the numbers are all going to fall out. EDIC's contribution, the contributions from this lowering of the rents that you keep, less to the town that you keep, it's really bothering me that you're claiming all these things, but I'm not seeing any numbers in the terms of a business model. And so that's what I want to see, that kind of detail that would convince me, and I think would convince Town Meeting members, this is something we need to do for our business.
Thank you, and Doug Brown, and then Mike, Michael, excuse me.
I think the members of the EDIC just explained their position. How much effort can they put into this when they don't even know that we're really supporting it? And I wonder if we could come to agreement on some sort of a vote here tonight from the Board to show support for this program, given the fact everyone agrees, I think, that Town Meeting should have some say in this. Could we give a vote of support and then make it contingent on Town Meeting approval? I just feel like...
Yeah, I think we have to have an intergovernmental agreement to give to Citizens Energy. I have a question, though, so I think Doug is raising a question. I have a question though. So I think Doug is raising a question that I also had and Frank um can perhaps weigh in. So two questions. One, can you have the agreement that has the contingencies in it, you know, saying that the rent will be X if Y happens, you know, so rent will be this amount if uh subject to appropriation of town meeting? Is that going to be something that's acceptable? I'm, I'm guessing not because it's not definitive. And then the other piece is, how long does the agreement have to be for? Can it be for a shorter period of time that is then reviewed? Um, again, giving time for special legislation and this, this other, and the vote of town meeting?
Well, Megan, one of the problems we have here is it, like Sam Patterson just alluded to, we have no details here. Now, the, the only representation that I've heard is that this is a program that's going to have a life existence of 20 years. So therefore, the EDIC over 20 years will be looking at receiving a lot of money, uh, much more than people are thinking about. Um, so uh in, in, also in respect to Doug Brown's idea of having a motion to conceptually approve the uh recovery loan program, again, my recommendation previously had been, let's see something that you can look at and then vote your support. Um, all of these things can be done fairly quickly. Um, it just has, somebody has to get down and, and put the pen to the paper and make it happen, but it can be done. And I, I'm not here to stop the program. I just want to see it done right.
Yep. Thank you. Chris and then,
Uh, Sam, I was kind of surprised. Um, you know, we have so much information. We, you know, um, I, I went through meetings with our, our council on, on the math. It's unbelievable how much information we have on the Phase Two. It's just that one thing leads to another in order to convince a bank and partners. So right now, we're still at Stage One. And I think if maybe Mike DeJornau could clarify, if pieces fall in, the plan develops itself, it's hard to develop a business plan with unknowns still. And I think, uh, we have all the technical data and we have the concept and we talk about it all the time. I just, Mike, maybe you can explain, if it's okay, Madam Chairman, that um Mike knows what I'm talking about.
Yeah, but how about, how about a document that you can share with us so that we can see the numbers? Because we haven't seen any of that. You say that and I'm the new member of the EDIC Board, so I haven't seen that business model.
Yep. So Mike and then Attorney Edelman.
Okay. And uh, I saw Chairman Land had his hand up a while ago.
I missed you. Excuse me. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So do you want to, do you want to, uh, Chairman Land, did you want to go ahead and speak to some of those issues?
Oh, I mean, sure. I mean, I think the main thing that I wanted to point out is uh, we've been working, you know, we work on a number of different projects, a, a volunteer committee, trying to thing, uh, trade programs, board efforts for the local business committee. This is, this is one. Um, and it, yes, it has worked in iterative pace. So we don't have everything out there, but to, to spend more time on, on the EDIC and a, and a program, uh, we would want to know that there's going to be some support for, you know, not like uh, uh, we'd be making money off this. This is to support all businesses um that are, that are suffering right now. So we are maybe uh working fast, but I think that's because I think a lot of the businesses need help uh sooner rather than later. Um, so I guess that, that, I mean, sure, we could put together a, a document as, as Sam suggests. Um, and, and I'm not sure about the, the, I, uh, Mr. Duffy mentioned the 20 years. I, I haven't really thought about that or talked to Mike about that. Um, but I understand that sort of concern uh on a long-term, term basis. Um, but I just, you know, do you want us to do it? You know, do you want us to put that effort in? That's, I guess, what we want to know.
I would love to see it with 50% rent and 100% rent. So we can see the difference. That if we do the same agreement for Phase Two that we did for Phase One, what could you do? But if we opted to 100%, what could you do? If we made Phase One now also 100%, what could you do? And see those three different models and saying, oh, now we see the benefit for it. But right now, I don't see doing anything different than what town meeting agreed, which is the 50% for both until I see in paper as Sam Patterson saying, this is the bang you would get for that additional buck.
I, excuse me, I'm stepping away for one moment. Um, Doug Brown will just sort of direct the conversation for a moment. And I had said that, uh, we would hear from Attorney Edelman.
Thank you. And I apologize for that. Um, I hope you can all hear me now.
Yes, much better.
Okay. Um, the crazy new virtual world we live in. I apologize. Um, I think the one point I wanted to, to just circle back to, which I was trying to make earlier was that the rent provision that I proposed would hopefully try and alleviate some of this concern and allow for information to be presented to the Board of Selectmen in the next 18 months that would help satisfy, um, you know, the, the answers um you, to the questions you have. Um, but would also give the EDIC the flexibility to work with the banking institutions, put the plan together in place to run the program. Um, I'm a lawyer. I went to law school, so I didn't have to do math. So I, I can't speak to the numbers. That's, that's for Mike. But the, the way I drafted that provision, they would have 18 months to get a program up and running. And if they didn't, then the rent would revert to the 50%. It's an automatic reversion. It will go back to the 50% and it would be prorated to the commercial operation date. So it's 18 months from the date of the IGA being executed. And if that doesn't happen, then the rent goes to 50% and they would prorate it back to the commercial operation date. So the town would not lose out on any of the funding that um it originally thought it might receive by taking in half of the um lease payment. So to me, that seemed like a reasonable approach to remove some of the ambiguity or alleviate some of the tensions between differing legal opinions because it would give you the time necessary to be able to review the documentation to your satisfaction, give the EDIC the time to go obtain the special legislation. But if it didn't happen by a date certain, the, the, the funding would automatically go back to 50/50. And Frank can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe in that instance, you would need town meeting approval to go back to, to automatically switch to 50/50. Um, there was no reference in the original town meeting vote to how the funding would be split. It was just left to the discretion of the Board of Selectmen. And the, the timing in between when rent would actually kick in, which is the commercial operation of the system and the 18-month deadline is not very long. That would not be a very large gap. This commercial operation won't happen until sometime next spring or summer, depending upon how fast citizens can build and how long the utility, local utility takes to approve the interconnection of the system to the electric grid. So to me, it seemed like a provision that would make you whole if you weren't satisfied with the parameters of the loan program in the interim. But it would give the EDIC the flexibility to partner with the banking institutions and anyone else um looking at the transactional documents that, that they would know there would be funding in place if the program got the special legislation and was up and running in 18 months. Appreciate you hearing from me. I just wanted to make sure you fully understood the, the thinking I had behind the language that I proposed for the EDIC. It was an attempt at compromise to try and obtain the best interests of both parties here.
Great. Appreciate it. And thank you for working on that technical difficulty. It's just the way of life these days. So um, Sam, go ahead. And then I want to try to move forward because I know we spent a, a lot of time speaking about this important issue, but I do think we have to make a decision. So go ahead, Sam.
Yeah, I, you know, back in May, I think this board provided the supportive kind of vote and go ahead on this. And I had hoped we would see, you know, a, a, a business model by now and the benefits that would happen, how it was going to be managed, who was going to get these loans, how you would decide where the priorities were and everything else. That was three months ago. We still don't have that. So my concerns, and I've been a program manager for some very large government programs in the millions, and I would never have let out a subcontract with the kind of proposal that you're giving me, giving us verbally right now. I need to see those details. And I represent the citizens of this town. I'm the steward of that property up there at the landfill. And that's how I view my role. So you guys have got the time. You've got partners in the banks. Those banks make money off of these things too. They'll be willing to assign you somebody to help you come up with that kind of a loan agreement and how it will be administered. I, I don't think you're, you know, you're not digging in enough to give us the details that will allow us to really partner with you in a program that looks like it's going to succeed. Because right now, I'm not confident your loan program is going to succeed. And I'm not willing to commit the town's money to you until I see that, until I have that confidence. And that's where I am.
Yeah. And so let me just go back to Chris's, um, Chris Land's um question, which was, you know, I think kind of at the, the heart of it, which is, you know, do, you know, do, does this board sort of want to see this program go forward? Um, and, and I think that the board has on a number of occasion, occasions, you know, made that sentiment known that we think that there's going to be a need. Um, although there has been a lot of money that's come into the community, there are businesses that have, you know, not been able to partake of those federal funds. There are businesses that um, you know, are going to be in a very different position next year. I mean, they're trying to sort of eke through the summer, but as they weigh their long-term, um, you know, sort of their long-term future, they're going to need some of that support. And I think that this board has made it clear that we, we do believe there'll be a need and that this program could have, could, you know, fill that need. Again, I think if we see some of those, those details. Um, so you know, I, I think that on a couple of occasions, um, you know, back in May and then again in June and then through conversations that have been going on, um, you know, I was part of a conversation with members of EDIC, Town Council, Town Manager about this issue as well, to try and, you know, figure out how we get from point A to point B. Um, so I do think that there is an appetite for this um program. I think that there's a concern about, again, stewarding those, those resources that belong to the, you know, from our perspective and from our town's council's perspective, you know, belong to um the town of Falmouth and we're, you know, folks who are, are trying to um, you know, manage that and make sure that we do it in a transparent way and comply with, you know, all of the regulations as well as our responsibilities to town meeting. You know, some communities may have a different type of town meeting. They may, their town meeting members may be different. We have, as everybody here knows, an incredibly active town meeting membership who goes through our budgets with a fine-tooth comb. I mean, to the point of, you know, making suggestions in a couple of thousands of dollars range for how we should better spend some of our money. I mean, these are very active individuals. So um, I think if we're doing the work upfront and making town meeting feel comfortable about it, um, and just doing it clearly, you know, I think that that's something that this board takes as a serious responsibility. But I do think there's an appetite for this program with some more details, Chris. I don't think this is something that the board is against. Um, uh, Mike.
Yeah, uh, thank you, uh, Madam Chair. I, I just want, I, I just wanted to address Sam's concerns. So just to remind everybody, the information that we have shared with everybody, I think on, on May 4th, we did uh provide quite a bit of budget information in terms of, of what we thought, uh, if, if we uh were able to have nominal rent, uh, at that time, we were talking about uh Phase One and Phase Two. Uh, since then, we're just talking about Phase Two, but how much funds we could leverage, making assumptions about uh what our cost of money would be with partner banks. So we have made those presentations. Uh, I reviewed the PowerPoint that we did back uh in May and there was, you know, a fair amount of information about how the loans would be administered and the target borrower would be. Uh, is there underwriting criteria there? No. And that would be developed. So no question, there's more information to come, but I just wanted to recap information that we had shared. And I think uh Mike Lasso also had sent out over the weekend an additional piece on, on the loan guidelines. And I, and I understand, but I also understand what Sam was saying. There's still another whole level of detail below that which needs to be developed, which we're happy to bring to the board. But I think a lot of the weeks since June have been spent trying to figure out what the path forward is on a couple of critical issues. And I would say probably the, the pivotal point is that, that I think we have to take into account uh and the EDIC board, and I don't want to speak for it, but you know, we've been working on this, has to take into account. We could do three months more worth of work. We just won't, you know, we want to have a clear indication. Does it require that uh change in the IGA rent provision from 50% down to nominal is half, going to have to go to a town meeting vote in the fall? And that, that's, I think, what we're looking for. If you're saying yes, then I think the EDIC has to make a decision. Should we spend more time on this with the idea that, and are, are we going to have the Select Board supporting this program? You know, with us in?
Let, let me, I know your point is well taken, Mike. And we, and I get it. And we understand that, you know, time and resources are finite for, for EDIC as well. Um, you know, folks are volunteering and, and you don't want to put in three more months of work and it just goes nowhere. I would say this, this town, um, this town meeting and this town as a whole just voted overwhelmingly for a Prop Two and a Half override. Um, you know, so I think the appetite in our town meeting is one to support the community as a whole. And so, um, you know, we, this board really got behind that um particular issue and did some education around it and tried to really promote it. And if we had the details um in advance and this board felt comfortable with the program you're, you're, um, you know, you're discussing and there was a warrant on the article, that, that same process is, is what would play out. So I think, you know, to me, I don't see the hurdle. We never know what town meeting does and it's, and that's why we have it, is to, you know, really be a check on things and, and to be that legislative body. But, you know, the history of town meeting has been one that supporting the community um for ticket higher ticket, much higher ticket items than this, um, has been something that town meeting has done. So I think, you know, town meeting to have the details, have the information in front of it. Um, you know, I don't see it as something that, you know, we never know, we can't take that vote for granted, but um, you know, the appetite has been there in the past on town meetings part, in the recent past even, even in the midst of COVID. We just had our town meeting during the summer and even with the challenges in front of us, they voted overwhelmingly um for the override. So, you know, which is, is a significant thing. So um, I understand your concern, but I think, you know, what we're hearing from this board is to vote it without details is something that um, you know, they're not feeling comfortable with. Uh, Sam?
Yeah. And the other thing is I want to see your bankers here. You know, you're talking about bankers administering this. Like, I don't see any of them. I don't hear any of them saying, look, you do this, we're right there with you. There's some missing pieces to this that really bother me. And I, that's why I don't have any confidence right now that this is going to work. Because I don't see the team there. Uh, we, we want to support the businesses. There is no doubt about that. I can speak quite honestly and confidently for every one of the other Select Board members, right? But I'm not seeing from you the kind of team and detail that makes me have confidence that you can do this. And that we're not just throwing away town money by lowering the rent agreement. So we are,
That's where we are. That's where I am.
Right. So this, this past week, we, we have conference calls with the two partner banks that we've been negotiating on a pretty regular basis, but we're still negotiating with them. And we are going to, uh, if, if we're able to move forward with the program, we'll also be trying to um, you know, put out a, an RFP, if you will, and have other banks uh participate as well. So I take your point, Sam. We haven't, you know, we haven't sort of, again, because those are entities we're negotiating with, but we're in regular communication with them. And um, uh, there is quite a bit of interest in the program, no question about it. Um, I do have one final question. So in addition to town meeting vote on a change in the IGA rent provision from, say, 50% down to a nominal amount, uh, it, it's my understanding, this is a question for Town Council, that that would also involve special legislation because it would be town meeting that they're indirectly or directly funding uh the EDIC. So now are we talking about two pieces of special legislation?
Frank, could you speak to that? And then I saw you Doug.
I think the, uh, the special legislation would relate to, one, the creation of the recovery loan program. Um, and if the recovery loan program is authorized, then I don't think we need a special, a special town meeting vote to trans- to transfer money to the, um, EDIC. However, my position is that money still must be appropriated by town meeting to pass, to pass it on to the, um, the EDIC. I go back to chapter 121C, which says, "All money spent by the town in aid of the EDIC must be in appropriation." That's the basis of this, and that's what we can overlook. But if the ED, if the legislature says, fine, you may create this recovery loan program, and the recovery loan program allows you to loan money to private businesses without mortgages, without security, without all the other bells and whistles they normally require, um, then I think we can follow the base, follow that special legislation and feel comfortable doing so. Thank you.
Right, thank you, Frank. Um, go ahead, Mike, last comment, and I I think the board can go, maybe go for it. So go ahead.
Yeah, just to touch upon a couple of things that Frank mentioned. So, uh, you know, whatever loan program we design and put together will, uh, you know, in every case, we'll, we'll try to, uh, secure any loans with our hard assets like real estate or equipment. There'll certainly be personal guarantees. Uh, the point is, we're going to be partnering with a local bank, and they're going to be, uh, essentially evaluating all the loans, collecting all the loan documents, evaluating the net worth of the borrowers to determine if the personal guarantees are, um, you know, the net worth is there for the personal guarantees. Uh, and that would be, you know, uh, if you can't get hard assets. So I think that, you know, that kind of collateral and things like that would be features that would be built in and would be administered by our partner banks. So we'd have all of the checks and balances of a commercial loan program of our partner bank. Uh, and when we select that bank, you know, obviously, uh, you know, and in evaluating, we're, we're, you know, one partner bank with another, we'll share all of those details with the board. It does have to be somewhat confidential because it'll be somewhat of a negotiation with partner banks, but we're, but we're happy to do that.
And I think, um, you know, part of why we have a representative from the board, um, with, you know, from the Board of Selectmen and working with EDIC is that, you know, we're not expecting you to come and sort of publicly announce where those negotiations are going. But some, but, you know, there can be a loop-in of the town through, um, you know, through the partnership, uh, excuse me, through, um, the representative, um, to the board, so that there's some, you know, some that that discussion is ongoing.
Okay. And town council, too.
Yes, of course, yep. Okay, great. So what is the pleasure of this board?
We had already approved the I IGA with a 50% share rent. I thought we did that. Doug, didn't you make that motion?
Go ahead, Frank.
I made one back in May for nominal.
Uh, that was in May, but in the 15th of June, you voted to approve, uh, the intergovernmental agreement. Um, and as Sam said, the rent is basically 50% of the rent received by the EDIC from the solar developer with the provision, um, that when the recovery loan program is, becomes effective, uh, by special legislation, then you will renegotiate, you'll entertain an application to renegotiate the rent at that time, and that will be subject to town meeting approval. So you basically have done it with your, uh, vote of December, or excuse me, of June 15th, 2020.
That's my recollection, too.
So today, we're considering whether or not we want to consider the proposed intergovernmental agreement prepared by the EDIC, which would be a nominal rent of $10, was it $10 a year or a month, whatever? I would like to consider that because it seems like it's a roadblock for them, having this other agreement that says, should it become available? I mean, if they don't have the commitment from us, which it's not really in the agreement that we did in June, it just says we can renegotiate, but that, they can't take that to the bank and say, okay, we got this, it says we can renegotiate. But that's not hard numbers for them.
Well, I could tell you that as a program manager that's led, you know, proposals, I always had my partner subcontractors committed to a particular path forward, right? I had their commitment, and then I would go forward with it. And then, you know, the the buyer had that option of saying, yeah, I'll take your proposal, or I'll take somebody else's proposal. I want to see those partners that are going to administer that loan program. I'm I'm not comfortable right now that this is a viable program yet. There's just not enough details, there's not enough partnership that makes me feel like EDIC's got this so that this is going to happen and it's going to be successful.
I agree, but they're volunteers, they're trying to do this, but we're not giving them.
They're not, they're not all volunteers, and they haven't reached out to the banks to basically come up and say, banks, give us some hands here, give us some language to put into this proposal, too, that this election. I feel like this is, you know, you guys have been just kind of coasting along and not bringing together a team to really make this feel like a solid program.
I saw, did I see Doug Jones' hand up? Yeah.
I feel much more comfortable sticking with our current IGA, but planning on putting an article on the town meeting warrant for the November town meeting, uh, getting town meeting approval to change the IGA to, from the 50% to the $10 nominal rent. And once we get approval from there, then, uh, the EDIC can go with the, go take the money to the bank at that point. And there is no money actually we're talking about yet because Phase Two, as their attorney said, isn't going to be paying any money for another 12, 15, 16 months. So they can wait for three months to actually get the commitment, but it's not going to keep them from getting actually any money at all for another year or so.
Right. I I personally don't see the delay of town meeting. I understand the challenges, um, and I, and I would say I think EDIC has done as much, you know, and I hear what you're saying, Sam, but I also think, um, you know, EDIC has kind of been, you know, I wouldn't say they've been, my opinion wouldn't be that they've been coasting. I think they've been doing work. I I think it's just that they're, we're at this impasse as to whether or not, you know, we're jumping into that next level. Um, and I, but I think that that town meeting deadline, although let's, you know, keep our fingers crossed we can have it in November, um, but it gives a deadline to move some of this, this project to a more detailed place. Um, and then, you know, it gets the blessing hopefully of town meeting, um, and that really is a strong, um, you know, that really is a strong thing that you can continue to work with, with the banks. I mean, the idea that if the board is going to put forward, uh, an article on the warrant, I think is a clear indication that you have, you know, support of the board, if that's the direction that we go in. Um, and so I think, you know, we're continuing to work with lenders and work up those details. Um, I, you know, I don't, if if there was money tomorrow to disperse, I might think of it differently, but there isn't any money to disperse to businesses to support them, um, at present, so, um, I think.
I second Doug's proposal. I think it's a good proposal, and maybe we can call on Frank to please put together a draft of that article that we can circulate to EDIC.
Okay, so let's vote. Um, so Doug's, your your vote is to approve the draft submitted by town council and to, um, submit a warrant for town meeting in November to address the, uh, looking forward for funding appropriation, excuse me. Is that your motion? Okay, and that was seconded by Sam. Any further discussion? Okay, by roll call, please, Jones?
Jones, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Brown?
Reluctantly, I guess I'll vote with you. Aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Aye, English Braga, aye. Okay, so we'll, uh, thank you to everyone. I know it's it's late and there was a lot of discussion. So we'll, um, ask Frank and Irie to help us work on an article for town meeting and continue the discussion so that, um, we have some more details and we're ready for town meeting in November. Mike?
Uh, one quick question to town council. So, uh, Frank, based on the vote that was here tonight, um, can can you work with Audrey to to clean up the rent provision in the IGA? I don't know if the one, the last one I saw was, I think, July 10th or something? And maybe it might be a little bit different than what was just voted, but.
I, we'll, we'll probably be talking tomorrow, Mike.
Okay, great, because what has to happen now is, uh, EDIC now has to, to have its, you know, to have, now that we have the whole document, to have its vote.
Yeah, well, I think all, what they did tonight is just, we started the process to get this to closure.
Yep, no, I just, I understood. I just wanted to make sure we were going to have a, a cleaned-up provisions document. Okay, thank you.
Because of the deadline of the the end of the month for Citizens Energy. Thank you all very much, really appreciate all the input. Thank you. Okay, now, um, let's see, we have, um, I think we're on G now. Approved Certificate of Betterment or Special Assessments for Roadway Betterment Taking, Final Completion of Roadway Upgrades and Cost Assessment for Captain Davis Lane. I believe we have, uh, Mr. McConerty here to, um, talk to us a bit about this. Were you going to set the stage, Julian, or was Peter going to lead this? You're just muted.
I can make a brief introductory comment and then pass it over. Delighted to pass it to Peter. Um, the board will recall Captain Davis Lane and Winthrop Drive, uh, were the, uh, most recent two, um, formerly private, uh, streets which were placed in the betterment process and with the able assistance of Public Works. Uh, it's brought to the point where the board can vote to, uh, take this last step necessary. So Peter, you want to comment in further?
Yes, before Peter unmutes, I just want to, uh, let me read G so we can, excuse me, H, so we can have a discussion about the two. So H would be to approve Certificate of Betterment or Special Assessments for Roadway Betterment Taking, Final Completion of Roadway Upgrades and Cost Assessment for Winthrop Drive, Drive West Side. Welcome, Peter.
Yes, good evening. Thank you. Um, yes, for for both roads, Captain Davis Lane and Winthrop Drive West, uh, as we've been able to do in the past, depending on Public Works', uh, workload and, uh, schedules, um, we were able to join in and work on both of these roads and have them completed both, uh, at the end of last year, um, to bring it, bring it to, uh, completion and have the roads taken to be public streets. So, uh, with the estimates for each of the roads, uh, Captain Davis Lane came in because of Public Works, where it was able to go in and interact and do all the drainage and the, uh, and all the roadway work and the final completion. Um, the actual cost per homeowner, per resident was about a third of the, uh, projected price. And the same with, uh, Winthrop Drive is a little bit more than a third of the projected price. So what that does, um, I mean, it helps, it it absolutely helps out each of the residents. They were able to, um, they're expecting one cost, and then the cost comes in, um, a lot lower. It it helps them out in the betterment, but what it also does is it also puts additional funds in. So, uh, for the next action taken, uh, of betterment roads, which we're working on now, yeah. And I think we're working on three new roads coming up. So, um, yeah, both of these roads are completed and they're ready to be, uh, they're ready to be assessed.
Wonderful, thank you, Peter. And I'm sure it's a welcome, that's welcome news about the, uh, diminishment of the overall assessment. Um, Doug, I saw your hand raised. Doug Jones?
The question I do have is the change from the estimate to the actual. For it to be such a substantial difference, is that just because DPW can do it? I know part of the reason also is we can't go higher than what we've budgeted in the estimate, but we always can go lower. But if it's higher than that, then the assessment still is at that top level, and the town has to, uh, absorb the entire cost if we are above the estimate.
So, so, right, so so what happens is with, uh, well, with with Public Works, it's, we're just, we're just, um, it's basically materials. So a typical, um, a a leach basin, um, contractor would usually go in for about, say, $6,000 just to put a leach basin in. Uh, Public Works can do that for about $1,200, and that's just for for a leach basin if we're putting in one. And these roads, um, they took, they took multiple basins. We're able to go in and grade the road, prep the road, so we don't have our contractor doing it. And and like I say, it all, it all depends on our schedule, but we we've been able to incorporate this work. Uh, we spit it in at certain times of the year, so it's not done immediately, and it's, it won't be done in two or three weeks. It takes a little longer because we fit it into our schedules, but you can see the benefits on on these projects. Um, and that's typical what we do. They come in to right between a third and a half, because if Public Works was not be able to do it, we'd have to bring a contractor to be able to do it. And, yeah, and as you had mentioned, Doug, we don't want to be breaking out of the other side on it.
Perfect, thank you very much.
That's great. And I, and, you know, I just, I hope people, you know, recognize just that that huge value that comes from DPW working that into what is already a really busy schedule. But, you know, doing that so that, um, really tens of thousands of dollars end up being saved for, um, folks who want to have that, um, you know, that just that, you know, improved services on their, on the roads that they live on. So huge thanks to DPW for, uh, for doing that, especially in the midst of everything that's going on now. So we really appreciate that. Um, any further, oh, Peter, go ahead.
And just one more comment, uh, ancillary to it. So, uh, each road that we take from private road and bring to public road, um, that's also affects our portionment for the chapter 90 accounts at the end of the year, because the more miles we have, the more funds we get. So it helps us on the other end also for getting funds back to state.
Great. That's, that's a win. We'll take any funds we can get, so, um, thank you. So, um, do I have a motion to approve these two certificates of betterment?
Don't move.
Okay, second? Okay, I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, by roll call. Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
English Braga, aye. Great, thank you so much, Peter, appreciate it.
You're here.
Um, okay, we are going to move next to, um, a discussion or update on our COVID-19 issues. Um, quite a bit has gone on in the last week, and, um, we have a lot of questions from, uh, folks out in the public that are, you know, a- as is the situation with a lot of things like this. There, you know, there's a lot of anecdotal, um, there are a lot of stories kind of going around, a lot of anecdotal information. Um, and we wanted to make sure that we invited folks on tonight to really talk about, um, some of the most pressing issues that are before the town right now. We have our health agent, Scott McGann. Um, we also, um, would like to bring in our, um, superintendent of schools and, uh, Lori Duer. Dr. Duer should be on here somewhere, as well as, um, Kelly Welsh, who's the chair of the school committee, to talk about, um, the situation with graduation. And we just want to start by saying that, um, oh, yes, Julian?
Madam Chair, I I think we also want Maggie Conley, our, uh, acting superintendent, to join us as well.
Great, I, thank you. Maggie Clayton? Maggie Clayton in?
Clayton, pardon me.
Diana, aye.
Is Di, if Diana is, um, in the list, that would be great. I don't have my list open because then I can't see everybody. So, um, as as those individuals are being brought in, um, and I anticipate there may be some public comment or question, so Peter will let us know if there are. Um, but I I just want to start, um, on the the issue of the school graduation, um, by by just saying that, you know, we really wanted to make sure that we had, um, Dr. Duer and, um, Chairwoman Welsh to come in and talk about, um, what we know is an incredibly difficult decision. We know plans have been in the works for months to try and have graduation for seniors, and there's probably nothing more heartbreaking, um, for, you know, to to have before you as a decision to have to cancel that in the way that, um, it took place. And so, uh, we really wanted to have an opportunity, um, since the cancellation on Saturday, um, you know, to really have the public hear from the both of you, have an opportunity to ask some questions if they'd like to. But really, for this board to publicly support, um, the decision that you made and the diff, and understanding the difficult nature of that decision, um, and really recognizing what it meant for our graduates and for their families, and acknowledging publicly that, um, it is a, another rite of passage that this particular class has had to forego, and how hard that is, um, and how hard that is for their families. And we wanted to acknowledge that we, you know, we really understand, you know, there are members of our family who are part of that graduating class, family members and friends. And, um, so we know it just, um, that you recognize the impact of it, and we do too. So we wanted to invite you here, uh, this evening. And I I think what I'll do is let me start first with Scott. And maybe, Scott, you can set the tone for where we are right now, what we know, when we knew it. One of the questions I've had, um, from a lot of folks is, when did we know that there may be some new cases of COVID in the community? Um, so maybe if you can give us an update of what we know and where we're at right now.
Well, our case count's 228, and as far as what we know, when we know, I guess in regards to the school first.
Um, if you want to just tell us what you're seeing going on in the community.
I'll give you a recap. There's a, there's a lot going on. So our current case count is 228. Now, that doesn't include probables, and I'll get into that in a second. Uh, last week, we had 15 in a long-term care facility, the Royal McGanns, and 11 being associated with Falmouth, because people do go in there for, from other towns, so 11. Um, then we've been working, I've been working with, on Maven with, uh, you know, the state really takes over. takes over the, those long-term care facilities. So we're, that's one issue that was earlier on. As far as the school, I think Lori and I were talking on Friday afternoon about it. So that was relatively quick that we had some self-reporting, if I remember correctly, Lori? So we had self-reporting. The thing that I think, and I'm just going to cut to chase, one of the things is that it's not a case unless it's imported into the Maven system and we had a lot of self-reporting. There's been a lot of delay in a couple of different ways. The testing from our normal, what we call a PCR test, a nasal swab that everybody knows, that's someone that considers as confirmed, there's been a delay. There's a lot of tests going on, the labs can't handle it. And I think what's happened is a lot of parents have worked their way towards the one in Dennis. If you heard, there's this rapid test in Dennis. Last week, before I knew there was even, you know, before the tests came in from Dennis, we were getting complaints from Down Cape Health Agents on our call that they were not submitting them into the state. So we've had a delay with some of those coming in. So I'm getting, on Friday night, I got, you know, we got some anecdotal that there's some stuff going on, but it's not showing up as a case. Now, that hadn't happened before. Usually when the doctors from, you know, your physician would let you know at the same time, we would get notified roughly at the same time, we could jump on. And that's where, so there's been a delay over the last few days, especially with the one in Dennis, which the health agents got together and contacted the state to work on the Dennis situation because it seems like a lot of parents had gone there. And I would, don't blame them because it's a very quick test, it's a 15-minute turnaround. So we've had a little bit of issue with that. So that happened on Friday night. So at Friday night, when we had the meeting, I didn't have a case in the queue that were related to the individual things that we were hearing. And so that's what I reported at that one. So that's this one. The beaches, we had self-reporting as well over the weekend. Again, not showing up until, I think the first one showed up right around 11 o'clock this morning. So there's a big delay. So my contact traces work off of Maven. We all work off this epidemiological system and they're not showing up. And unfortunately, some of these ones from Dennis have been showing up, they don't come as confirmed cases. So our 228 number doesn't include any of those Dennis, Dennis ones, as far as I can tell, because the Dennis ones are considered probable because they're not actually testing for the virus. They're testing for an antigen or something else in there. So it's, if you're familiar with the two types of testing, hear about the antibody testing, is everybody here about that one? That is, shows you that you have a past infection. Those come as probables, they're not an active infection. Antigens are kind of being sent like, and I don't think they are, I think they are real, I'm not saying they aren't. But the way the computer deals with it, deals a little bit different way. We're actually doing contact tracing, dealing with those as they are confirmed. So I've got all the cases coming in today, not Sunday, not Saturday, and so that's how we were jumping on. So it's been a lot, unfortunately, the parents were knowing and then calling and then, you know, the contact tracing's delayed because of the way it gets imported. And so, I'm trying to think of that's what it's, so.
It does, can you?
Yeah.
Yeah, so in other words, just correct me if I'm wrong, there's a delay between the anecdotal self-reporting you're hearing, maybe Friday or over the weekend, and results actually coming in and being in Maven today?
Yeah, like an hour before the meeting, you know, the selectmen's meeting, yeah, we were, in between my board of health meeting and selectmen's meeting, there was ones popping up. So yes, there's, you know, there's some delay. It doesn't usually happen that way. I mean, it's just maybe because the Caremark one is you get, you walk, you're driving home and you've got your result, right? Whereas it's taking probably 48 hours, 36 hours before it made it on the computer on some of them. And that had been an issue, that's why the health agents had asked about it. And I was surprised when they came in today to see that they were probables, not confirmed, though I don't think it matters, we should just treat, we're going to treat them as confirmed obviously. And so one of the things is we've, over the weekend, I contacted Sean O'Brien at County Health that helped me get Cape Cod Healthcare on board, we're doing testing, and that's what we've been working on since, I think, yesterday, to secure testing.
Can you talk about that, Scott? So people, I know there was a press release from Julian earlier today. Can you talk about what the town, you know, with you doing that contact with Sean O'Brien, what the town is now going to do in regards to that testing for, in particular, the beach department personnel?
Yeah, so we've, they're going to contact Cape Cod Healthcare, we're going to have them all tested. I was guaranteed a 48-hour turnaround on them, which is, you know, according to Sean, faster than what the normal general public's getting on them, the turnaround. And it'll be billed to the town, so we'll, we'll be billing on it. Julian can probably speak that better than I. So, so I, my, my thing was, let's secure testing, let's get the real stuff that we know and let's get it tested. Anybody that, you know, that was related to the, to the beach situation. And so that's what we've done so far.
Okay. And so as far as the numbers you've had come in to Maven sort of today, what does that look like as far as new probables?
Terms of the beaches, I think it's probably, I mean, I have to be on my computer right now to add them, I think it's somewhere between five and eight, I mean, somewhere I am, probably around, yeah, somewhere around there.
Okay.
You know, they come in as individual cases, they don't add for me. So I've just been looking at the individuals in the notes right now as, so the VNA is what they've got, you know, one person really dedicated to the beaches and there's some issues going on with rush, with some food establishments and some, you know, sort of overlay between the different individuals and so forth. So it gets kind of complicated to figure out where all that weave of that web has come from and that's where we've got a couple of, I've got two, two been on it all day today, two of the VNA stuff.
To try and do the contract, contact tracing and figure out sort of the nexus of it?
Yeah. Yeah, so I had asked, over the weekend, I had asked my VNA to like, let's, you know, I check, I check them, I check Maven every, too. Let's, you know, soon as we see these, just jump on them and for whatever reason, it didn't come in, it didn't get imported.
Normally, the place that does the testing does the inputting into Maven?
Well, normally, no, normally, so like Cape Cod Healthcare would send that out, well, they may do, you know, place may send it to Quest Lab, right? Quest Lab does it, it's automatically in there. But I'm not quite sure, you know, it was the first I heard about even at this place in Dennis was Tuesday when we had the, our health agents call. And they were complaining about the exact same thing. So I took notes, okay, there's an issue with the, with the delay or not even sending it into the state. If it doesn't go into the state, it kind of doesn't count for us, you know, it doesn't work, it's hard for us to, the hard part is, a lot of people call the health department every day to say that they have COVID, okay? And if I follow all the ones of the says and the calls, it gets really cumbersome. I have, I can't have the VNA calling people if it's not in the system, it's not how it sort of works, right? So we have to really stick with what's going on in there because we have enough work to do inside of that, right? So I mean, that's, that's kind of, so, you know, we get calls now. So now we need to maybe change how we're doing that in terms of this one, we start seeing these probables come. Prior to today, all probables would have been antibody tests. Does that make sense to everybody? So antibody test just tells you, you might have been sick in February, March, April. It doesn't tell, it's not a case, right? So we just say, okay, we call the patient, talk to the patient. Patient says sick in, normal, this would be a typical antibody, sick in March, had symptoms, couldn't get a test, case closed. That's kind of what you see with probables. And it's not a lot of, so we were looking at these probables specifically to the, to what's happened with the beach, with the individuals related with the beach, to, to look at those as, as actual, as confirmed, right? So if that makes sense.
Just to separate out, so you have the probables, that would be the antigen, antibody that we talked about, normally. Right now, the tests out of Dennis are coming back as probables, but, but you're treating them as active, even though they haven't been in the system, but that's how you're, you're reacting to them, given that there's concern about the reporting from that particular facility, is that correct?
Yeah, and I've asked, you know, I've asked, that's what I've asked the VNA to do for us, because they are on contact traces in the roads. So yes.
Okay, thank you. That just, I think it just gets a little confusing for all the different ways that information comes.
Not how I want it to happen, trust me. It's not, that's not how I want it to work. I mean, I would have loved to tell Lori on Friday night that they were active or something or not, but if it's not in the queue, it gets really hard for me to start going after because again, there's a lot of calls and a lot of, you know, COVID false alarms out there. You follow what I'm saying? There's a lot of that going on, you guys don't see that as the calls that come in every day. But we get a lot of things and I can't, you know, I can't use the, their, the VNA's resources to chase necessarily the down and as they come in. So it just gets real complicated when it doesn't make it in the queue quick enough.
But that's the whole reason why the reporting system is supposed to work the way that it does.
Yeah, it normally does. And we haven't had this problem before until this place, you know, the rapid testing that's been occurring, and it's not, I guess, even considered by the state to be a confirmed. So, you know, anybody who's had the antibody, anybody who's had the chat testing, I'd say you can, you know, do the, do the full one, you know, maybe any benefit. Now, I don't, I would say these are relatively accurate, I wouldn't think they were made and they're not, I'm not saying it's used, probably a lot of, a lot of benefit at all, you know, I'm just saying.
Yeah, it's just, it's not, it's being treated differently. So I'm going to, what I'm going to do is I'm going to hear from Dr. Duer and from Kelly and then I'll hear from Maggie. You can kind of speak specifically about what's happening with the beach department. And then Julian, if you want to kind of talk about how, you know, just elaborate a bit more on what Scott has said about how the town is trying to respond to precisely the challenge that he just described, which is this less than perfect, you know, reporting about results from the Dennis facility and where we go from there. So Dr. Duer, welcome. If you want to just sort of let, you know, the public and this board know the process that, you know, your folks went through about making the decision around graduation.
Yes, thank you, Megan, thank you, Select Board, for having us here tonight. So it was a heart-wrenching decision, of course, because of disappointing our seniors once again, but not the, a hard decision when it comes to the safety of our, our students and staff, families, and certainly the implications for our Balmouth community. We, it was, it all happened very fast. We, our first reporting came in just about 1:00 on Friday. It was self-reporting from a family, it was, it was, it was credible. From there, there was a series of additional information from families and not, and I know I sound vague, but I am trying to protect, keep confidential the information. But to, to back that up, there were a lot of social media posts that would probably support unsafe gatherings of students that was actually kind of far and wide and that all started adding up when you started triangulating the data on that. And so we were very concerned. And so with, you know, the guidance from Desi as far as a graduation and the, the rules around that, and it was a graduation for outdoors only, but the graduation guidance basically said if there were confirmed or suspected cases, that the students should not be allowed to attend the graduation ceremony, which would have been fine, except that the parents continued to report that there were multiple students involved and we had no idea how far and wide that went. So we were unable to identify, although some families did come forward. It was reported that there were more involved that had not. So with that potential exposure and to make sure that, you know, we kept our, everyone safe, you know, we, we made that very difficult decision or recommendation to the school committee. One of the, the other thing, we weren't sure how the vote was going to go, and the reason why we had the emergency meeting was, was so that if, if it turned out that we were just pretty much saying, here's the, the state of, and here's the information that we know, that then families could make, you know, their own decisions about, you know, coming or not. Our, our concern was that we also have to protect our staff. And our staff, it takes a lot of people to pull off a well-run graduation. And I didn't want to put our staff, you know, in a situation where they themselves may feel unsafe and, and then somehow be blamed for the graduation being canceled because we didn't have enough volunteers. Certainly, if this information had come out in advance, we could have possibly, you know, we would have known more information, we would have been able to maybe secure enough staff, volunteers that would, you know, we'd be able to run. But it takes weeks and weeks to set up a graduation and to know all the, the protocols and what we need volunteers to actually do. And, and at the late date on, after the afternoon of Friday, we just didn't see how that was going to be possible to, to make that happen. And, and graduation is such a big event for everybody. You know, everyone was sad. We had everything set up, ready to go, and, you know, it was, you know, very disappointing. But I, I will tell you that I, that many people have actually thanked us for the decision that we made to make sure that, that our, that our students, you know, staff and families were safe. So I think it was the right decision, no matter how difficult it was to do.
Sorry, thank you. Did you want to add to that as well, Chairwoman Welch?
No, I, maybe just to say, you know, it really was like the perfect storm of poor circumstances, the very last minute nature of the, the self-reporting. And it does put us in a really difficult spot moving forward because if people are going to be willing to protect the, the rest of the community by coming forward and reporting that they've tested positive, but yet we can't, you know, we're stuck not being able to really react to that, it's going to make this all the more difficult if those pieces of information are making it into, you know, the system that we're supposed to be able to rely upon. You know, we recognize that people were devastated. They would have been devastated if we had to cancel it a week earlier, but the last-minute-ness was even, even worse, even worse.
Yeah, thank you. I know it's a really hard decision for the board and then obviously we, we fully appreciate that. Anytime any board or department head makes a decision, you know, there are going to be folks who are very upset and sometimes, you know, the response is, you know, equally upsetting for folks who are volunteers on a lot of these committees and who put their heart and soul into doing the work and, you know, spend a lot of time and hours, again, for this particular event, really trying to make it work. And I, and I understand when people are upset and they want to sort of be angry at someone, and I know that that anger can some, and that disappointment and sadness can sometimes be directed in a way that is, you know, it's upsetting to the members and to the volunteers. So I just want to recognize that we know you've received some of that response.
Yes, we have.
We understand that, you understand that it's part of, unfortunately, part of, you know, the way that, that we as human beings sometimes communicate, not at our best, but it nonetheless can be very upsetting and, you know, everybody here is, you know, it hurts sometimes to hear those things or sometimes it's even frightening because sometimes people are really full of rage. So we just, as a board, wanted to recognize that we know you've taken a lot of heat for that and we, we really appreciate you, you know, putting the thoughtfulness into it that you have. So go ahead, Kelly, then Nancy?
I, I appreciate that because, you know, I think the committee has really taken quite a beating, some more than others, but even, even with that, you know, they take the responsibility so seriously and would, even knowing what a beating we were going to take over the weekend, I think they would all do it again because it was the right decision. It, it might not seem like it for some of the seniors that wanted to walk the stage, but in the grand scheme of things, it was. So, thank you.
Nancy?
So I just wanted to make a comment as someone who has made an unpopular graduation decision in the past, that I can certainly empathize with the beating that you've taken, absolutely. And sometimes when you get a little further away from it, it, it doesn't seem as bad. So I think that the committee should be commended for making the decision that's in the best interest of the health of all kids and the larger community. And sometimes kids, I mean, graduation's such a big thing and such an emotional thing for them, that it's hard in that moment, but then when they look in the rearview mirror, they see that you made the right decision. So I, I, I understand how difficult it is and I want to commend the committee because I've been there.
I was right there with you.
So you're the unpopular decision maker.
Evidently, you know, but I'd rather be right than be popular, so I'm okay with that. But we did, you know, I did get text messages from students over the weekend that said, you know, I would rather be able to go to college on time and not be sick than to have a party on Saturday. So, you know, there are a lot of kids that have, have everything exactly in perspective.
Yes, and, and I think also just looking at that, I, I know I've heard from some families who had someone who, you know, a senior graduating but also have younger children and that, you know, their sentiment was, I really, you know, our goal is looking forward to the fall and hoping for school, you know, to open in some capacity. And if we have to forego graduation because it makes that a greater likelihood, then that, you know, they, they were comfortable with that decision. So, you know, I think it's just, you're never, not everyone is going to be happy, we understand it's emotional. I saw, Lori, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, yeah, I think Kelly kind of said, I just wanted to... Yeah, yeah. I think Kelly kind of said, uh, I just wanted to, uh, recognize the number of students, um, that, you know, were just, took this, the, the decision very well, just, you know, very, um, mature and understood and actually, you know, thanked, um, uh, the board and, you know, the, the administration for making the decision to keep them safe. And I mean, they're just incredible students. And I, um, I just really wanted just to give a shout out, um, for the understanding, um, that so many, you know, just, and just the high road. And it just, um, it's just, uh, just a reminder of how incredible our kids really are.
Thank you. And yes, Diana?
I just want to speak a little broader to some of the thought about that. I think what we have to recognize also is that-
Can you just come a little closer to your microphone? You're just a little quiet.
It, even if you have the benefit of all this testing, we still can't let our guard down. Because really what it comes down to is, the test is only as good as the day that they're taking the tests. So if someone is exposed to COVID and knows they're exposed, the prudent thing to do is to quarantine themselves. Because very honestly, they could, exposed on day one, on day four, they could have their test. It could come back negative, but they have another 10 days that, that incubation period of COVID-19 happened. So you've got a 14-day window. So I, it's not that I don't think the tests are important, but I think we can't just put all of our, um, eggs in the basket that somebody gets vaccinated. If they were exposed, they need to spend 14 days isolated so that they're not out for it. But I think we also recognize that it's so hard and so many more disappointments are going to happen until we get vaccinated and everybody feel, feel safer. But I think the, the moral of what we have to do and continue to do is make plans that we do and be able to put in the social distancing that's required and the masking. And that is where we're going to put ourselves and each other safe. And I think that's just, again, it's not, not, not important that we get the testing, but, and the, it's a lot easier to do tracings, you know, when we know somebody's positive. But if you've been exposed, make sure we're isolating ourselves. And that's a really hard thing, I think, for what little I know about adolescents, if you will, to be able to understand that concept. Because we all have trouble with it to start. So, so the more we encourage that mask, whatever we can do outside, spread ourselves out is really going to help take us through this period. Um, but that, that I think is important that people don't really understand about the testing. It's not one and done. It's, you gotta look for 14 days. They turn positive, they're up until day 14.
Right. And that's a good point. And I think, you know, it goes back to some of those, um, basic behaviors that, that Scott and, um, you know, has been reminding us every single week and we've been talking about it. Um, and people I think have, um, you know, have some fatigue. But, you know, the social distancing, masks, the washing of hands, you know, I, I, I've noticed that, um, you know, the, people are more vigilant back in April. And now you see that lax kind of behavior a little bit more. And, um, you know, I think some of what we're dealing with is, is a result of, of that. And, and it is, you know, we just have to keep reminding ourselves of the importance of, of staying on top of what are pretty simple, um, you know, simple behaviors if everybody engages in them. So, um, so I wanted to, um-
Go ahead, Diana.
No, no, go ahead.
The symptoms are so broad now. Everything from a runny nose to a headache, diarrhea, nausea and vomiting and chest discomfort. It's so difficult to know. And I think again, what's important, if someone doesn't feel themselves, they need to stay home, make sure that they're not sick. And this whole asymptomatic positive makes everyone totally crazy. Because I may not have any symptoms and yet I'm spreading virus. So again, that respect for each other with the masks and the social distancing and hand washing, that's the most we can do for ourselves. But if we do do that, we know what happened in Massachusetts. We're the poster child because we did do that. So we continue to, to think through it and just not let our guard down. We'll be able to continue to have events. And we're going to have to think about that. What are we going to do? Because there are going to be people that are going to turn out positive. There are going to be reports that are getting into Scott. And what do you do with all the people that are planned and keep some discussion about scenarios going forward? What are we going to do if this happens, you know, because, um, again, we're all trying to live. And yet, um, it's out there. It's not going to go away.
Right. No, great, great points. No, thank you. That's why we wanted you to come. That's, uh, and get that important input. Um, I just, I wanted to turn to, um, Maggie. If you could, we, we've heard sort of this discussion and it's been all over social media. I know it's going to be in the newspaper. I had a phone call from the Cape Cod Times earlier today about what is happening with employees of the beach department, um, and, you know, what, what's going on there. Obviously, as, um, Dr. Doer was noting, you know, and, and I know it's frustrating for the public, we have to speak with some level of vagueness because we do have to protect people's identities. So, you know, people have to be satisfied with some level of sort of general discussion. Uh, we cannot highlight individuals. We don't want to, you know, give so much detail that it's clear who we're talking about. These are individuals who have, um, you know, privacy as, as, you know, we're guarding their privacy, either as students or as, uh, employees of the town. So, you know, with that kind of general, um, rule in place, can you talk to us, Maggie, a little bit about what has taken place with the beach department in the last few days?
Sure. Um, thank you, Madam Chair and Select Board. Um, the past 72 hours, um, we have had, the beach department, it has 117 employees, um, from top down. And then, um, Friday evening, after work hours, after 5:30 PM, um, we had our first verbal anecdote of a positive case. Um, this was shared via social media with other staff. And, um, it set off a vested interest in getting tested. Um, this testing meant that we were short staffed at, um, we have been running shorter staff, um, for the past three days. On Saturday, two beaches did not have lifeguards on. Um, I sat in a chair as a lifeguard. A lifeguard supervisor sat in a chair to keep an extra beach open. Um, people who got tested but were not symptomatic came in after their test to allow other staff members to leave and get tested. On Sunday, we had only four beaches with lifeguards. Today, we were back up to eight beaches with lifeguards. Um, we are making these decisions on a daily basis. Parking attendants and clerks have been included in all memos and some have chosen to be, um, tested as well. Um, and as of end of workday today, we are at eight verbal reported cases on a staff of 117. Um, so it was one on Friday. We were up to four on Saturday. We were at six at end of day on Sunday, and today we were at eight. So I am eagerly looking forward to a day where we have no new cases. But I have been talking with the town manager's office and the health department, um, very frequently. We have a running dialogue, uh, phone calls, text, emails, um, since this all started. When I, I reached out to Scott, um, at 5:38 with the first report, which was right before he was hopping on to the school committee meeting about the graduation decision. So he was running ragged on Friday and we were just trying to get everything in place to keep the community safe and make sure we had, for all the residents and visitors of Falmouth who are having their regular beach days and regular going about their lives and visiting, um, our recreation spaces, to make sure that we could have it be as safe as possible. So, um, even with staffing setback, we had parking attendants at all beaches, um, all the way through. That is scheduled the same moving forward. Clerk staff has been the same all the way through. The glass we had ordered back in mid-June from Falmouth Glass and Mirror actually got installed today, um, timing-wise. Um, so we had adjusted hours at the LMP Mitchell Bath House today. Um, I know I've been monologuing a bit, so if there's any-
No, no, you're good. So, no, no, that's a, that's a lot of important information, Maggie. So let me ask a couple of questions that people have, um, submitted to me. Um, and the board, jump in if you have others. So, um, one kind of story going around that I've had some, um, folks have sent to me to, to inquire about is, there's this, um, you know, idea that, um, employees were told not to tell people if they thought they were positive or had a concern. Can you address that?
Sure. Um, I believe that that comes from, um, a request that was made by supervisors to not have the peer-to-peer sharing first, to allow it to come out professionally in a memo from the department once the information had happened. Um, when we, I was compiling a timeline for the town manager's office. And when, um, my supervisor staff looked at their communications with staff, um, we believe that the general population was told via social media at least eight minutes before, um, uh, myself or my supervisors were. And the way that information was delivered created a bit of a panic. Um, we, we do want transparency. I have been sharing the numbers, um, nightly with these memos. Here's the information that I have. Mr. Suso, um, Mr. McGann, Mr. Johnson-Scott have all been copied on these, um, notifications. They know the language that's being shared with staff. But the, yeah.
That's really, that's really helpful. So, so really it was about an issue of sort of how information flows down, not keeping it a secret and coming to work and not-
Correct, correct. And, um, the expectation, no one who, A, tested positive, B, lives with someone who tested positive, was expected to come into work. We are, as Mr. McGann said, we are treating these rapid test positives as if they are true cases. And any staff member who is, um, is symptomatic or, um, doesn't feel comfortable, uh, they have individually reached out to staff and have not been scheduled accordingly. But that has me, meant that we are making day-by-day decisions on scheduling and the public can't necessarily know until the day of whether or not, um, what the staffing will look like at each of the 10 beaches.
And, and I saw Scott's hand up, so let me, but let me ask you one other question. If you have a beach that does not have a lifeguard, do you put up signage to indicate that?
Yes. Um, the, the beaches, that it ranged from two to six beaches, um, for the past three days. If they do not have lifeguards, um, the no lifeguard on duty signs that usually go up at the end of the season, as we lose staff on a regular basis for going back to school, um, fall sports, other commitments, um, those signs have gone out with the parking attendants to be posted. So when people drive into the parking lot or walk in, that they know that there are no lifeguards available.
Great, thank you. Scott, you had your hand up to comment?
Yeah, so until further notice, I'm treating all rapid tests, whether it's related to this, we're going to treat it as, you know, confirmed until the state tells me otherwise. It's sort of a new thing. Yeah, but it really just emphasizes, it makes it tough when, you know, with social media, everything could be out before it's really, it, it's totally the opposite is supposed to happen. So things can move real fast in the social media world. And so things get, the phone calls are made and things happen before they re, the, before that, you know, the technician sitting in Dennis or wherever place it happens to be, there's other places, um, submits it into the state and then downloads it in there. So that's just one of the things I want to emphasize. I think I said it before.
No, thank you. That's helpful. Um, Mr. Suso, could you speak a bit more about what the town is going to do now to react to what, to the situation that, um, Maggie has described? And, you know, just so that it's out in the public and any, I know that Maggie is relaying all this information via memo to all of her department employees, but just for the greater public, um, to understand how the town is, is reacting to this particular, um, set of circumstances?
Certainly, Madam Chair, members of the board, as Maggie's indicated, uh, we now have, uh, eight, uh, lifeguards on staff who have self-reported, um, by virtue of visiting the Dennis facility, uh, that they are, uh, COVID-positive. And those guards, of course, have not been working. And as Maggie's also noted, uh, any siblings, uh, that are lifeguards, uh, also are not working, uh, to be absolutely cautious, uh, and, uh, presume that everything is positive and that a sibling may have been exposed as well. Uh, what that means is that we're operating with fewer staff members than normal. So that some, from time to time, some of our beaches will be without lifeguards or be operating at a diminished lifeguard capacity. And we have, uh, effective today with Maggie's, uh, great assistance, notified all beach employees, not just lifeguards, but all, uh, that we're affording them this, uh, testing opportunity at Falmouth Hospital at no charge to the beach employee, uh, so that they can, um, have a time set and visit Falmouth Hospital and secure, uh, the swab test at Falmouth Hospital. And we appreciate Cape Cod Health Care's assistance and, uh, participation. I noted that in the release issued earlier, although, uh, many individuals have been involved in that as well. Uh, and we hope to have results back within 48 hours. So that, uh, yet this week, we will have, uh, definitive information on exactly what we're dealing with. And that, uh, also as noted, in the meantime, contract, contact tracing has begun. And, uh, we, uh, feel that that, the conclusion of that contact tracing is the first time we will have definitive factual information on exactly what is likely to have, uh, created, uh, this potential cluster of, uh, positives. Uh, we have some conjecture, um, uh, but until the contact tracing is done, with the help of VNA and reviewed by, uh, Scott McGann, we will not know, uh, with relative certainty, exactly what occurred. So, uh, we're keeping, uh, we're, uh, reserving judgment until then as to, uh, definitive information on what likely has caused this to occur.
Thank you. Um, and so just, just to, you know, to clarify, um, you know, as, as these challenges arise, obviously the, you know, the goal is to get the most accurate data, the most accurate information. And given the concerns that Scott has raised, that have been raised by other health agents in the region, um, this is, you know, the, the discussion between town manager's office, health agent, um, this is really, um, the response that was felt to be, you know, the most appropriate to get the data we need to make this test free and easily available, right in our own backyard to every, we can't force people to do it. Um, but we are encouraging all employees who are concerned, um, you know, from the, the beach department to begin with, to go forward and get this test. It's very simple to do and we hope that, uh, for our younger employees, we hope their parents, you know, will assist with that. Um, it really is, um, you know, again, the, the way that we're going to understand where this, um, this cluster arose from and how to avoid it in the future is to get this data, um, and to be able to do that contract, uh, contact tracing, um, that the VNA does. Uh, Julian, and then I have a question from, um, Mike Halen. So go ahead, Julian.
Certainly, Madam Chair. I just wanted to emphasize as well that, uh, we're encouraging all beach department employees to test, as well as those, uh, who have already done the rapid, uh, testing, has been noted, uh, that they consider being retested. We say we want to make that available to all universally, and that's all beach employees, lifeguards, uh, parking monitors, uh, staff, clerical staff, et cetera. So that, uh, everyone has that equal opportunity, uh, to clear the air. And, uh, at the end of the day, what it's about is protecting, uh, all beach employees as well as, uh, citizens of the town. So we want to work steadfastly on that and our work and our commitment continues.
Great, thank you. Um, let me read this, um, question from Michael Halen. And I think Maggie, this will be directed to you. It says, um, "Were the guards who left work Saturday AM to be tested, return to work after the testing?" I think maybe it, I think what he's asking is, "Did the guards who left work Saturday morning to be tested, return to work after the testing?"
Sure. So, um, on Saturday morning, based on communications, um, from staff members, lifeguards, parking attendants, clerks, um, Friday night before the Saturday workday- parking attendants, clerks, Friday night before the Saturday workday, the, the board was adjusted. We have a really big board in the L and T Mitchell Bath House with hanging key tags with everyone's name and we shuffle everyone around. So the board was updated on Saturday morning based on the staff who were prepared to work, available, not symptomatic, not concerned about running out to get a test. So that's, that, that staff went out at regular hours. So Old Silver, that meant four of the six lifeguards started their day there at 7:30. The parking attendants are out there because the gate drops at eight on the weekends. Everyone else had their regular roll call. Parking attendants on the east side at the L and T Mitchell Bath House at eight o'clock, lifeguards at 8:30, and we spread out. There were staff, the staff who got tested on Saturday did not report to work in the morning. They went straight to testing. They were not put on the board. When they had results, they reported into supervisors. And those who were negative and asymptomatic and felt safe to return to work were asked to return to work to fill empty chairs, which then turned into replacing already filled chairs with those who then decided they wanted to get a test. Because again, the verbal reports were being shared in a group social media and staff knew that the number had gone up from one on Friday to four on Saturday. So, yeah, I think that answered the question.
Yep. So in other words, anyone who left was not allowed to come back until their result had been reported and they reported they were asymptomatic and that they felt comfortable coming back?
Yes. And there was staff who came back, didn't feel super comfortable after the decision had already been made and the schedule had been shifted. So they chose not to work on Sunday, but they were just in a chair by themselves for those like three hours and the rest of the workday. When, when staff expressed concern to the lifeguard supervisors, they directed it up the chain of command to myself as acting beach superintendent. And I conference with the town manager's office with some options for how to handle the stress because it had been a hard day, been one of the hottest weekends we've had. The beaches, parking lots, all filled up by 10:30 AM. And so we made a decision as a team, as the town of Falmouth, to have the lifeguard leave to match the parking attendants and end the workday one hour early on Saturday. It gave those who had been working at beaches that were short-staffed and looking at covering a lot of water, it gave everyone just an hour off. Some testing centers were still open by letting guards off the clock at four o'clock instead of 5:00 PM, and they were able to go to get tested.
Great. Thank you. And there's a follow-up question from Mike Halen that I think probably goes to you, Scott, just because you're the expert on what the regulations are. So it says, "Thanks. I had a quick follow-up. Did the town follow protocols for self-certifying in these cases? If someone says they were in close contact with a positive COVID person, should said employee go home as per state regulations or did they get tested and work that day?" Or I guess it's for Maggie or for Scott. So Maggie, I think you just spoke to that. But can you just, if someone said they were in close contact with a positive COVID, with someone who had a positive test, were they told to go home or did they get tested and work that day? I think you just sort of answered that, but could you just...
Sure. So, um, close contact, we define, we immediately defined as siblings who were municipal employees that live with someone who was positive. They 100% went under the umbrella of quarantining like the positive case is supposed to be isolating. But, but the close contact exposure, what some people expressed concern that it could have happened one day prior during morning workout, which follows in the guidelines, less than 15 minutes without a mask, and you're passing, you're not standing and fitting on each other is okay. That, that's probably not how it spread. There, there is a chance, but we were following protocols when we held morning workouts per usual up through Friday.
Okay. So you're holding, okay, I guess, Mike, Mr. Halen, this is the, I'm going to ask this more simply. What he's asking is, maybe he has a, a story that he is, is driving this. Did any of the employees who got tested return to work? I think this is confusing is what he's saying. So I think we answered that.
Yes.
I'll answer it one more time. People who, go ahead.
So the staff members who were not put on the schedule outright in the morning on Saturday because they chose to get tested, there were three tests that came back positive and those people did not report to work, nor did any of their siblings who were municipal employees. There were others who got the rapid tests that came back negative and they were asymptomatic and they came in and reported to work to fill empty chairs or replace those who wanted to get tested because they had been at work since 8:30 in the morning. And...
So, okay, thank you. So his concern, I think, is, you know, whether or not people, you know, a scenario in which someone gets tested, comes back to work before the result is, is in. And that's not what happened because this is the rapid test that gives you the 15-minute turnaround. So they had to provide, did they have to provide the results of the test to you?
Yeah, they, so we didn't have anyone disclose medical information that they were not comfortable disclosing. And in terms of the testing that the town is providing, that's not the rapid test that's going to be starting tomorrow. Our policy that went out to staff was if you are, if you tested negative on the rapid test, if you were awaiting results on the regular two-to-seven day response time test, or if you had not gotten tested yet, you can come into work if you are asymptomatic, you wear the mask, you wash your hands and use hand sanitizer when soap and running water is unavailable, and you continue to practice social distancing at work and outside of work hours. The concern comes from, there was a gathering in some of the contact tracing, I believe Scott was talking about this, to me, not on this meeting yet, but there was a social gathering after hours that I don't believe had followed social distancing guidelines. And so that concern is what wanted people going.
What, what, what drove some of this? So...
What drove some of the anxiety? Because it, it felt like exposure because they do not live together and had not been wearing masks.
Right. And that's part of the, the, we'll get some more information from Scott as, as those, that tracing is done. Yep, Scott?
Just remember, contact tracing is only good as the information that we're provided by the patient. So I just want to emphasize that. We, I've had people hang up on us and not do any, you know, so it's all depends on the information. I'm sure Ms. Taylor would give me great information. I don't think Sam would, just for example. You know, I'm just saying, somebody may and somebody may not give me good information. And that's unfortunately the problem with contact tracing.
And just, you know, to go along with that, when you're talking about younger folks, you know, sometimes, you know, parents are involved and, and there's no implication here that, you know, someone gets this illness, there's no implication that they're a, a bad person or, or are doing bad things. But, you know, that information is simply to gather, you know, data so we can understand how these things are happening. Go ahead, Scott.
And you don't always get the answer. I mean, that contact tracing, you see it on TV and we got a contact trace, you don't always get down to, that's why there's, for foodborne illness, for example, there's 50 million cases of foodborne illness and one out of 100 actually gets diagnosed. It's just one of these, it's really hard to sort of get great information all the time. So, you know, I may not get to a great conclusion on it, but that is part of the contact tracing. We had heard that.
Yep. So any other comments or questions from the board? I do see that we have something, let's see, from a member of the Board of Health. Please don't forget that the majority of the positive antibody, positive, sorry, positive antibody positives, meaning history of disease, are ultimately negative by the PCR test, no currently infected. So the concept of cluster, et cetera, should be used with caution. Do you want to speak to that? That was from Ben Venway. Can you speak to that?
So an antibody test, definitely, these maybe, these are antigens testing, which supposedly, you know, if, if, you know, obviously, that's a lot of positives and, you know, I don't necessarily think the individuals were previously infected. I'm not sure. You know, the problem is, is it's a brand-new test and we don't have a lot of information. So I couldn't tell you one way or the other if it's more like an antibody, where it's a past infection, or it's like the PCR test where it's a real, like, it's, PCR is what they're actually taking is finding the DNA of the virus, running it through pulsed gel electrophoresis, which is, you know, sort of running through a jelly and colors and codes and so forth. That's telling you that you actually could have either dead, which is some people, you ever heard testing, you know, testing positive for a long period of time? You've heard people like that. And it's because they have dead virus, but they still shedding dead virus particles. So I don't know where this antigen falls apart. I know the state by treating a probable seems to be more towards the antibody side, but I think there's some legitimacy. So if any parents on here with their child or is tested with this at, at the care mark, I'm sure a lot of people have done work on it. I'm sure it's a pretty good test. It's just maybe not at quite the level as a PCR and we're offering the PCR. I guess that's what I can say about this.
So I mean, the, it's no harm, no foul if you've had it done because you were looking for that information, but...
I would, I would definitely have gone there myself. 15 minutes versus two to seven days, you kidding me? I, I get it. I, I really get why I would do that. And that's why they have a three-hour wait every day.
Yes. And really, you know, a, a big thank you to the employees and their families who drove to Dennis to actually, you know, do this, hoping that it would get that information and be able to kind of act accordingly. We're just asking now, you know, to do that sort of more definitive testing and making it available and free. So, yes, Scott?
Yeah, if they want to. I mean, obviously, if you, if you wait, you know, the isolate, you know, if they want to. It's, I mean, it's entirely up to them.
Yep. Great. Thank you. Any questions from the board? Any other comments from Maggie? Or Lori? Or Diana? Scott? Great. Thank you all. Oh, go ahead.
Sorry. I said just encouraging everybody. If they don't feel themselves, it really, to really think about it. Because again, this is not, you know, if people think they have allergies and all this stuff and they turned out to be COVID positive, it's a lot of difference in this virus that can't really...
Yep.
Too early.
Scott and then Maggie. Thank you, Diana. Yep.
Real quick, masks and gloves, masks and social distancing, we got to get back to that discipline. We just do. It works. It's cheap. I don't like what I look like in a mask. My wife likes what I look like in a mask. Whatever, we need to do it. I mean, it's really what worked in April. All right. And it's more important now because we have more things open. It's actually more important now because we have more things open. If that makes sense. So that's just...
Yep. Yeah, thank you. No, it's a good point. Maggie and then Doug Brown.
Similar to what Dr. Dewar and Chairwoman Welker are saying, I do want to publicly and in front of the board, thank the staff for their overall response to this sudden change. Very much the board has looked like August 27th instead of July 27th for end of season. And those that are showing up to do their job, making responsible choices, being communicative with staff, again, without the verbal anecdotal reporting, we couldn't have jumped on this as early as we did. The timing was unfortunate in terms of a Friday night going into a hot weekend. But I appreciate that the staff and the supervisors have risen to the occasion and that we have been able to put our best foot forward and try to spread our resources to keep the community as safe as possible for our staff and for those who are attending our beaches. I wrote in my, these now nightly or bi-daily memos, on Saturday, we had a 911 incident and I'm so grateful that it happened at a beach where we had full staff for them to recognize and respond to the situation and assist EMS when they arrive. So thank you to the police department and the fire department for their help. They've been briefed in the mornings about where we have staff so that dispatch knows whether or not they'll have beach department assistance for a call that comes from different beach locations.
Thank you. Well, well said. Thank you all very much. I know we'll be getting further updates. As folks know, our health agent is doing regular updates. So, you know, look for that as situations change. You know, we'll get that information out there. And so I really appreciate you, all of you coming in tonight to, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Doug.
Just one quick question for Maggie. Are you able to staff the beaches now? Do you think you'll be able to manage that?
So as I have promised in the daily staff memos and been sharing with the town manager's office and the health department, scheduling decisions are being made on a day-by-day basis. Right now, since this all started at 5:40 PM on Friday night, we've had parking attendants at all 10 beaches all the way through. The clerk staff has been fully staffed at the L and T Mitchell Bath House all the way through. The number of beaches with lifeguards has varied day-to-day. So on Saturday, we had eight beaches. Three were fully staffed, five were short-staffed, and two were not staffed with lifeguards. On Sunday, we had four beaches fully staffed all day and a fifth beach was fully staffed from 2:00 to 5:00 PM. Today, we had eight beaches fully staffed. Tomorrow, when I left the building at 6:45 PM, the board says that we will have eight beaches with lifeguards tomorrow. That could change because things have changed from when we leave the office at night to when we arrive in the morning. But staff who have jumped on the testing option, again, when they made their appointment with Cape Cod Healthcare, they weren't immediately given a time slot. So staff that have talked to me said, "I made an appointment, but I don't know when I'm going to get called." And I said, "If you follow the, if you fall under the asymptomatic, feel safe, feel prepared to work, come in for your shift. And if you get a call that your test is going to happen during the shift, communicate with the supervisors and you can leave, either get tested and be done for the day or get tested and come back." So it is a day-by-day thing. I am hoping that there will be a day where we have no new cases and we can feel closer to normal. But unfortunately, with the remote learning decisions that Dr. Dewar and other education executives are having to make, there are schools where staff has to, my, my students will, my staff as students will have to show up to quarantine for two weeks before school opens. Or there are those who are very concerned and booed by this outbreak and they have indicated that they might change their last day of work. So I, probably not the answer you wanted.
It's, it's an honest answer. I mean, you're doing the best that you can with folks. We can't force anyone to show up. These are a lot of young folks who are, who are planning accordingly and making decisions with their families about, as you noted, things beyond just their summer employment like college and, and, you know, what's going to happen in the coming months for them. So...
You just can't run out and hire new lifeguards to drop a bit hot.
Unfortunately, no.
Scott's willing to do it, he says, but...
David Hasselhoff back.
Go ahead, Julian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just moving just in a slightly different direction, the board may recall that within the last couple meetings, you, you had a, a bit of a discussion about the concept of potentially expanding the available parking spaces for resident parking at Old Silver Beach as a positive respectful gesture to residents and reducing by the same amount the non-resident spaces at Old Silver so that the net effect is zero, but that it benefits residents. And I just raised that to the board. just raised that to the board. Uh, did you wish to potentially consider that, uh, as it will not really have a net, uh, increase in terms of the parking spaces available, but would benefit the residents as the members of the board had already indicated?
So, um, thank you for raising it. Let me do this. Let me thank, um, Dr. Dewar and Chairwoman Welch very much for coming. I don't, you know, they don't need to stick around for the parking lot discussion. You're welcome to, but I want to thank you both and, um, Scott as well, if you want to. Is that a wave that you want to go?
I was waving to Lori. We have, um, a daily conversation.
We'll be, we'll be talking again. I know. Um, but I would say to Scott and to Diana, I know Scott, you've already weighed in on the parking lot issue. Um, so we'll let you guys go as well. And Maggie, if you'll just hang on for a bit longer. Um, so thank you to all of you. And I know we'll be speaking again soon. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks for having us.
Maggie, can you, do you want to just, um, speak briefly to, um, actually let me do it this way. Let me ask the board, um, about their feeling about the parking situation that Julian just outlined that we've talked about a couple of times.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought us back to that because I was, uh, intended to bring that up and I was almost forgot to, I guess I did forget to do it. I would like to do that. I thought Doug Jones had a good suggestion at our last meeting and I wish we had done it then. So that's my feeling.
Nancy?
Um, I know that, I think Peter Johnson stopped last time said they were developing a rubric so that we could see that if, uh, changing the parking pattern was meeting the goal of, um, or giving us some data around whether this was a good thing to do or not. And I'm, I'm wondering where we are with that.
Uh, you, do you want to speak to that?
Sure. Um, so I receive pictures three times a day from the parking attendants at each beach to give a quick like look at what the crowd is. Um, and they are asked to use that rubric that, um, myself and Assistant Town Manager, Mr. Johnson Stop developed, which is a level one to five. Uh, level one, the beach is empty. Level two, people are 12 feet apart, groups, groups attending the beach are 12 feet apart, which is what we ask for in our sign-in. Uh, level three is groups are six feet apart, which is again, what you're supposed to be spaced out without a mask, but it doesn't guarantee six feet because of, for walking space on either side. Level four, you're getting more on top of each other, three feet or less kind of between groups as people choose their spaces. Um, the level fours that we've seen have definitely been Chappaqua Beach at high tide, places where the, the real estate, um, does not match the demand. Um, we have not reached a level five since we put this system in, um, again, to avoid the level five is to avoid another Fourth of July episode where I had to call the health department and we needed to call in police support. Um, so, uh, I have a, a daily record of what time beach parking lots fill and that has been shared with the town manager's office. I do have to move the file to the T drive so that they can see it live and I don't have to keep emailing it, um, on my due list for tomorrow. But, um, today, every parking lot in town filled, but it was a slow, varied fill. So, um, parking lots, not all 10 were full until 2:11 PM. And in my, um, correspondence with the parking attendants, um, for instance, the three o'clock, um, at Woodneck, there was no one, there was one party on this ocean facing side of Woodneck, um, up until the Cove. So that would be a level one. Um, and I get these photos like daily from the parking attendant. Um, Old Silver, uh, Chappie was a level three, um, but it was low tide. So there was a lot of room for groups to spread out. Um, if the board can see that, um, I can produce these images and share them in a document with you. Um, we aren't, again, we're reaching the four when it's a high tide on a west side beach. And otherwise we're really at the level three pretty much daily at most locations.
Can I ask Maggie, so given that, I mean, what do you see from your perspective as a, uh, a good way to address both the concern that we have from a lot of residents that they're just, you know, and I will say particularly a lot of older residents who are really being vigilant about their health as they should be and basically are telling us we, we never really get to enjoy the beach because it feels unsafe or it fills up and then it feels, you know, we don't have people to drop us off like some parents might be able to drop off their kids or, or guests or things like that. So could, you know, do you have a recommendation for the parking slash spacing piece at beaches based on that data?
Sure. Um, I think, um, uh, Ms. Taylor had brought up last week, the question of the effectiveness of the 50%. Is the 50% if we open up the lot, are the people who are going to use those parking spaces, some, are they the same people that are biking, walking or getting dropped off? Or are we adding additional population to the beach? Um, I'm not sure how to assess that unless we were to trial it at a couple of locations, um, to say, oh, Manot stayed at a level three even when the parking lot was at 75% open instead of 50% open. Um, because I think people, some people are going to the beach regardless of how they can get there. Um, one thing that we, I did do since this board last met, I made arrangements, um, at the town manager's office and, uh, um, to extend the parking attendant hours at Old Silver and Chappaqua. So for an additional hour, um, daily, seven days a week, that those parking lots are manned, in which case, um, for Chappaqua, it prioritizes the resident pass pair sticker because those who wanted to get in at 3:45 when the parking attendants leave, they now have to wait until 4:45. So it gives a little more time when there's a lunchtime turnover for those spaces to still be filled by those residents with beach stickers. At Old Silver, um, today I asked for anecdotal evidence from our head parking lot supervisors out there. Um, they said that most of the cars that are coming in in that last hour in the public lot from the 3:30 to the 4:30 are generally stickers. Um, at their, it's only been two days, um, but they sold about 20 non-resident daily passes in that hour, um, because the parking lot is still full that late in the day just because of how popular Old Silver is. And again, in regards to the option of negating the spaces, um, I would say that the, again, the parking lots are divided, but the beach property is not. So there are people who park in the public lot and walk across the bridge and use the resident beach. Um, so.
So how, thank you. So, uh, go ahead, Doug. Jones, I mean.
Sorry.
That are not hitting three, that are below three on a regular basis?
Sorry, forgot I muted myself. Um, so, uh, unfortunately the COVID situation preoccupied and I did not fully compile that information before tonight's meeting. Um, I would say that, um, Manot on a windy day can stay very empty because it's a windy day. And unless you're a Manot regular, most people do not like being whipped by the sand on a windy day at the beach. Um, outside of that, um, Old Silver was a level two at like 11 AM and 1 PM today, but it was up to a level three by 3 PM. Um, it can be a four on the resident side and only a two or a three on the public side. That's why I'm hesitant to change, um, the parking. Um, I'm sorry. I wish I had more information besides trying to scroll through some of these images quickly.
No, you're fine. I mean, I think you're giving us a, a feel for the fact that the crowding is likely going to be an issue. The crowding is happening now and giving more parking probably isn't going to help the crowding. What it would help is maybe allow more residents to be part of the, the crowd that's at the beach. I mean, you know, and people would have to make personal choices about their comfort level.
Yeah, my suggestion, whether Mill Road would be a good one to see what would happen to that beach if that one's not hitting a three often. If we opened that parking lot fully and found out, oh, now it is at a four, that would be evidence. Say, okay, actually the parking lot restriction is doing the job. Um, and that's the one beach. I was just wondering if the data shows that one's not too bad. Uh, may have a little more room for more people to get there. And by opening that parking lot, um, you may have some of the people who are already getting there by bike now drive, but you may also get some more residents who can get there.
I, I do agree, um, Mr. Jones, that Mill Road or one or both of the Manot lots are probably the places to trial if we are going to open up capacity. Um, it, Mill Road does fill up faster than the Surf Drive parking lot. Um, yeah. That would be a good comparison to use Surf Drive as the control and Mill Road as open because it's the same beach, um, for opportun access.
Doug, is that your motion to open up Mill Road and perhaps one of the Manots to give more?
Didn't I also hear you say Woodneck was pretty sparsely attended?
So Woodneck is only, it's a concern because of how people park in the 50% when there are no attendance.
It's very bad. You can never get an ambulance if someone had an emergency. They're parking on both sides. That's the beach that we go to because I have a, a little person and, um, there, it's barely enough room sometimes to get a, a regular car through, never mind if someone had an emergency. So.
Well, that's because they're jamming in because they've only got a half a lot. That's what I'm saying. Should we consider opening that as well? Cause it's a big beach.
It's hard to know because again, um, like Madam Chair said, if people are going for the marsh side, that's not actually more beach. The, the side that there's a lot of beach is where it's rocky and most people go there and don't go in the water if they're sitting on that side necessarily, um, in terms of spreading out. And at high tide, um, sipper was at marsh has changed so much that we've had to move the lifeguard chair that looks at the marsh area two times because at a full moon, new moon, uh, extreme tide, the chair is in water, um, because of how much beach we lose at high tide there.
Just trying to think of some resident options here.
Oh, I, I understand. I think people are upset either way we go with this decision and that each beach has a personality and a clientele that wants to, um, advocate for their side. I have people calling me at the office, counting cars asked from their desk, um, to looking down in the parking lot and saying, are they really at 50%? And I say, this is how many cars there are, not counting staff vehicles. And the parking attendants have been amazing, keeping to that number and, and parking people as best they can. But that last hour, when it's just lifeguards and no parking attendants, we've had an issue a couple of days. We had to add extra cones so that no one would block the equipment locker because people just creatively park regardless.
In all different ways. So is there any appetite from this board to give direction to, um, uh, beach department?
To, we, uh, open the Mill Road parking lot to full parking and see what happens.
Okay.
Any increase at Woodneck? Maybe a little?
I just haven't seen, I've, I've driven by the Mill Road law enough. So I've seen what it looks like. I haven't driven by Woodneck to have any knowledge about that. It's the only reason why I'm not jumping on that right away.
So let me start with Mill Road and then let's, we can talk about Woodneck. But so I have a motion. Yep. Julian?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to emphasize that, um, I know the board's aware, the 50% capacity reduction, those are huge, massive concrete structures that are not easily moved by public work. But I would just urge the board, if you want to make a change, uh, consider giving it some time rather than suggesting, not that you are, but, uh, moving them around significantly in any experimental way is going to be extremely time consuming and remove public works from other projects, uh, for which they're responsible at this time of the year. I just wanted to caution about, um, or just remind you of that as you make decisions about needing these very large pieces of concrete moved around because they take heavy equipment and significant time. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Sam?
Yeah. Doug Brown, I, you know, we just saw what happened this weekend. Just because all of a sudden we had this mushrooming of, of at least, uh, likely cases of COVID-19, not necessarily, you know, it really worries me. What we've been doing, and I'm just so appreciative of, of Maggie's management of all of these beaches, um, is really trying to keep a blanket on potential spread. And it can happen so quickly and then it just kind of goes out and it's difficult to contact trace. I think taking this prudent approach is something we should stay with personally. Uh, it's, this is a dangerous thing. And some of those people that are complaining to me are very much at risk because of their age.
Okay.
Um, so let me just start with Mill Road because we have a motion about Mill Road. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Um, any further discussion? All right. Um, all those spirals.
Can, can we just amend that to allow Maggie to this back off, back off on this if all of a sudden we see that a problem has arisen? I, I want to give that discretion to somebody that's there, you know, all the time that the beaches are open or at least is getting reports from staff.
Yeah, I think we would anticipate that Maggie would come back to us, you know, with updates on concerns about that and that data that she's keeping. I mean, I think the data that you're collecting with those pictures and that, that rubric for danger or crowding, I think is really helpful for us to see as kind of these last months of summer unfold. So I think what, you know, Sutman Patterson is noting is that if there, we want to hear right away, you know, through town manager, if it's not at a time when our meeting is happening, about concerns about Mill Road if, or any beach for that matter. But if that change at Mill Road really creates problems, we, uh, you know, want to hear about that through town manager's office.
Well, I would bend my motions instead of changing the lot to 100%, maybe there's a way if we can just move two of these cement blocks to create an opening. So you get more spaces and that would give Maggie the option, an US option to pose it with rope if it gets, if it's just not working, uh, maybe not get rid of all of them, but just do something that is a little bit, gets it up to 85 or 90%, but is a minimal job for the DPW and also a minimal job to close back up in response to Sam's concern.
I think that's a, that's a Sam. Go ahead.
I want, yeah, just want to remember, you, operations is something we turn over to our staff. And I think we have to give them the option of moving things, you know, and either expanding or contracting based on what they're seeing. Cause we don't want to wait for two weeks to come back and change this motion. So, you know, I, I don't mind moving it, but I really want to leave the discretion in the hands of our staff.
Yep. Agreed. And, and I think Doug Jones, um, his suggestion, I think is an, is an excellent one. And I think there's a mechanism to be able to do that. Just, you know, a chain between if, if removing one. And so DPW I'm sure can figure that out. It's a little bit less work for them. As Julian notes, these are not small barriers. They're big, but it would allow Maggie and her staff to make a call, uh, maybe a bit more nimbly than, you know, having to wait for these things to be put back in place. So, um, with that motion and that, um, uh, sort of addition by Sam, um, does, uh, Doug Brown was a second. So all those in favor by roll call, English Frog, aye. Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Great. Thank you. Maggie, thank you very much. And we know we'll be hearing from you again. Excuse me.
Yes, I'll, I'll speak with, um, Yes, I'll, I'll speak with, um, Mr. McConerty and Mr. Grady. I'll get on the phone now and, um, we will work on making that change to Mill Road as soon as, uh, the DPW is able.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, next, request for temporary water use restrict, restrictions. I know I saw, uh, Mr. Rafferty. And actually, um, Mr. McConerty had asked to be brought on for this as well. We have in our packet, um, information about this issue and I'll just wait till I see Mr. Rafferty. Good evening.
Evening.
If you want to, um, just let, let folks know what, um, you know, what the concern is and what you're asking of this board.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, uh, the board. I do have a short PowerPoint presentation to walk you through. What I'd like you to do tonight and, and why I would like you to do it. Is that available?
Okay, let's see if they can share that. There we go.
Okay. So, um, I'm before you tonight, uh, to ask you, per section 223-4 of the Falmouth Town Code for a declaration of state of water supply conservation. And I'm specifically asking you, uh, to prohibit the use of automatic sprinkler systems, which is one of several items that can be imposed if there is a declaration state water supply conservation. And there's a key phrase in here inside our regulations, our bylaws. It says the conservation measure is appropriate to ensure the safe and adequate supply of water to all consumers. Fundamentally, the DEP's regulations say that if you run a water system, you have to maintain a safe and adequate supply of water to all consumers. I can go to the next slide. So this is a graph. The orange line shows, uh, a running five day average of the amount of water we're pumping into the system this year. Uh, the blue line represents the amount of water that pumped into the system in 2019. Because the way July 4th fell last year. And this year, there's a little bit of a cross, but overall, we've been pumping a lot more water into our system this year. Demand is up 20%. Some of that has to do with the heat we're seeing. I think some of that has to do with the fact that a lot of people, because of COVID, are staying home. Um, maybe doing a little more gardening or whatever. Can I go to the next slide, please? What's we are experiencing is that current operation does not provide adequate water pressure. What I call Telegraph Hill, it also includes a portion of Blacksmith Shop Road off of West Falmouth Highway. For the last couple of weeks, folks who live up that hill are unable to get water in the morning at an adequate pressure to meet their basic needs. Couple of facts that I want to run you through. If we run all of the sources of supply 24 hours a day, we could pump 11 and a half million gallons of water into the system. But demand for water is variable during the day. It's very high early in the morning. It's fairly constant throughout the day and then it tapers off in the evening. We're currently using a little bit over nine million gallons a day. Historically, we've had peak demand days on July 4th and Road Race Weekend for one or two days. And we were through it. But from 4:00 AM to 5:30 AM, we actually turn on extra pumps. Pump not at a rate of 11 and a half million gallons, but a rate of 16.9 million gallons into the system. But during that same time period, the storage tanks are draining down because the demand is so great. And almost a million and a half gallons gets drawn down from the storage tanks and from the plant's clear well. And you do the math, the peak system demand in the early morning hours is 31.1 million gallons a day. The demand during the daytime hours, as I said, when we're sort of leveled off, is around 11 million gallons. And we've been in a situation for the last two and a half weeks. We cannot refill the tanks until mid to late afternoon. And the finished water pumps at Long Pond are running 22 to 23 hours a day. Next slide, please. So the demand in the morning is all based upon people who have irrigation systems that come on automatically. Um, people that buy irrigation systems and the companies that sell irrigation. Let people know that the best time to irrigate is in the early morning hours between 3:00 and 6:00 AM. So that's when the irrigation systems kick on. And that's what's drawing the million and a half gallons out of the tank and creating, creating the huge demand. Um, the town for a number of years has advocated a voluntary ban uh, for people to go to even odd watering. But that's really not been very effective because most of the irrigation controllers typically get set for days of the week, not based upon an even or odd day. And we have from year to year noticed a peak usage on Monday, Wednesday and Friday, which is a preferred time for people setting up their sprinklers to run. The next slide, please. Next slide. So the ban that I'm looking for is on the automatic sprinkler systems. And so for tonight's action and next steps is that I made a request to your board to vote a state of water conservation to prohibit the use of automatic sprinkler systems until the order is lifted. If you take that vote tonight, I will publish a notice in the enterprise in accordance to town bylaw. And once that notice is published, we can then begin enforcing it. Between now and Friday, I would ask anybody that's watching this, as well as we'll reach out to the neighborhood associations, the sprinkler companies and news outlets to try to get as much voluntary cooperation as we can, um, between now and uh, Friday, when we publish the notice in the enterprise. We are creating door hangers. We'll need to go out in the early morning hours with some staff in neighborhoods to warn homeowners that they are not in performance with the order that I'm asking you. And to warn them that per the way the regulation is written in the bylaw, they can be, have their water shut off for a second offense. And then we will continue to monitor the demand, the drought conditions that we're seeing and the heat. And when we see a decrease in the overall system demand that we can manage better, we would come back and ask you to lift those restrictions. I'm available to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you very much, Steve. Um, I, I mean, I think it's very well laid out. The numbers are the numbers. Um, and, um, is there any comments from this board or from Mr. McConerty?
A comment, question. First of all, does this also apply to people who are using wells?
I need to apologize. Sometimes the voices get breaking up where I'm watching you on my iPhone. Can you repeat the question?
I, I, uh, first question is, does this apply to people who are using their, their own private wells?
Private wells are exempt from this order. And as well as if you want to hand water your lawn or garden, um, that's also exempt.
Okay. And the second thing is more of a, um, statement. My neighbor who's a master gardener told me that the most effective time to water is in the evening because then the water is in the ground a lot longer because if it's early morning, the sun comes out and dries it out. If a lot of people were to switch to evening watering, would that help? Or are we still using too much water overall?
I'm a little bit concerned with the 20% increase that we're seeing because of, uh, the situation we're in. I think a lot of people that water their gardens in the evening tend to do it more handheld, uh, rather than automatic sprinkler. This is, this is really the lawn sprinkling, uh, that kicks in in the morning.
And, and just to speak to that issue, you know, I, you know, when we talk a lot about, oh, we've been talking a lot during this pandemic about kind of community care. We're talking about folks in parts of town that, that, you know, Blacksmith Shop Road, Telegraph Hill, that don't have water, enough water pressure in the morning to do the things that they need to do because, um, you know, some of us want to keep our lawns and gardens green, which I understand. We, you know, it's, it's a passion and, and people, um, you know, put a lot of time and money into their landscaping. But some really basic necessities, we get emails from folks who are saying, I'm turning on my water and there's no water coming out at 5:00 in the morning. Um, that, you know, that's, and, and I know, um, you know, the, Mr. Rafferty's department is, you know, responding to those folks and, and there's, you know, unfortunately not a lot of satisfying answers that they, they can give them. Um, so, you know, we're talking about folks who are trying to get some basic services. Uh, Doug Jones?
Uh, would this hold true for the town watering systems and for golf courses also?
Um, so most golf courses have their own private wells. And so again, if you have a private well, um, you can continue to use your private well.
And on, uh, uh, on the town, the town, um, courses, they're on wells also, the athletic field, they're on wells.
Peter, do you have anything else that you thought the board should know about this?
Uh, I, just in, to add to what Steve was talking about, uh, we also got to consider, um, fire flow. If it was ever in the early mornings, if there was a fire in any other point in time, it's going to put even, even more restrictions on it. And just to, uh, bring forward what Steve already said, I mean, we have pumps running at full capacity with all our water supplies at 23 hours a day. If we lost a pump or a pump goes down, it's going to bring further, uh, further complications to the water system. So, um, we're basically pumping at full capacity right now.
No, thank you. It's, it's helpful to hear that. Any other questions from the board? Do you have a motion from the board regarding this?
If this first is a, what is it? A, a water time for water.
If you go, if you go back, yeah, if you go back to the first, second slides.
So tonight's actions, we have request that the selectmen vote a state of water conservation by prohibiting the use of automatic sprinkler systems until the order is lifted. That's the motion.
All right. So, so move.
Okay. Um, so Patterson moved, uh, second by Jones. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor by roll call. Jones? Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
English Braga, aye. And then Steve, you'll go from there. You'll publish. You'll do the rest of the, the steps that you outlined in your slide.
That, that's my job. Yes. Thank, thank, thank you for the vote. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Staying on top of this important issue. I really appreciate it. And thank you, Peter, for sticking around, putting that information. Thank you. Okay, next we have, um, discussion on request to change polling place for Precinct Five. Um, I believe that Michael Palmer is still with us.
Move approval.
Aye, Jones.
He stuck around this long. Or maybe he's gone.
Madam Chair, this request is, uh, by town clerk, Michael Palmer, is just that you accept his report. Uh, because there are some legal steps he would need to take, uh, in the meantime. So if he accepts his report, then he can come back and you can vote to change on August 10th. Here's Michael, I see.
Perfect. Michael, so you're asking for us to accept, um, your report tonight, correct?
You know, I've sat here this whole night because it was supposed to come on at 7:45 and when I've got to come on, I get booted off the internet.
I know. You can tell us anything you want to tell us. Tell us about your whole life if you want to.
Yeah, so, uh, Precinct Five, we voted that the North Falmouth Cargate Church has become unavailable. So we need, uh, they have a YMCA daycare there that has restrictions on what can take place in the building. Along with the daycare. So we've been asked to find a new location in North Falmouth. Uh, so I drove around North Falmouth and really the only location is the school, which, uh, kind of is a non-issue. We, we were voted not to allow to use the elementary school. September may not have been bad if the schools didn't open, but November would be an issue. So the only other place I could come up with in the North Falmouth area was the St. Elizabeth Seaton, uh, church hall, uh, on, on, uh, County, on Quaker Road.
Pearly Boulevard?
That's Quaker.
Yeah, it turns into Quaker somewhere down there. But I, I guess what's required of the board of selectmen or the select board now is that, uh, you evaluate and, uh, report on if there's any a- adverse impact on access to polls on the basis of race, national Oregon, origin, disability, income or, or age. Uh, no later than three days prior to taking a vote to, uh, change the polling place. So you'd have to report on this, uh, value and evaluate the polling, the new polling location, uh, produce a report. Uh, and then three, at least three days prior, uh, to a vote being taken to move the voting.
Perfect. So town manager's office can assist us with putting that report together. I know you addressed, um, Michael, in what you provided to us, you addressed issues around ADA compliance, that there's a ramp, um, which was a concern that you had originally noted and plenty of parking. Um, so, you know, certainly you've addressed a number of those issues. So we'll put it together as something from this board, correct?
Uh, yes, I actually, this report, I added a couple of paragraphs onto the top of the, uh, report, just spelling out what my feeling was on whether it had any, uh, adverse effects to, uh, any, any of those things that they described. And we're moving just a mile down the road. I don't see any impact, uh, to anybody. This may be more central to uh, the Residence of Precinct Five action than the, than the Congregational Church. But I see no impact.
A lot more parking than the Congregational Church.
Yeah, there's quite, there's, there's quite a bit of parking there also.
Excellent. So from us, you actually, you just need, we don't need to vote anything tonight. We will put together a letter with our findings that we will, do we have to vote on that 10 days prior? No, we just have to do the report three days prior to our vote. Is that correct?
Yeah, the polling place, you have to have 20 days before the election, you have to vote to change a polling location. Three days prior to that, 20 days, you have to, uh, post, uh, an evaluation on, on the website. So obviously wherever your meetings fall, if you can do it's your next meeting and then vote the next meeting that, that.
Can we just, uh, this report?
What's that?
Can we just move to accept the report you have given as our report and post that one?
I have asked Frank and Irie if that was sufficient and they feel that that was sufficient to act as a report. So I believe you could.
I was just going to ask if we, uh, required to do a site visit to confirm that the conditions, uh, is that required?
I did do a site visit, so you'd be taking my recommendations and if you wanted to do a, a site visit, that'd be fine.
I thought, I thought your report would seem pretty thorough and you seemed to cover all the important bases. So I would be willing to accept your report. Just curious if there was a personal, uh, requirement to do a site visit by the state or whoever.
Well, I'll take that as your motion, Doug. Can I take Doug Brown as your motion to accept it?
I will make that motion, yes.
And I have a second from Doug Jones. Any further discussion? All those in favor by roll call. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Taylor? Taylor, aye.
Right. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. And if we could, if you could put this on the next schedule to vote to actually make the change and then I could stop the process of, of advertising and notifications and.
So this will go on our August 10th meeting. And we'll have to post it three days prior. So it should be no later than August, let's say, 6th. So it's three.
You accepted the report today, so we could post the report tomorrow and then it would be three days prior to, to whatever.
Yep, perfect. I just wanted to clarify the timeline so that I get it up there right away. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Um, okay. Status discussion of town meetings. Um, so, um, this, you know, is an issue where we still have some lingering articles from April town meeting. Some that are, as we've discussed before, um, you know, some of it would be time sensitive in that if we don't get to move on those, some things like affordable housing. Particularly, I'm thinking about the Gifford Street Workforce Housing Project could be impacted. We heard about that from Linda Clark last time we met. So, um, we had a meeting with, um, Michael Palmer. Um, we had a, a Zoom meeting with Michael Palmer, um, town manager, assistant town manager, um, Jennifer Mullen, finance director, um, I Jennifer Mullen, finance director, um, myself, and I'm sure I am forgetting someone and I apologize, but, um, and, and David Viera to discuss some options. Um, and, uh, and Scott, um, again, health agent was also part of the discussion. Um, and so essentially, um, we discussed the possibility of having a town meeting to finish up the spring, uh, warrant in September. Um, and Mr. Suso, if you want to just sort of lay out the details of that, um, and where we stand with any discussions from the school about, um, the potential of using the school facilities.
Certainly, Madam Chair, um, the, uh, school has confirmed that, uh, Falmouth High School, um, indoor venue would be available either in the auditorium or, uh, potentially the field house on Monday, September fourteenth and Tuesday, September fifteenth. And that, uh, failing, uh, to secure an indoor venue or determining that we prefer an outdoor venue, um, the turf field would be available at the high school on Saturday, September twenty-sixth. Those dates would all be for the, uh, reconvening of Springtown Meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Suso. And, and the thinking behind it was this, we, we know where we are now. Um, and we, we aren't sure where it will be when September rolls around in terms of, um, public safety measures and, and what, um, you know, would be recommended by our health agent um, in terms of gatherings. So we wanted to leave an option open of an outdoor meeting. Um, and when we move to outdoor, we no longer, because of the time of year and the issue around mosquitoes and, um, some concerns a- around that, we can no longer do sort of an evening outdoor. It would be something that would take place in the morning. Um, and so, uh, moderator Viera felt it was, um, you know, that, that he, he obviously has, bears a responsibility for noticing these, um, meetings, which he would do. And then as we get closer, we would obviously, um, have to make the call about outdoor versus indoor. Um, but trying to get some of these items done before we start moving into, um, our, our fall warrant. Yes, Julian.
And Madam Chair, just to, um, in the board's package, you'll see as part of these exhibits, what we would be bringing to you at your August tenth meeting, your next regular meeting, is a draft schedule for the November town meeting. So that's really driving the need to set this schedule and for the board to consider adopting it, uh, here on August tenth or November is driving the need to schedule the reconvening of the Springtown Meeting so that we don't just run one directly into the other. So you'll see in one of your exhibits, a draft of the schedule for, uh, the November town meeting, which would convene on this draft schedule, beginning Monday, November ninth. And then working backwards, you see the schedule that you need to adopt on August tenth to allow us to meet those deadlines.
Okay. So any questions, um, from the board?
So we would close the warrant before we'd had the Springtown meeting.
Yes.
Yes.
What was the, uh, outdoor date? The potential outdoor date?
Saturday, September twenty-sixth.
So again, none of it is ideal, but obviously trying to just carve out some time in September to address these issues and leaving some flexibility so that we can assess where we are in terms of public health at that point in time. Um, so I don't think that this board has to vote it. It is something that the town moderator actually will set the date, but the discussion is whether or not, um, the board is comfortable with this, this plan that's been laid out. So unless I hear any objections, we would, I'll, we'll notify, uh, moderator Viera to go forward with the plan as he's, um, as was discussed. Okay, great. Thank you. Um, okay. Update from Woods Hole Oceanographic Institution on their proposed Woods Hole Iceland Dock, um, and related areas proposed redevelopment project. So I see Rob. Welcome. This is far later than seven forty-five.
We might want to start getting some more realistic time schedules here.
Rob, I, I'll note, Rob also has a PowerPoint, uh, slides, if time permits.
You, you've been, you've been lied to by us on time before. So this is, we, we apologize. Thanks for sticking around. Um, if we could get Rob's PowerPoint up so that, um,
Yeah, I, and I have a colleague who's been, uh, standing by also. And so if she's still awake, uh, Leslie Ann McGee, I don't know if she could be, uh, brought into this.
Great, yep. Could she be promoted, please? Ms. McGee?
Thanks. And, uh, I'm really impressed with you guys' endurance. Uh, fantastic. Uh, it's actually been a very interesting meeting. So, uh, I appreciate the opportunity to eavesdrop a little bit. I'm assuming at this point in the evening, you'd like the expedited version of this discussion.
We, we always appreciate it, but we've waited a long time. So whatever you feel we need to, to know, we're happy to see it all.
Okay. Well, basically what I'm going to speak about is we completed the second of two Seaport Economic Council grant activities, which we are in partnership with town. Uh, and we just completed the second one. And I wanted to provide a, a little bit of a snapshot of the high level findings and kind of where we are with the project. So that's the purpose of the discussion tonight. And on, on this slide, a little bit of history and just to provide some context. Uh, we have a waterfront facility, uh, it, it's pictured there. That actually is a very large repair site. Uh, and, and so basically we're in the fifty-first year, fifty-year design life facility. Uh, and we're, you know, experiencing increasing maintenance costs upwards of a million dollars a year to keep the facility functioning. So that motivated us to, to apply for a Seaport Economic Council grant back in seventeen, which we were awarded uh, in partnership with town. And we, uh, did some preliminary, basically feasibility study. And then we were able to get a second grant through the Seaport Economic Council, uh, of a million dollars that was awarded to us thousand nineteen, and we are just now finishing, uh, that work. And so this is actually a brief report of that. Uh, and it's really about, uh, the redevelopment of our waterfront. I think in addition to the fact that we are partners on this project and, uh, hats off to the, and the staff for helping administratively, it, it also has been a really valuable part getting, uh, good advice and input to council as we went through this whole process. So if you go to the next slide, please? So what we did in this project is we, uh, studied sea level rise in depth. Because obviously anything we designed for the waterfront is going to have to contemplate what's in the vision over the next fifty to eighty years. And that's the time horizon. And we come to the conclusion that whatever we build there, uh, has to be built for the future and, and to be adaptable. Because right now we really can't, uh, we don't know what the sea level will be eighty years from now. But we have a pretty good idea of where it'll be thirty or forty years from now. Build that time horizon and have it fully adaptable to get us to the longer time horizon, say eighty years. So to do that, we have to do site investigations in order to design a facility. And we're looking at building a new dock and a waterfront research complex. And so that there'll be a building associated with a dock just like there is now. And we have to understand what the permitting process would be. So that's been the scope of what this particular, uh, grant activity was. So next slide, I'm going to talk about the, the main components now and some of the key outcomes. So these are three concepts for a new dock. On the left-hand side is a replace-in-kind, essentially a, uh, concrete deck on, on a pile-supported concrete deck. We would build it two and a half feet higher initially to accommodate sea level rise near term. And you can see it's a lot of piles. In fact, we have over two hundred on the current, uh, facility that the new design looks like it would be a little under two hundred, but still a lot of pile. So that's a traditional solution. In the middle is a floating dock. The idea would be that instead of having all the, uh, uh, ha- having it built in, uh, in place on a, on a pile-supported structure, we would actually be able to build the dock and modules at a shipyard, bring it in and, uh, connect it to, uh, our, our waterfront. Uh, obviously a lot fewer piles. Uh, we would have to create an apron of a, of a new dock at the bulkhead side, but it would be much smaller. Uh, and it would allow us to do a lot of the construction on site. But the interesting kind of novel approach and obviously a floating dock is going to infinitely be variable in terms of sea level rise. The third concept on the right is called a tension pile. That, which is where you would have, it's also a floating dock of sorts. You would have a, essentially a eel pontoon that you bring to onsite, they sink it down, and then you, uh, deballast it so that it essentially is pulling up on piles that are driven into the Seaport. So it maintains a very set height. Then you build a deck on top of that at the new height you want to have dock at, a half feet initially. And then sometime in the future, when you need to increase the deck height based on your current sea level rise, you can actually change the height of the pontoon that the deck is on to whatever that new adaptable height would be. So it's a very novel concept. Not used that often for docks, but very frequently used for oil and gas, so it's the takeoff of technology from there. So that the, the pros and cons between those are, are traditional, lots of pile, uh, not as easily to adapt, floating, very adaptable. But now you have to have ramps between the fixed portion on land and floating dock. And then the third one, the tension pile, that allows you to have the deck height on. This is a planned view of the site now, and you can see that red line is the existing seawall. And you can see why in addition to a dock project and building project. Because the building called Islan, which is pictured on that first slide, uh, is half on the dock, half on, off the dock. So to replace dock is to replace the building. So we're going to reconfigure the way the, uh, uh, building is on the waterfront in order to accommodate our needs in the future and to create a new facility. So if you look at the next slide, uh, it'd be one more after that. Okay. So the idea here is we would take down that middle building. Next slide, please. Put up the new building. Next slide, and then take down the old building. So it allows us to maintain, uh, uh, operations while we replace the building. Uh, and then the last, uh, uh, part of the project is to replace the dock itself. You can see the new building is tucked back into the site behind the existing, uh, buildings around Water Street. So this is a, a, a profile view of the building that shows, uh, the fact that we are planning to increase the height of the, of the deck of the dock and the landward portion by two and a half feet as an initial, uh, approach to sea level rise. And then we can adapt it to go up to about four feet, I think is, uh, what we would need to have an eighty-year design life. And the building would be built so that you, uh, can raise the floor in that what's called a high bay, which is the left-hand portion of the building and still have the working height in the future, uh, as you adapt the sea level rise. And these numbers, two and a half feet and four, are based on in-depth analyses had conducted with Woods Hole Group, Offutt Nickel, which is a marine engineering firm designing the waterfront, as well as subject matter experts, uh, that we cited for the week. So we've, you know, really taken a triangulation approach to trying to come up with best numbers for, uh, looking ahead to the sea level rise, uh, requirement. So the next slide, please. Um, it's a three-story building. It's about forty-five thousand square feet, which is about four thousand square feet less than the existing, uh, square footage of the building we have right now. Uh, it's multifunction and its purpose is to be, uh, flexible. I think one of the most important elements in addition to meeting the requirements for HOE is we've included a public space. The public space is in the upper right-hand corner on the first and second floor, and it occupies the, the whole right-hand side of the building on, on the third floor. So it, uh, intended to be, provide public access, uh, for, uh, ability to, you know, see what goes on at HOE. Have kiosks and information and, uh, sort of a, uh, an exploratorium kind of, uh, of a, of a facility, as well as being able to host, you know, a great event. And the lower right is a cartoon that basically says, we are going to try to take the best approach we can in terms of having it just be a sustainable building and, and adapting all the things we can take advantage of, including we're considering sea level, seawater flowing utilized, available water to provide, uh, you know, heat exchange for our cooling system. Next slide. So a couple of, uh, watercolors of what the building might look like. Um, again, this is just all conceptual. Uh, so this is a view from in front of Redfield. To the left there is the, actually where my office, but it's also, uh, uh, caught the obsession. And, uh, so if you look towards where the building is across, uh, the canal and the eel pond, uh, to the left where you see those containers is actually where the current building is. So the building is, is more tucked behind, uh, the two main buildings down on Water Street. And Bigelow. And next slide shows a view from, from the water on the west side of the pier. And that shows uh, of the, the rendering of what the building might look like, uh, juxtaposed with Bigelow. So here's our project schedule. We are where that pink line is. So we've finished our feasibility studies and our conceptual ideas. Where we would need to go next is to do the detailed design process. Uh, essentially to get the project to be shovel-ready. That's going to be about an eighteen-month timeframe. So we'll be taking these concepts now and turning them into, you know, final designs, something that we can permit. Uh, and we'll be going through the permitting process with the notion of being ready to, uh, actually get to work in the first quarter of twenty twenty-two with a shovel-ready project. And then it's about a three-year plus or minus construction process. And again, the phasing and a lot of those type of details are yet to be worked out. But this gives a sense of, of the overall scope of the project and the timeframe. Next slide, please. So, uh, we have a few final decisions. Obviously we've got to pick our dock choice. Uh, that's one of the big ones. Uh, we want to initiate the design. That's going to be happening in the next quarter. We're going to start the permitting process in the next few weeks. Uh, we want to, uh, engage the community on, on this project. And we started that with our community advisory committee meetings last week. And of course, uh, as a nonprofit, we have to go out and find the money to build this project. And, uh, it's a significant heavy lift, as you might imagine. Uh, and in fact, that letter that you guys, uh, agreed to have, uh, sent to the EPA earlier this evening, thanks for that. Uh, that's going to help with some of the, uh, soft costs you need for furthering design so that we have a resilient facility. The last thing I wanted to mention is as a part of, uh, our obligation and, and, and our goals from this grant is to share the sea level rise information gathered in the course project. Because we think it's really important that the community hears the, what we've learned. And, uh, also we did, uh, collaborate with MDL and the Fisheries, uh, to have Woods Hole Group do a detailed vulnerability assessment of every building, uh, in our three campuses, uh, which essentially encompass, uh, you know, the main waterfront. So, and that information we think is very valuable to share both Woods Hole residents and, you know, the whole town. So that's going to be, uh, September twenty-fourth. That's actually, uh, the wrong date on September twenty-fourth. Uh, and we'll be posting out notices and hopefully some of the people will be interested in participating in that. Envision sort of a technical session and then a policy, the sort of, uh, uh, you know, political, uh, sociological, all of, all those sort of, uh, uh, elements of community impact, uh, with respect to climate change uh, for that symposium. So I, I want as quickly as I could, uh, that's the update. Uh, I did want to say that I really appreciate the partnership that we've had. And I think the outcomes of these two, uh, feasibility studies have really been good. And, uh, that, you know, what we intend to build here obviously is going to support HOE's needs, uh, but it's also going to be, I, I think, community resource. And that's, that's our goal.
That's great. Thank you, Rob. Any questions, um, from the board? It's really, I'll just say it's great to, we've been talking about this for a while and it's great to start to see, you know, that narrowing of those options and, and, you know, to, I don't know, I'm simple because I always love to see the renderings. It starts to really make you feel like it's, it's, you know, happening. It's real. So, um, ve- very exciting. It looks like some beautiful, um, options there. Any questions from the board?
No, I saw the full show earlier last week and, uh, Rob did a great job of, uh, narrowing it down and still putting it across.
Yeah, thanks. I appreciated your attending, uh, Doug and Julian. And, uh, we'll be having those meetings probably every other month. And so there'll be an opportunity to sort of get the word out and, and get feedback.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks for the, the broader vulnerability analysis of that Woods Hole campus down there. That's going to be quite a contribution. Seeing those sea level rise predictions is sobering for sure.
It really is. Yep. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you, uh, for sticking around as well, Leslie Ann, and for giving us that right date on that, um, symposium. I think that'll be wonderful. We appreciate it. We'll be getting further updates.
Great. Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Good night. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have, um, vote request for variance to sign code Cumberland Farms Incorporated located at eight Old Main, excuse me, Old Meeting House Road and four hundred East Falmouth Highway. Is Mr. Troy or the individual? Welcome, Mr. Marshawn.
Hello.
Hello. Hi, welcome. So, um, Hi, welcome. So, um, do we want to, um, let me, who's going to speak on the application first?
Uh, it's Doug Troyer on behalf of Cumberland Farms and just, I see John. Okay, great.
Okay. So go ahead, Doug. Do you want to get started and, or however you guys feel that you want to go forward?
That's fine. Um, if you guys can't see, you can't see my video, I guess. Oh, there it is. Start video. There I am. Um, great. So we, uh, Cumberland Farms, we actually were before the board, uh, back a few months ago in connection with the underground storage tank license. In connection with a project that Cumberland Farms is looking to do at 400 East Falmouth Highway and Old, and Eight Old Meeting House Road. Uh, to date, Cumberland Farms has obtained all of the necessary permits, uh, from the planning board, the zoning board of appeals. We've obtained the underground storage tank license from this board. Uh, we, uh, are now basically back before the board of selectment in connection with our signs in which we are proposing to put on to the property. Um, in essence, Cumberland Farms, uh, the signs that, that are before you tonight, uh, are, is seeking to install two freestanding signs, one located on 400 East Falmouth Highway and one located on Eight Old Meeting House Road. There's two, two lots that are subject to this, this project. Uh, and it's our understanding pursuant to, uh, section 184 25B3 permits Cumberland Farms to seat two freestanding signs that has frontage on two streets. That would be, uh, East Falmouth Highway as well as Eight Old Meeting House Road. And I'm not sure, is, am I able to share my screen or, uh, is the IT person able to kind of throw up my plans? Is that possible?
Um, you should be able to share your screen content, but I'll let, um,
Let me see.
IT. Say if that's accurate or not. Yeah.
There you go. Can you guys see that?
We can.
Okay, great. So this is the, uh, site plan in which we are, which we have had approval on. And in essence, the one, the freestanding signs, I don't know if you can see my arrow that I'm pointing around is, uh, up here off of, uh, Old Meeting House Road, that's one. The second one is down here, uh, off East Falmouth Highway. Uh, this is in essence what the, uh, freestanding signs are going to look like. This is very similar to the sign that we actually did at the T ticket, uh, location that was permitted several years ago. Um, and when we submitted this request to the, uh, to the building inspector, uh, it was our understanding, uh, pursuant to Mr. Dickinson's, uh, comment that the sign meets the linear feet of the frontage on the two street, which is 300 feet. However, pursuant to section 184 25, the maximum square feet of a freestanding sign in a B2 district is 16 square feet. We're looking to propose to install a total area of 21.11 square feet, requiring a variance of 2.11 square feet for both of the freestanding signs. Both freestanding signs will be identical. Um, we are very limited with the sign, uh, requirements in which, uh, Cumberland has, are very respectful to the fact that, uh, you want to have consistent signs that are not obnoxious, uh, in the area. And as you can see, we're really only able to identify, uh, the regular gas on this sign as well as identify Cumberland Farms. A typical sign in which we do typically has a lot more to it. It has all three versions, the diesel, regular and premium, as well as a message board. Uh, that's the standard sign that Cumberland looks for, but knowing, uh, and appreciating where we are in Falmouth and trying to be, uh, good neighbors, but also be able to compete in the industry. We're hoping that we can, uh, have this, uh, this sign that basically identifies at least the regular gasoline as well as Cumberland Farms, uh, with a minimal, uh, square footage increase of 2.11 square feet. Um, we, um, are also looking for a, go back to, actually page 11, I apologize. So can you see this? This is showing up. I'm hoping this is the, uh, the architecturals of the front of the building.
You can see it.
Yes.
Yes. So basically down here on the bottom screen, you'll see our wall sign that's actually on the store. It entails our logo. It has Cumberland, then it has Farms underneath it. Um, this is, um, in connection with, uh, Mr. Dickinson's, uh, comments, uh, basically indicates that with regard to the depth of the letters, the icon on the wall sign, uh, the depth would be five feet. On, in his, uh, June 9th, 2020 email, uh, indicated that we meet the depth requirement, uh, except we are a little bit high. We are a three feet high requirement, which is provided for in 184 section 18C. Uh, we're a little bit set off the street, um, from, from East Falmouth. Uh, we actually were going to put a, a wall sign on this area on the, on the front perspective, uh, which would face Old Meeting House, but we have eliminated that. Uh, we were also going to be looking to put some canopy signs, uh, on our canopies as well. But, um, upon further review of your sign bylaws, we decided to remove those as well in hopes that we can have this minimal increase of height on our, on our standard, uh, Commonwealth signs. We believe that it meets the dimensionals of, of the, uh, of the area to where it's going in. It's just a little three feet high and it's mostly because of the logo, uh, for Cumberland Farms. The logo obviously is, is important to us and we're hopeful that we can, uh, get that additional three foot, three foot height, uh, variance, uh, to allow us to have it at, at three feet. I apologize. Uh, with that, that, that is basically what we are before the board with tonight. We're hopeful that, uh, the town does, uh, understand that we are looking, uh, to be as respectful as we possibly can. I know it's, uh, sign variances are very rare, uh, but we had to get one, I believe, for the T ticket store. Uh, we're looking to do something similar to that one, um, and also in order to be able to at least identify the, uh, the regular gasoline, which is being provided. Uh, and then for our store sign, our wall sign, uh, we're hopeful that the board will find that it is aesthetically pleasing. It is consistent with the, with the neighborhood and grant the minor, uh, variance requests, which we are looking for.
Great. Thank you. Doug Jones.
What kind of lighting would there be on the two freestanding signs and on the wall sign?
I don't believe, John, uh, if you can jump in here, I don't believe that there's any lighting at all on the, on the, uh, on the sign on the store. If there is, there may be, um, John, do you know where the lighting is if there is any on the front of the store?
Yeah. So the, um, the, they're internally illuminated. On the, you're talking about the wall sign?
I'm curious about all three. So the wall sign, all those, uh, letters are internally lit, are internally lit?
Uh, yeah, I believe they are, yes. And then also the same, same is true for the, um, for the gas price sign, the freestanding sign.
I assume the, the gas price is going to be lit, but is, are all the letters on that freestanding sign for the name of the company also internally lit? Considering it's all the right. Yeah, uh, they are, but I know that we are, uh, consistent with, um, I know when we did a lighting plan, we definitely did, did take it into, I believe we took into consideration, uh, the freestanding signs as well, and the lights were well within the, the requirements which were required. Uh, trying to go back. There it is. Uh, in essence, this side is very, this area will be illuminated, uh, and then obviously the red on this will be illuminated as well, um, on those signs. I do not believe that they're going to be shedding light to, to a point where it's, it's shining tremendously half of the, off of the, uh, the areas. I know that it's very similar to what was, it's the same type of sign that was granted for the T ticket sign. And I'm not aware of any complaints about the lighting on that, on that sign. We would be willing to accept a condition that if it is determined that the lighting on those signs is too bright, uh, that we would do what we have to do to, uh, reduce the luminaries of it if possible.
Any other questions or discussion?
I'm curious why you chose not to put the, uh, sign, the wall sign on the side of Meeting House Road?
Well, we originally had a proposal for that. Uh, and when I heard back from, um, Mr. Dickinson, when we originally applied for this, um, I really realized, uh, the stringent, just how, uh, stringent the sign bylaws were. So we wanted, we felt that at least having the, um, the sign on the front of the store would be the most important aspect of it. Uh, having the freestanding sign facing, uh, Eight Old Meeting House, uh, provides the same, uh, will provide information that it's there. We believe that most of the traffic is going to be going off East Falmouth. So, uh, we wanted to reduce the amount of signage that we were looking for, uh, and really go forward with what we felt was really necessary for our store. Uh, and also taking into, uh, consideration, uh, respecting your, your sign bylaw and, uh, really try to reduce everything as much as we possibly could. Uh, unfortunately for what we're looking for, we're just, we need a little additional, uh, room in the height for the front. And then, um, the 2.11 square feet on a freestanding sign.
Oh, my second is cool. Uh, can I get one more?
Yeah, of course.
So when you say, uh, you know, our sign total square footage is 16, but you're going for 21. And I'm curious why, how you, how does that equate to 2.11 square foot of variance?
Oh, um, because each sign is, uh, how am I doing that? How did I get to that? Bear with it for a second. John, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's, it, we're only looking for an additional 2.11 on each freestanding sign. Is that correct?
Uh, I, I think we're looking for, uh, 5.11 because the, the.
So guys, that's, that's a mathematical, uh, I am the worst person with math and I apologize with that. Uh, I'm not trying to pull one over on you guys. Uh, so basically 16 minus 21.11. Yeah. So I messed up. It's, it should be five, five feet, 11 square feet. Um, as, uh, I'm the person in my firm that no one lets me handle the money because I am horrible with math. So please don't hold that against.
So, um, personally, I mean, I think that the wall mounted sign is more attractive than the freestanding. I hate to throw a monkey wrench at you, but do you really need two freestanding signs? I mean, if we're given a variance on the size and, and then we're doubling it. So I think it just seems like a lot.
I, I was gonna, the issue I was going to raise is, I mean, I understand we're talking about two separate roads, but the way that this lot is, um, I, I just feel that the two signs on this one lot seems like a significant amount, particularly given that, um, Old Meeting House Road. You know, you're going to come upon Cumberland Farms and you're going, and you're coming to come at a stop there. I mean, I think, you know, first of all, this is a place where we've had a convenience and a gas station forever. And so it's very well known that, that that's there. Um, you know, Old Meeting, Old Meeting House Road is, is, uh, often traveled mostly by residents because it's sort of a back, a back entrance to, um, East Falmouth Highway. It, when I envision that law and the fact that after that, after Cumberland Farms, it's really residential. Um, you know, that's the end of sort of the commercial and it really becomes residential right away. It seems like that freestanding on that old Meeting House roadside, uh, to me, it's, I, I feel it's really, it's, you know, it seems like overkill. And I guess if I were a neighbor, I know we don't have people here tonight, but I guess if I were a neighbor, I would feel that that would really change the nature of sort of the look of that part of the road. Um, so that's, you know, I understand you're trying to advertise as much as possible, but it, it seems like, I, I agree with Doug that you'd almost rather, I personally would almost rather see the one freestanding and, you know, I, I don't even know why you would need the side. I, I think everyone's going to know it's Cumberland Farms, particularly with the freestanding sign in the front, but.
So if we go back to, if I can read it back.
I'd like to second what Megan is saying because I think you're wasting your money by putting up that sign on Old Meeting House Road. I mean, that's more or less a residential section through there. And you're, you're not going to surprise anybody or get their attention. They're going to be well aware. I, and I, I think you're probably better off to put a, a wall mounted sign on that side. Um, because you've got the gas pumps and the, and the canopies over the top of them in the front, which kind of detracts from the position you have, where you have a current wall mounted sign. So I, I'm not, I said, gee, this seems like an odd place to put a wall mounted sign. You, if, if your exposure would be better on the Meeting House side, in my, I think, way of thinking.
Yeah. And I think, um, if the board is not willing, if the board is willing to allow us to have, uh, the variance on the freestanding sign that faces, uh, East Falmouth Highway, uh, would the board entertain our ability to put, um, trying to go back to, am I sharing my screen? Am I sharing my screen again? So am I sharing my screen again? So basically we were looking to put the, the, the exact same sign here on this side here, uh, in our previous plan. Um, and if you want, I could try and track down real quick one of my previous plans to show you. Uh, if you give me a minute or, or you, basically.
We can imagine.
Uh, we can, I can tell you that I personally would be in favor of that. I don't think I could vote for the second freestanding on, um, Old Meeting House. I think it, it doesn't conform with the, there's already a lot going on there and it really is a neighborhood right after that block. And so I think it would, you know, I'm, I'm thinking about the neighbors who are adjacent to the building and suddenly their view is, you know, this sign that is, I'm not critiquing the sign, but it's very, very commercial looking and they are in a residential area. So, um.
I just want that other wall sign to fit that whole space. I, I would want it to be similar size as the one in front, not relatively sized to the, uh, impediment that's there. That would fill out that whole space. Yeah. I don't know why I can't find it.
Any, let me, while you're looking, any other thoughts from the board about that particular?
I do have one more.
Yep, Doug Brown, go ahead.
So, um, when you referred to the T ticket location and that this sign is the same, was that before we had the revelation about the, the square footage? You know, whether it was two or five feet? I just want to confirm.
To be honest with you, I was not aware of that issue. Uh, I know that it's similar to the T ticket. I'm not sure if it's exactly the same height as the T ticket.
Cause I'm, I'm kind of a, I'm kind of obnoxious about signs. I feel like the less the better. And everybody knows Cumberland Farms, what they look like and all. You don't really need a lot of signage around here. But I'm wondering if, well, we can confirm. I don't want to be changing the, the story either on you. If we did approve it on the T ticket location, then I would probably be in favor of it being consistent. But I don't want to approve something that's bigger than T ticket if, if we can confirm that.
Yeah, to be quite honest with you, I'm not sure. I think that we are, I think the square footage that we're looking, I think the height of the T ticket is similar. Um, and well, the height we're in compliance with. I think the size of it, uh, we may be a little bit larger than what is at the T tickets store. I just don't know. I didn't permit that site. Uh, I was aware that there was a sign that was very similar, uh, to the T ticket site, uh, and that what we have proposed here, uh. Why would you go larger? Why wouldn't you go with the exact? Say it again. And there, why wouldn't you use the same design that we already approved? Why would you go with a larger sign? And I'm sorry that your math error is just too glaring not to be. Yeah. I mean, that's just, that isn't a math error. That's trying to sneak something by us, I'm afraid. That's, it's. No, I, I got to be honest with you. It really, I truly honestly, I, that's one thing I really, really stress is my reputation. And to be honest with you, that was not something I was trying to push by you at all. Uh, it clearly, it clearly, uh, was my ignorance on my math. Uh, and to be honest with you, um, I, I don't know how I missed that. I apologize. Uh, it was, it's basically, it was clearly a, an error on my part. And I'm glad that you pointed it out. It was, it was not intentional on my part at all.
So let me just take, let me just take a look at the rendering that we have here. Um, that you're showing us a prior rendering of the side perspective where that Cumberland Farms logo doesn't nearly take up, um, you know, the whole space available, which was a concern raised by, um, Selectment Jones. So it takes up, you know, it's centered and it takes up a, you know, a fairly small portion of that. So it takes up, you know, it's centered and it takes up a, you know, a fairly small portion of that side um space available. So what is the board's, is that an accurate portrayal of the size that it would be?
Yes, we would basically pursuant to this plan, that's what we would agree to uh replace the other freestanding sign with uh, with this uh, with this, with this logo name similar to what we are looking to do on the front of the store as well. Uh, we would not be looking to change uh what, what it looks like there.
Okay, um, what is the board's position on, let's start with the simple part. The old Meeting House Road sign um versus this, this on the building. What are people's feelings about that?
I think that's a good trade.
But the two signs actually aren't the variance. I think they can do two signs without our permission. And so we just wanna be careful about this, that if we, cause they're on two different lots. And so I wanna make sure that we're not giving them permission to do these two wall signs and one larger sign on uh, on the highway and they then say, well, we'll do a smaller sign because we're allowed to by right on old, old uh Meeting House Road. I'd be fine with a condition saying that we wouldn't be able to put a freestanding sign on Old Meeting House Road.
Satisfied, I'm satisfied with that. That's in the record. Um, so with that being um the condition, uh, do I have a motion for um an approval of the side? Sign on Old Meeting House Road as rendered in this drawing, um, with the condition that um a freestanding sign will not be placed on the Old Meeting House part of the lot.
So move. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion for that component? Okay, all those in favor by roll call. English Braga, aye. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Okay, let's go back to the, the sign on um East Falmouth Highway.
I would be in favor of just simply approving the same side, same size sign as the T ticket high location.
Are we talking freestanding right now or the other wall?
Freestanding.
Freestanding sign. Thank you for clarifying.
May I say something real quick?
Sure. Yeah, go ahead.
Need to be unmuted. Uh, okay, um, so with, in connection with the freestanding signs, I, I'm not trying to be um, uh in connection with the freestanding signs, we are entitled to two freestanding signs because we do have two frontages. We, we, we're willing to give up the one on Old Meeting House uh for the uh very favorable to put up the sign on the side. We're not, um, we believe that the sign in which we're doing, i- it's very difficult for us to get in um, uh, the area in which we're really looking for. And we're hoping that with the concessions of what we're looking to do by taking out the signs off our canopy, uh, by basically looking to, to remove that freestanding sign in consideration of the residential neighborhood on Old Meeting House Road, that we can have some latitude in order to maintain uh the sign in which we're looking for off East Falmouth Highway. Uh, the amount of uh, um, the amount of um, work which we've kind of looked into this, it's, it's something in which I believe that my client would really prefer if possible. I, I realize uh it's five feet, eleven square feet, a, a little bit bigger. Uh, but we believe that it is in the nature and character of the neighboring neighborhood within the height limitation. But nowhere to really uh put the sign in which we're looking for. We really request the uh, uh, to leave it as it is. Um, uh, that As we're all throwing my math in, it's thirty-three percent bigger almost.
And
Than what our code allows.
And, and I'd like to weigh in because you don't need a big sign in this area. I mean, there's, you don't have a lot of competition. This is gonna stand out so clearly for anybody that's driving by. There won't be any question about noticing. So, you know, our problem is, you know, you're making these big gaudy signs and we're trying to keep these things down to a more modest size. And it's not just you, it's every vendor that comes before us and asks us for a sign variance. So I'm, I'm not in favor, you're not, I don't feel like we're giving up uh, uh anything by giving you an opportunity to put a wall sign on one side of your building in favor, you know, to, as a trade-off for eliminating that freestanding sign. I'm, I think you guys are just throwing money away myself and, and for no good. And, and, and our community suffers from, in the terms of making it look gaudy and over-commercialized.
So here's what I would say. I, I, before we take a vote, given that we're trying to sort of do this separately, but um, you know, uh, Attorney Troy might want to speak with his, I don't know, you know, if he wants to speak with his client about what their preference is, given that I think the sentiment of the board sounds not very positive about extending that thirty-three percent. So I don't know if you wanna put it on, you know, to sort of withdraw where we are and, you know, put it on for a discussion so that you can talk to them about the, the two. Um, you know, I know there's a right for the second um sign on Old Meeting House Road. So if you wanna talk to them about sort of those options, recognizing that it doesn't s- seem that the board is favorable to the idea of such a large sign um, as that. Uh, yes, Mr. Marsham, and then?
Um, I have the uh shop drawings for the T ticket sign. It's a five foot wide by five foot high overall sign area, twenty-five square feet. Uh, and the freestanding sign we're proposing is six by four, that's one square foot smaller than a T ticket sign.
Hmm.
All right, well, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Gee, who approved that?
Well, I think
Thanks for finding that out.
Yeah, I think it's helpful when people have something to actually, you know, that sort of comparable that we are all aware of. So um what's the board's pleasure then with that?
I'm, now I'm confused. Are we talking about a twenty-four square foot sign if you're saying six by four? I thought we were talking about a twenty-one square foot sign.
Six by four foot is the maximum height it's a variant where the top of the sign is kind of scalloped.
But let's make sure we're talking about the exact same numbers on the sign and T ticket.
Right, yeah, so it's the same scallop on the top of that sign.
Does it go, because it rounds, right? Yours, the top is the
The overall five by five in T ticket versus the overall six by four on East Falmouth.
And then
We don't, we don't know what the actual sign of the, since it's not, the other ones, this, a square scallop that's cut out. We don't really know what the area is of the Cumberland, the one in, in uh T ticket. I understand you're saying the maximum is twenty-four, but we don't really know what the sign, the sign size is.
Right.
Here's the uh T ticket sign and John, are you still there?
Yes.
Okay, so this is the T ticket sign that I just pulled up. What is the square footage that we are looking for that is on a T ticket sign?
I was looking at that. I, I don't see it on the, on the label anywhere.
That's, it's, it's There's a one foot pole on either side and then the, the sign itself is five feet wide, right?
Five feet high.
Yeah, the width is five feet. And then the height is?
Looks like two, but two plus three, so it looks like five.
Okay, and then the whole height from the bottom to the top is twelve feet overall.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, so that's T ticket. Can you tell us, I, I know we have things in front of us, but can you tell us what is with that same, that same kind of comparison? How wide is the cabin, is what's called the cabinet width?
John, I gotta rely on you for that.
So the cabinet width for uh East Falmouth Highway is six feet.
Yep.
And then the overall height. Uh, Doug, do you have CFG thirteen on your presentation there?
The overall height is four feet.
Four feet.
Okay. And then the whole, yep. Okay. So it's a foot wide. Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah, so the cabinet is a foot wider.
And the height is still twelve feet?
That's correct.
And you still have a, a foot on each side for the posts?
Right.
Yep.
Does this clarify for the board?
It does. So it clarifies that the T ticket location is slightly smaller.
Yes. By
It, it seems to be working. The place is busy.
Right, exactly.
So the T ticket sign is, is one foot narrower.
And that one got a variance, but it was a smaller variant.
Right.
And it's got the gas price, it's the same
Yeah.
Same thing is up there.
That's, that's where I'd like to see it.
Yeah, I, I'd like
Same size.
Okay.
Can I?
I'm gonna offer the same thing to, I, I'm just uh aware of it being quarter of, of twelve. So I, you know, if, um, now that we have all of the numbers in front of us, it sounds like the board, the where this board will be going is to approve a variance in line with the T ticket sign. If, given that that is our position, you would like to speak with your clients about whether or not they want to try and do the same thing and get a freestanding sign on Old Meeting House Road, which they're allowed to do. Um, you, you know, you can let us know before we take a, a vote in that direction. I don't want, I don't wanna have a vote that you have to try to then have reconsidered. So if you wanna have, you know
Appreciate that. Yeah, we are under, uh, is it possible to get on that August tenth uh, uh, hearing?
Yes. Okay, so we're, we'll, we'll move this, continue this to August tenth. And um you can confer with your clients and the previous vote, um, we will just vacate that because we're, we're not gonna hold you to it because we were talking about a package deal. Okay?
That's fine. And just in consideration, um, this sign, as you can see, the T ticket sign just has a single pole. Uh, if we were, if we put the cabinet down to five feet and, and get us to the same square footage as the T ticket, uh, are you looking for exactly the same sign in which we got approved at, at uh T ticket? Sounds like you want the exact same sign.
Yeah, I, I would say the, sounds like the board is looking for that, but if there is some kind of reason and you can come back with some clearer, you know, reason and, and some really clear numbers, then um, you know, maybe we can take a look at that.
I appreciate your courtesy. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you and sorry for the late hour. Try and get you on earlier next time.
No, I appreciate it. So I look forward to seeing you guys on the tenth. Have a great evening.
You too, thank you. Okay, we have um a very simple, one vote to approve an extension of the term ending date for the Edward Marx Building Advisory Committee. Same as some of our other committees, we need to vote an extension because they weren't able to meet. Um, so Mr. Suso, do we have an intended timeline?
Ma'am, ma'am chair, um, to the best of my knowledge, we didn't receive a specific request currently under your um charge to that committee. They are active through December thirty-first of this year. On, on, on the previous ones, we extended them to the end of October. So I, uh, this one already goes two months beyond that, so it would be uh, I'm not sure what the intention would be. If you wanna take it into twenty twenty-one, a number of months.
What's the board's feeling? We did, I, I had heard from Barbara Wayan quite a while ago, just noting that this was a, a concern back when committees weren't meeting. So um, while there wasn't a formal request, she knew, uh, she and I had been in contact and she knew I was gonna, you know, we were, we would review this as a board. So um, we had given some of the other boards some extra months. Do we feel that we should give this particular committee?
Well, I'm just trying to think of the logical timeline is the result of their report would probably be a capital expense. And so it wouldn't come up to a town, a town meeting until a fall town meeting. So I don't see necessarily that we shouldn't hold them to the December thirty-first because no matter what they do, we won't be really acting on it probably until nine months later. So I don't see any real downside to like giving them till maybe till July or something.
Okay.
It's, it seemed a little lenient. I would, I would hold them to a June a May thirty, May thirty-first date, honestly.
Sounds good.
Stickler, okay, so
I think in the end, we're gonna probably wanna extend it longer once we, once they start to actually make some accomplishments. They're just barely getting started and they got shut down.
Right, yeah, so I mean, the, so we can look at, we'll set it for May thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, and we can go from there. Um, that was Sam's motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
And said, okay, all those in favor, English Braga, aye. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Okay, uh, we've done number eight. Initial discussion on periodic, periodic departmental reports. Mr. Suso, do you wanna just sort of give a little bit of a quick overview of what we're gonna be doing with this?
Well, just to confirm as the board's aware, um, I've been transmitting uh quarterly reports uh uh to members of the board uh from all key town departments. And uh, uh, there was a suggestion about maybe changing the format or uh, um, organizing it somewhat differently. So it, um, I'm open to, uh, I know just today, for instance, I had transmitted the second quarter reports from the board. Whether you wanna take a look at that and continue that discussion or give further direction at this point?
Yeah, I, I think the goal would be in the conversation, I, I think Doug Brown brought it up. Um, but the idea of sort of publicly summarizing those reports, because I, I think that they're helpful. And, you know, we often will hear from um fire or police. But, you know, some of these other departments that do really critical work, we get the reports. But I think it would be helpful for there to be some um sort of mechanism to translate those in a summarized fashion to the public. So that the public is having sort of that data in front of them on a quarterly basis, you know, how many permits are being processed? What the timeline of those permits might be from start to finish, or how many folks are, are getting services um from um human services or, you know, those type of things, some of the information that you provide to us that we'll, we'd be able to get that out to the public. So I think that was essentially um what Doug Brown, um, in your email, is that what, does that sort of summarize that, Doug?
Part of it, but the other part is more than just uh numbers is kind of how does it translate to the public? Um, you know, the level of service for the uh, the average citizen, you know, are, how, how are we able to gauge uh effectiveness of our, our functioning government? You know, I think that's more kind of what I was thinking.
Okay, so, yes, Sam, go ahead.
Yeah, I see that as two separate things though. I, I value these reports because I think it's a way for the department as to think about the progress of their department and kind of a, a course personal evaluation or departmental evaluation. Because if you stop and think about it, and I've had to do this as a manager myself, it makes you stop and think, you know, how much did we get done? And I think that reflective process is an important one. So I think what Julian is providing us right now, and, and he gets to review himself, is an important uh, uh, progress evaluation for his department. And that's the value I think is most important. I don't know how many people in the public are really interested in finding out all the things that happened. And if they do ask the question, well, Julian can pull it right up and say, you know, this is the kind of thing, the things that this department worked on and got done during this particular quarter. I, you know, I, I, I don't see the public as being particularly interested in this. But I, as a select ward member that is thinking about how do we evaluate the effectiveness of our staff, do you see great value in it?
I was not really
Oh, go ahead.
I, I was less concerned with the distribution generally to the public as I was just to make it more um tailored towards, you know, understanding the level of service.
Yeah, so maybe we can, I'm just gonna be, you know, frank, it's almost midnight. I think we'll continue this discussion and, and we can figure out how we wanna sort of get some of that information about whether it's really those, those that raw data or if it's some broader discussion about kind of um, you know, providing of services. So we can, we'll, we can discuss that further, Julian, go from there. Um, okay, can you give us, um, Julian, an update? Um, okay, can you give us, um, Julian, an update on the town, the, um, CDBG COVID state grant program application, and what kind of happened with that?
Certainly, Madam Chair, um, I know I had, um, shared in the board packet, uh, some, uh, analysis of first, uh, feedback from, uh, Tom Planner, Tom Bott, and then some analysis from IT Director Greg Banworth and his staff, uh, that in a nutshell, the board will recall that, uh, there's evidence that the, uh, application was transmitted via email, uh, timely. Um, but the State Funding Agency, the HCD, uh, indicated that, uh, they had no record of having received it. And, um, our dilemma is that there's only thirty days' worth of absolute verification on transmissions like that, and I know that, um, both, uh, Greg and possibly Tom Bott as well are with us. Uh, Greg Banworth could make a few comments if it's helpful, but, um, Greg indicated, when I shared with him, uh, my copy of the email which was transmitted, uh, timely, I was copied with it, it came into my, uh, uh, in, in, uh, in basket, um, that the likelihood was very great that that went out of our, out of the town system properly, but was, for reasons unknown, rejected by or lost in the state system. I see Greg is with us, maybe he'd hear to comment as well.
Yeah, Greg, do you just want to sort of summarize? You gave a great summary email today. Could you just sort of explain what you saw, um, when you took a look at that?
Yeah, the best analogy that I can give is, um, email systems are very akin to our ancient snail mail systems in the sense that, uh, to kind of draw that analogy out, um, we have enough data to basically show that, uh, the email was put into the outbox. Um, we didn't have enough logging, uh, that dated back far enough to, uh, demonstrate, uh, concretely show that postman picked it up, but postman picks it up a couple thousand times a day and, uh, the mail wasn't there, so uh, we have every reason to believe that it successfully left our institution. But just like regular mail, once you hand it off to the postman, it can get lost at a variety of, uh, other junctures. Um, either it can get lost or a couple of, um, challenges, uh, in the general internet, but most probably uh, one of the many systems that mass.gov, uh, had, uh, blocked it or filtered it um, on some level, and unfortunately, we have no insight to what would have blocked that because it's in their realm.
Thank you. And, uh, go ahead, Sam.
Um, my, my question I want to get to, so that this doesn't happen again, is do we have any kind of method of making sure that the government, you know, government office is supposed to receive it, actually has received it? Um, you know, for this snail mail, you can get, you know, certified mail return receipt requests, right? You get some kind of feedback that somebody signed off that they accepted it. Is there a system that we could put in place? Because this is just too much money lost in a time when we really need those dollars. What kind of a system can we put in place so that we get some kind of confirmation that they've received that application, that notice, whatever?
Uh, that's a great question, Lieutenant, uh, Patterson, uh, but unfortunately, the answer is there's no really good system for that. Um, the way that, uh, email communication standards were set up was basically a pass-off from senders to receivers. Um, the only systems that can track an email from origin to recipients are, um, secure systems. You may have seen it. You know, there may be a couple things. If you get a mortgage loan application or a message from your doctor, they have you sign into a website and you just grab the one email, um, you know, there, there are a couple services that you kind of have to jump through a lot of hoops. And those are the only systems that would be able to verify, uh, read receipt. Um, it gets a little bit confusing because there are a lot of programs out there like Microsoft Outlook that says, do you want the recipient to flag they received this email? But that's actually not a standard email protocol. Um, most services block that, uh, definitely all services allow recipients to block email receipts. Um, and it's a very common, uh, question which you've asked, and unfortunately, uh, unless you go tell everyone that they, both the recipient and the sender have to log on to the same website, um, there is no surefire way, other than phone or, uh, other follow-up. Um, uh, that's really the only way to do it, is to call up with a phone call or in-person conversation.
Thank you, Greg. I, I have a question, and then I'll, I'll get to you, Doug. So Julian, a- as far as any type of recourse, given that we can show that i- it was sent out and we did what we needed to do on our end, is there any type of recourse whatsoever? Um, you know, for, for the state to recognize that we in fact met the deadline, whatever took place, whether their own system filtered it out, or you know, whatever happened, happened, but if the submission was via email and we submitted via email and we can show that, which it did sound like what I read from Greg earlier today, we can show that it left our system, um, is, is there, do we know if there's any type of recourse? And, and I know Tom is on, Tom Bott is on as well. Do we know if there's any, you know, anything we can do further? Can we advocate further, um, on this particular issue so that we can try to have some access to these funds?
Well, I can tell you that, um, I reached out to our, uh, elected representatives, um, David and Dylan on the House side and Sue on the Senate side, and asking if, uh, they could inquire as well, which, um, I know Sue has done so, and I believe David and Dylan are in process. Um, the unfortunate response we get back from the bureaucracy, um, which had requested a, an electronic submission is that, uh, we can't find it in our system, and unfortunately, there's no money left. Um, but I have, uh, my inquiry, my request is that, uh, they, uh, inquire further, if that's possible, to determine whether there may be any subsequent funds that become available. Um, if all are not committed or not, all are not accepted, or some iteration of that, or a future funding cycle. So, um, no guarantees received at this point, but the inquiries are there.
So, um, what I would like to do, and I know that you and I know that Tom, um, you know, have been working on this, but I, it would, I think it would be helpful if we can at least formalize, um, in, in some form, you know, what the discussions that you've been having, um, you know, to just note that this was sent out. So again, maybe, you know, if there are some funds that, that arise or aren't, don't end up being utilized, or subsequent funds, um, you know, we are at least perhaps in the queue. Tom, I see you raising your hand?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, we, uh, we did hear back from DHTD, and like I said, I've never seen anything like this happen before. And the question I asked, uh, you know, essentially, how did this, you know, I, I've never seen anything like that happen before, and their response was is that going forward, uh, they, uh, they do have another allocation coming, they say. Uh, they do not have it in hand at this time. Uh, they are waiting for HUD, uh, so they don't know exactly when that will be. But they will review the application, score it, and hold the application until then. That's saying that we're not going to give you money, we're going to score it with all the other applications we might get if we get more money at some point in the future. So there's no guarantees for this, but, uh, we have an application that's in, they've acknowledged that, and, um, will be in the queue and in the competition. At some point, did they get more money? And that's the only assurance we got back from them. I hadn't received any other replies back from the folks at DHTD following those, uh, I'm gonna go with, um, July twentieth, that, you know, when we first discovered that uh, our application...
Wasn't received.
Finished, you know, uh...
Okay. So, so maybe if we can, thank you, Tom, maybe if we can sort of, again, memorialize what they've said to Tom in that email and just send it to whomever we need to send it to and, and include our reps on, um, that, just again, to strengthen, maybe strengthen our position if there, if there are indeed funds that come down the line. I agree with Sam. At this point in time, any funds left on the table, you know, are just, they're just so necessary as we go forward. So, um, if we can just work to put together, you know, a little bit of a, a letter that has the chronology of the communications and showing that it did leave our IT, you know, our IT shows that it left, et cetera, and whatever they've said to Tom.
Right. I'd like to see us come up with a, a protocol, uh, handled by the Finance Director, somebody that does contracts management essentially, because that's the way it was done in industry when I was doing that. It follows up on these things to make sure in fact they were received. If it's a phone call, it's a phone call. With some method to make sure, because this could happen again, and it could be even a larger price tag. So I would like to see some kind of a protocol that we adopt as a staff that has a follow-up check process. And again, it could be a third party in terms of a staff member, like the Finance Department, that follows up on this kind of a submission, but there's, uh, there's got to be a check in place in my mind, because this is too big of a, of a loss, just to say, I'll kiss it off and we'll wait for the next opportunity that comes along.
Tom?
Yeah, as I wrote previously to Julian, in twenty-two plus years in the Commonwealth, I've never seen anything like this happen. Uh, and I don't want to say anything other than that, but I've never seen anything like this happen before. Um, it seems implausible that it just vanished.
But I think to, to, um, you know, Julian, to Sam's point, you know, particularly the world that we're living in now where there are sort of funds coming, we hope they continue to come, you know, sort of from the, from federal government and state agencies, um, a- and everyone and their, you know, sister is applying for all of this. Um, you know, the numbers are probably overwhelming some of these. We saw it happen early on with SBA, you know, the SBA, when people were, you know, twenty million people were applying in one day. Um, so, you know, perhaps that follow-up protocol to just, um, you know, I know what Tom is saying, you know, it's rare, but maybe it isn't going to be that rare, or, you know, even if it's rare and it only happens twice, it's still a lot of money that's left on the table. So just having that, some sort of, um, check system to follow up with. Again, you know, as Sam's noting, if it's a, if it's a call, it's a call. If it's a second email to confirm it, uh, something to that effect as we go forward.
Absolutely.
Great. Thank you, Tom, for filling that in. Go ahead, Sam.
Now, the digital world is very untransparent. I mean, you send stuff off, it's like, oh, goes off into Bitland, right? And so there really needs to be some sort of checking process in my mind when we have these kinds of large grant applications, um, or transfers of information even. Um, we can't be totally trusting to the digital world.
Yes, good point. So we can sort of touch base, again, Julian, sort of putting that in place. Thank you. Um, okay, we have annual town meeting reappointments. Town committee, excuse me, reappointments.
You said on the non-regulatory boards?
Yeah. Yes, I don't seem to have the list in front of me.
Okay, I'll have it if you want.
If you could, please.
Sure. I move that we appoint to Assistant Parking Clerk Tracy Seastill for a term ending June thirtieth of twenty twenty-one.
Jones, second.
All those in favor? By roll call, English Braga? Aye. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
I move that we appoint to the parking clerk, Patricia O- O'Connell for a term ending June thirtieth of twenty twenty-one.
Jones, second.
All, uh, in favor? English Braga, aye. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
I move that we appoint the Transportation Management Committee, Ralph Herbst, for a term ending June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three.
Jones, second.
I roll call, English Braga, aye. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Taylor? Taylor, aye.
If you look at the next section, folks, unless you have to, um, unless you have to abstain or are voting against any of these individuals, I'd like to just read the names with the appointment period and do it all. Is it, Mr. Suso?
Just clarify one thing, Madam Chair. The, uh, the next three are, uh, the Transportation Management Committee, and under your, um, under the board's protocol, those are appointed by other committees. And, uh, my sense is that those would be indefinite appointments, just ongoing until such time as they resign or they have a different appointment from the committee, as opposed to the select board voting a specific term to each of these, because you're asking another committee to do that designation. Just my thought.
Okay, so we're just, we're just affirming their appointments as the, um, as members of that transportation man.
Affirming their continued appointment, if that's agreeable.
Okay, so let's do that section first, please. So transfer, I, I have it in front of me now, Sam, thank you. Transportation Management Committee, Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee, Chris McGuire. Commission on Disabilities, Paul Grundon. Planning Board, Paul Dryer.
Second.
All those in favor? English Braga, aye. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Veterans Council Committee, Fa- uh, Falmouth Military Support Group, Carol Kenny, AmVets, Jim Sawyer. I guess I do have to do the timelines for these.
Well, you can do them all as a blanket.
They're all the same.
Falmouth, uh, Lodge number twenty-three eighty, BPO Elks, Colonel Edward T. Van Kuren, and Disabled American Veterans, Louis J. Sousa, for all for a period of, uh, time ending six-thirty-twenty-one.
Second.
All those in favor? English Braga, aye. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Great, thank you. Has everyone had a chance to take a look at the minutes of the two sessions?
I move that we, uh, approve the minute, executive committee minutes for session one and not to release for public access.
Second, Jones?
Okay, all those in favor? English Braga, aye. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
All right, individual selectmen's reports?
Oh, wait, we got two more minutes.
I'm sorry, excuse me. Public session. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I move that we, uh, approve the executive session two on July thirteenth, twenty twenty, uh, and not released to the public.
I think we had a second from Doug Jones. All those in favor? English Braga, aye. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Taylor? Taylor, aye.
Okay.
And I move that we approve the, uh, minutes of the open session on Monday, July thirteenth, twenty twenty, and for, for release.
Second, Jones?
English Braga, uh, roll call, English Braga, aye. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Okay. Individual selectmen reports?
Yeah, I'm gonna go over just, I know it's like, this is gonna be quick. Just for your information, um, I'm, uh, now on the Executive Board for the Cape Cod and Islands Selectmen and Casters Association, and the upcoming meetings, I just wanted to let you know the topics, and since we have some of our staff involved, I'll mention those as well. Uh, the next one is August fourteenth, and it's the election process. Uh, Julian Steer's office is gonna lead it. Uh, but, uh, our town, uh, clerk, uh, Michael Palmer is gonna be part of that discussion. The next one is September the eleventh, and these are all Zoom meetings, and they start at seven-thirty in the morning, just as a blanket. Um, it's gonna be on the ballot question for rank choice voting. Uh, and so they're gonna have the League of Women Voters there to discuss that issue. Then on October ninth, which is of course after school would have start, they're gonna have, uh, a topic called the Schools Impact Due to COVID, COVID-nineteen. There's gonna be an update from superintendents, and our Superintendent Dr. Laurie Duer has been invited and has accepted that she will provide an update for the meeting of the Cape Cod Count and Islands Casters and so forth. And then on November thirteenth, um, let's see, uh, th- they're gonna be looking at the impacts of, on the community budgets of, of Chapter Seventy and Chapter Ninety, and they're gonna have some, um, state representatives come in and talk to us about that, and, and then also, uh, some of the finance directors across the Cape. So that's just a, a quick overview of the upcoming meetings.
Great, thank you very much, Sam. Anything else?
You know, if you want to hear it. So Water Quality Management Committee met last week, and they have completed their installation of the wells at the head of Great Bay, where Shorewood Drive meets Route 28 at Town Parcell. They're gonna be injecting this emulsified vegetable oil, basically, and that's going to kind of neutralize the nitrogen that's heading into the bay. So now that that's in place, they'll start to monitor it and see the effectiveness of it. And they've also completed their planning for the walkway bay watershed. And turns out that even though they're gonna sewer seacoast shores, or even with proposed sewer-ing of seacoast shores and other measures, we're still coming up short on our ability to remove nitrogen from that embayment. So I had suggested, and I hope that might be possible, to install some of these permeable reactive barriers, should they prove to be effective in that area, and maybe that will help. That's it for water quality, and then there's a couple others that I think I'll pass on. And the Assembly Delegates Meeting, we put on, we voted to put on hold any of the solar projects. There's nine buildings that are being considered for solar installations. But some of the language was not quite up to what they needed it to be, so they sent it back. And that language is being reviewed, hopefully it'll be ready for the next meeting coming up this week. And they're also doing a charter review for consideration of different term limits and other recall possibility to add a provision for recall. So that's what's going on with the assembly and the other stuff, I guess I'll let it go.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Suso?
Well, defer our report due to the lateness of the hour.
Great, thank you. Mr. Jones? Oh, he froze just when we needed him to do the action that he's so good at.
He's pretending to be frozen, so he doesn't have to do a report.
I have a motion for adjourned, Mr. Brown.
Yes, I move we adjourn.
Okay, I do have a second.
Patterson's second.
All those in favor, by roll call, English Braga, aye. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones, he's back now.
He's back just in time.
Brown, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
All right, thank you all. Thanks to all the staff for a late hour. Thank you.
Thank you.